Okay.
Hi, Mike.
Good morning. The State Board will be called to order and begin our meeting with a pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, a first order of business before we can do anything is, as required by our procedures, we need to hold an election for the position of President and Vice President for 216 to 17. The bylaws require that the State Superintendent preside over the election of the President and such other business as the State Board may direct. I'll now turn the gavel over to State Superintendent Tom Torleksen.
Thank you, President Kirst, and we'd like to ask our guests to come in quietly so we can conduct this important vote. My job is to remind us that we are going to operate under Article Four of the State Board's bylaws. I would like to call for nominations for the Office of President. Six votes are necessary to elect an officer, and each officer elected shall serve for one year or until his or her successor is elected. I will now open the floor for nominations for the Office of President. Member Strauss?
Superintendent Torleksen, I would like to nominate Michael Kirst as President of the State Board of Education.
Michael Kirst is nominated, and are there any other nominations? If none, we will move to—
I will second.
There's a second to that nomination, and we will ask if there are any public comment, because we will now take this to a vote. Seeing no public comment and no further discussion by the Board, we are pleased to have this nomination and to take a vote. Who would like to make the motion to have the nominee become the actual President again? Okay, the motion's made by Member Strauss to elect Michael Kirst to the Office of President of the State Board of Education. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, any abstaining, passes unanimously.
Thank you.
And now, thank you, congratulations. You do an incredible job. You do an amazing job and such a heavy workload, so thanks for being willing to continue that.
Well, I appreciate the support of the Board and look forward to a very exciting and another busy year with working with all of you. We have a really great Board with such a good working relationship and tone of our interactions, so it's a pleasure to do this. Thank you again.
Great, thank you.
Right now, in keeping with Article Four of the State Board bylaws, I would like to call for nominations for the Office of Vice President. No, and so six votes are necessary to elect this officer, and the Vice President shall serve for one year in office. So I will now open the floor for nominations for Vice President.
I nominate Dr. Eileen Strauss for the position of Vice President. I'm grateful for her leadership, her collaboration, and her energy, and she'll do a fantastic job.
Is there a second to this motion?
I will second that.
Okay. Now, now that we have the motion and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Okay, thank you. The Vice President is live.
I thank you all, and I look forward to continuing the work and working with this wonderful Board. I think we really have a good cohesive collaborative effort on behalf of the students at California, so I thank you very much for the support.
Thank you. Well, it's really good to have somebody in Southern California for—on our team of leadership. I prefer a lot of things, and I think it's necessary to have a face for the Board in the majority population area of Southern California, so you've been very helpful on that and done all the things we need. Okay, I now have the unpleasant duty, after all of you are here, of asking for you to leave. I don't know how this gets done in this order, but the Board will be adjourning to close session to discuss or take action on the following cases. Tori Love versus SBA versus SBE, known as the ASPIRE litigation. So we need to clear the room, and then we will have the closed session begin.
How did you guys like the example?
All right, the State Board will inter—will reconvene during the closed session. The Board discussed two cases, Tori Love versus the State of California and CSBA versus SBE, known as the ASPIRE litigation. We'll now start with a report of the Superintendent.
Thank you, President Kirst, and Board members, and those who've joined us to give input to our important processes this couple of days. And so Happy New Year, everybody. Did you have a good swim in? I mean, a good ride in?
Yeah.
And we are grateful for the rain, right? And I want to say I look forward to another great year of progress with our California Department of Education team, working closely with you, your terrific staff team, and with all of our education partners, and with our LEAs. A few updates. First, let me introduce CDE's new federal policy liaison, Marguerite Reese. Marguerite has been with CDE for four years, most recently in the early Education and Support Division. She previously also worked for Children Now and the California School Boards Association and was a first-grade teacher. She believes it's okay, the old saying, "We live in interesting times," so she's picked federal liaison at a very fascinating time in history, and so would we please all welcome Marguerite? Could you stand up and be recognized? I wanted to also give you a brief synopsis of our Winter Institute, our role modeling, continuous improvement, and learning, and professional development and growth. Last December 8th, we had a great day of professional learning here at the Department in this building when we held our Winter Institute. It is a key part of our CDE team advancement, our progress for continuous improvement and professional development to better serve our 6.2 million California public school students. This is professional development for CE by CDE. We tapped into the outstanding range of expertise in our department with our colleagues and their keen desire to learn more by diving deeper into many subjects. One hundred facilitators led forty-five unique workshops and sessions with more than 2,000 hours of professional learning during this day and over 900 participants on our CDE team. We're now planning for the Spring Institute. Election, mixed results. I want to thank the voters for believing in our schools and investing in our schools and our public institutions that provide very critical services in health care, too. I was pleased that Prop 51 passed, $9 billion for school construction and modernization. Prop 55, $4 to $6 billion a year, that will help our schools maintain and continue to grow and have a renaissance in many of the areas we're working on. I was pleased the tobacco tax passed, which will reduce mortality and disease by its prevention efforts, but also will yield $1 billion to $1.5 billion for health care services in California. The hospital financing measure also passed, which is going to bring in millions and millions of dollars to help provide important health care services. So I, again, thank the voters of California. I know that the outcome of the presidential election has created considerable concern among California educators, students, and parents. I respect the Constitution, the Office of the President, and the nation's historic tradition for a peaceful transition, and I look forward to working with our federal government partners. But I've heard, and we've heard, about worries and even fear in California schools. Undocumented students, and their families in particular, have serious concerns about their future. In December, I issued a letter, and I've provided you a copy of that at your seats, a letter to outline some concerns. I issued a letter encouraging all California public schools to be declared safe havens. I'm urging school districts to inform our parents of their rights and let them know we will continue to make our schools safe places where our parents and their students can learn where they are welcome. Some school district boards have already, including Los Angeles, Oakland, and Sacramento, already passed and adopted similar policies for safe haven schools. My letter encourages all parents and guardians to fully participate in their school communities. As we know, engaged parents play a key role in helping students succeed on their way to 21st century careers in college. They are a key part of creating a positive school climate. Existing laws already protect students' records from questions about immigration status, and a 1984 U.S. Supreme Court decision requires all schools in California and nationwide to enroll all eligible children regardless of their immigration status. I recently spoke to Representative Javier Becerra, the Governor's nominee for the California Attorney General position, and the proud son of immigrant parents, about these concerns, which he shares. He will work closely with us and with us and the community on behalf of our students and their families. I've said it before, and I'll—I said it in the letter, and I'll say it again, California moves forward, not backward. Accountability in ESSA, we have an action-packed couple of days to look at the options, look at our progress, look at where we are and where we can move forward in a progressive, positive way, so I thank the great teamwork that's been going on and staff work that's been going on at all levels in my department and with your staff. So thank you for that, and we look forward to the public hearings and deliberations today. Happy New Year.
All right, I have then the usual announcements, which I will go through, and then we'll get to Item Two. So it is my great pleasure to announce that we have formed with the Community College Board of Governors a new California Workforce Joint Advisory Committee. Matter of fact, I chaired something similar to this with the community colleges back in the '70s, and our—I think our relationships have—need to be much closer, particularly in the career technical education and transfer areas, and therefore, it—I have appointed three of our members, Ortiz Lee Cohen, Patricia Rucker, and Ting Sun, to the California Workforce Joint Advisory Committee, and the Board of Governors of the community colleges have appointed three of their members. The main purpose of the committee is to address systems alignment and policies specific to career pathways in the context of recent and future state and federal investments. And the joint committee will start with a joint statement of desired principles, and some of the focuses of the work are career guidance and counseling, dual enrollment, data sharing, generating awareness of career technical education as an option, alignment between the two systems, and sustaining our initiatives of career pathways trusts and the incentive grant for ROP/ROC. And we hope to have a meeting by the end of next month. Generally, K-12 and higher education are separated. There are no formal bodies that bring us together. Our master plan in 1960 did not discuss K-12 education, so we operate in relative formal isolation of each other with very little contact. Superintendent Torleksen and I addressed the California—University of California Regents together, and I met with all the faculty senate heads of all the universities, colleges, and communicate—in the state. So we're beginning to get more interaction, but I think this is an important formal action, and I know the community colleges are very enthusiastic about this. The new chancellor, Eli Oakley, from Long Beach Community College, he's really a spark plug behind some of this, and so I think we're really on a different and improved path of more work together. Okay, changes in the agenda include—we've already completed Item One on officers' elections. Spanish and interpreter services will be available for Item Two this morning. There is one public hearing on our agenda tomorrow, high-tech, high reauthorization as a charter. There are addendum, meaning attachments, to Items One, Three, and there are four attachments to Items Fifteen, Computer Science, that some of the public needs to—may not have seen because they're addendum. Consent calendar and waiver consent items. There is a handout on the table listing the proposed regular consent items, and proposed waiver consent items includes W-1 through W-12 and W-15 and 16, not 13 and 14 on our prior agenda. Any member of the Board wishing to remove items from proposed consent calendar should advise our Executive Director by 12:00 today. The members received all letters from the public on all aspects of our Board meeting on electronic folders sent in advance of the meeting, and there is an electronic agenda and one full copy in the lobby of the agenda. Speakers should sign in at the tables outside. When you speak, please identify yourself and any affiliation you care to mention. All speakers will get one item for all—I—for will get one minute for all items on the agenda. However, groups of five will get a total of three minutes. Anyone wishing to submit materials at the meeting should provide at least 25 copies, and we have additional seating with TV monitors in Room 1103 around the corner and down in the hall. So I noticed some people standing. There is a seating room, that Room 1103. Okay, that is where we have at this point, and so I've completed announcements, and now we're ready for Item Two, and the Department will begin this presentation in this—in this regard. And so I wanted to outline the procedure for this—for this. The State Board of—the State Department of Education will present. Then Board members will ask clarifying questions. These are more technical questions. Then we'll hear public comment. Then the State Board will deliberate on—on—the—on this item after the public comment, and the—the item will probably include multiple motions for the Board to consider. So with that, the Department, Cindy, is here to present, and we look forward to your presentation.
Thank you, President Kirst, and members of the Board. I'm Cindy Kazanis, the Director of the Analysis, Measurement, and Accountability Reporting Division. Happy New Year. Last year, when we last met in November, we promised to bring you back this item, so you will hear what we've been doing over the last eight weeks to make this item, I think, a sound item and based on research, and we've reached out to a lot of stakeholders on this, and so if anything, it's been quite a journey, and I want to acknowledge my colleagues and my staff for the efforts they put in. So just a brief overview, this is really the last—I think about this as one of the last phases in the first phase of the accountability system. With today's action, the Board adopting the Academic Indicator and the local priorities Two and Three, you will close the first chapter of this piece of creating a new accountability system. That journey started back in March in 2016 with the architecture developed, and I know—I saw Nancy here today, and it always brings back a smile, that she helped us through those first couple of months, or rather, the first couple of years. And—and so throughout 2016, you had pieces of this, and so LCFF was—was meant to be a phased-in process. This is the last phase in that process. The—the big part that we played a role in is in July and September with putting together performance standards and having you adopt the evaluation rubrics. And then in November, of course, you did adopt a revised Local Control Accountability Plan template. And I also just want to note that this is a continuous improvement system, so I would be remiss in not saying that you're not going to—at your next meeting, open this up again for discussion, because this is—this is a life cycle that has been developed. It is a March timeframe that we look at the indicators, so—you're not off the hook. You may be over with Phase One today, but Phase Two will start, and we'll start this continuous improvement process. So there are six attachments to this item and two addendums to those attachments. The first attachment is the proposed definition for the English learner subgroup, as well as the performance standards for the Academic Indicator. Attachment Two, the growth model selection criteria, in which Michelle Center, my colleague from our Assessments Division, is going to help walk you through some things to think about as we look to develop a growth model. Attachment Three is the proposed approach to look at the local performance indicators Two and Three, which are around state academic standards and parent engagement. Attachment Four, you're going to hear guest speakers from the Collaborative talk about their work over the last couple of months in getting the state and our local educational agencies, as well as the public, ready for the launch of this new system. Attachment Five is our timeline that we always put together, and then finally, we always give you the education code as a reference. So as President Kirst mentioned, this—this presentation's going to be a little—little different structure than we normally do. It's a little bit longer than normal. I usually have shorter slides, but seeing that we gave you about 75 pages of reading material, I felt like we could give you a couple extra slides today. But I also wanted to make sure that we pause between what—the items that were meant for action and those that were meant for informational purposes. So just to reiterate what President Kirst has already said, so the public can see this on—the screen, that we will—we—I will review Attachments One and Three, which are the ones that require action. I'm going to ask for clarifying questions from you on those items. I may bring up other people to help respond to those questions. And then you'll have an overview, like I said, from Michelle Center on the growth model selection criteria. She's going to ask you for feedback. And then the same thing with the Collaborative. It's—it's meant to be a dialogue between you, because those are for informational purposes. The item will then open up for public comment, and then you'll have Board deliberation on Attachments One and Three. So this is the recommended action from the Department for Attachments One and Three. The first is to, A, adopt the performance standards for the Academic Indicator based on student test scores on the English, Language Arts, Literacy, and Mathematics for grades three through eight. That includes results from the Second Year of Smarter Balance test using the methodology known as distance from Level Three. And B, the definition of the EL student group as ELs plus students who have been reclassified fluent English proficient for four years or less for the Academic Indicator. The second action is to approve the proposed self-reflection tools and the addendum for Attachment Three for local educational agencies to determine progress on the local performance indicators for implementation of the state academic standards and parent engagement. In order to get to those recommendations, I wanted to assure you that we've done everything we can to get input on these two—on these two major issues, or three major issues, if you want to put it in that context. First, we made sure that between the Board meeting and the December 7th California Practitioners' Advisory Group, that we had something to share with them. So we did data runs around—that, and we did share that out, and I'll talk through each of them individually as we—as we go through the action pieces. They did consider the—the two items that you have for action. The School Conditions and Climate Work Group continues to meet, and so that is a major contributor for the local performance indicators, under the direction of Glenn Price, our Chief Deputy Superintendent. And then finally, in collaboration with our—our English—English learner division director, Veronica Aguilar, and her staff, my—my staff has been putting together—or rather, we've had two meetings of the English learner progress indicator work group, and they met in Jan—in December as well, and so we did get to run these ideas by them. This is in addition to wherever we went, whether or not we were asked to speak at a SESSA meeting or a regional assessment meeting, we—we took along our toolkit of "we want to ask you these things and get your opinion on them." So please be assured that during the holidays, where we could, we made sure that we solicited So at the November meeting, you asked us to come back with methodology or review methodologies for using scale scores. We—we put together a couple of different simulations that we—that you see on the screen. So we looked at distance from Met, Level Three—or, excuse me, distance from Level Three, we used to call it distance from Met, distance from Level Two, distance from the state average, and distance from lowest possible scale score. We talked with our technical experts, not only with our technical design group, but with our testing contractor, the Educational Testing Services, who provided some very, very helpful feedback on each of these items. And based on their recommendations, we felt that there was—that—that we needed to move away from distance from the state average and distance from lowest possible scale due to technical soundness. I think the lowest possible scale score also had a bad name, so I'll give it that. And that was—that was generally the consensus of CPAC. They felt—they felt very strongly about that. They also thought that it was consistent with the messaging we've given them on the assessment side, even though it doesn't have to be the same. I think we've laid that out in the addendum. This can be a different decision from the Board, but really, our—our technical experts weighed in very heavily on this and felt very strongly about it. We think that parents will have an understanding of the knowledge and skills that Level Three represents, which is what we're recommending to you, and if we were to select a fixed point other than Level Three, that would represent, I think, a communication challenge to the public, which is what we've, you know, been encouraging to think about this goal of Level Three for the last three years with the rollout of our new assessment system under CASP. And like I said, the stakeholders are generally unanimous of this decision to move forward with distance from Level Three. A couple of things I wanted to talk about that are—that are different with this indicator. This indicator, keep in mind, is based on rigorous standards that were adopted by—the Board with Common Core and the implementation of—of the Smarter Balance testing. When you look at the technical assistance criteria considered, and I'm sorry if this may look small to you, but this was—this was provided in an information memorandum in December, which was an update of the evaluation rubric, so this is where this chart comes from. It shouldn't be new to—to folks. But if we look at Priority Four, which I'm going to show you on the next page in larger print, it's really the only—the only priority that includes orange as a measure. So if you look at—what I'm trying to say is the technical assistance criteria for the Academic Indicator is—is more difficult, more rigorous. So it—the—to get into having technical assistance under LCFF for the—for Priority Four, you'd either have red on both Language Arts and Math, or red on English Language Arts or Math, and orange on another test. So that really adds a whole new layer of potential districts and schools that will need intervention. So what—that means as well is that the five-by-five grid, like we've set along, is unique for each indicator. And for this indicator, we did note that we did have a box that was changed from yellow to orange, and I think there's been some confusion around that, but I wanted to clarify. The reason is because the distribution is different, because of the technical assistance piece, and also because of difficulty of—again, of this—of this indicator. It impacts the distribution for status and change. The major difference is that maintained level for change is actually more positive, so there's—is a wider spread. So you will—you will see that—you—you should have seen that in the five-by-five Okay, I'm going to move onto the next piece of this recommendation, which is around the definition of English learners and the Academic Indicator. And one thing I wanted to provide as background, I think this is a good introductory slide. It just shows you how English learners are included in every single indicator. And as a reminder, the English learner student group is the only student group that has its own indicator, and in fact, as I mentioned in the addenda, we've actually renamed it to English learner progress, because I think there was some confusion out there about what it—it meant as a standalone indicator. So with that in mind, we, again, took back your recommendations to—to walk through each of the proposed definitions and to run data simulations about them. So we looked at English learners only, English learners plus two years of reclassified fluent English proficient students, and ELs plus four years of, again, fluent English proficient These are the distributions that—they came about from the data simulation. The Department's recommendation of EL plus four years provides, we think, again, based on research and stakeholder input and—in what we're looking for in accountability model, the most comprehensive picture of how a district or school is doing to a sister English learner population. We think this recommendation also allows us to track progress of English language acquisition, to increase access to the curriculum in all content areas, and it also helps us to evaluate the strength of the entire EL program from the initial designation through the successful reclassification. Keep in mind, because we do not have a state reclassification criteria, reclassification among districts varies. So with allowing for the four years of RFIPs, it'll allow us to look at the full spectrum of the program, how they're doing from being reclassified, and also try not to disincentivize having people reclassify earlier or not reclassify at all. So when RFIPs are removed and we look at the—the pros and cons of—the—the other options, this is what the data shows us. The number of schools with a valid N size for accountability purposes decreases. The number of red and orange schools increases. And the distribution across performance levels, there's really lax differentiation. You can see that in EL only, with the majority of them at the yellow or lower, and very few of them in the green or blue. It really does not allow districts to show progress. It's difficult to get to green, especially when you have just EL only. And like I mentioned before, it may be a disincentive for schools to reclassify students. So with that, I'm going to move on to the local performance indicators. And again, these are the final two priority areas that you need to adopt. And for Priorities Two and Three— And for priorities two and three, there was a webinar this last Friday that Chief Deputy Price conducted along with WestED, who's been very helpful on these priority areas. These recommendations have evolved. I think you saw in the addendums that between the memo that came out in December and the memo that, or rather, the addendum that was released at the beginning of the month, that the recommendation has changed slightly, and that's based on stakeholder feedback. And so I want to make sure that you're aware of that distinction. For both LEAs have the option to provide a narrative summary of their progress in implementing, at least for priority two, the state academic standards based on locally selected measures or tools. That's option one. And option two, LEAs can complete an optional reflection tool, and those were both provided in the addendum. And the differences were mentioned between the information memorandum and the actual addendum. And for priority three, LEAs will provide, are asked to provide a narrative summary of their progress towards seeking input from parents and guardians in school and district decision-making and promoting parent participation in programs. The state board, as I mentioned earlier, you've adopted self-reflection tools for LEAs to measure progress on priority six, school climate and coordination of services for expelled youth, which is priority nine, coordination of foster youth, which is priority ten. And keep in mind that these results must be reported at a regularly scheduled board meeting for the local educational agency. I know that Glenn is available for questions if you have specific questions about this particular recommendation. And with that, I leave it open for questions, technical questions related to the two recommended actions.
Cindy, thank you and your team so much for the amazing amount of data and details and response to our requests to really develop this. I have a question, and you did highlight your chart where you had EL, EL only, EL plus two years RFIP, yeah, that one. And so could you clarify, I mean, we've talked about the recommendation for EL plus four years RFIP and the rationale, but could you go back and clarify why the EL plus two years, you said something, I just needed you to elaborate a little bit, why the EL plus two years RFIP was not as solid a choice in this indicator as EL four?
The more that you're removing ELs from, which is a fluid group, I think everybody acknowledges that this is the one student group that changes. The more that you're removing them from that student subgroup, the more instability there is in the model. And so the longer that we can keep these students in the model, the more stability there is. And you can see, again, the differentiation between two years and four years across the different colors is greater. So it's a more valid and reliable model overall. And this is something that I know that I forgot to mention, but at our English learner progress work group, we did have CCSSO, which is the chief state school officers, did allow us to bring in, or rather, they provided us as part of our membership, national experts to talk about really level setting in terms of Essen. So we had Dr. Hakuta, we had Pete Goldschmidt from CSU Northridge, and then we had Delia Pampa from the Migrant Policy Institute. So they also, you know, really, their data, which is a lot more detailed than this, and this is obviously California data, nationally also shows the soundness of this. And I think that that's why ultimately Congress did approve, allowing states the ability to have up to four years of RFIPs for this student group.
Thank you. I know Delia Pampa quite well. She hired me, in fact, at National Council of La Raza, so she's a mentor. I have a question about the definition. I know that we have, there'll be other opportunities after public comment. I have a couple of notes that I want to share with people, but I do have a question about the definition. Will this EL definition only be used for this indicator?
That's correct. So this is the criteria that is used to define the other indicators. That's why I'm glad I put that slide in last minute. This is something that we have shown to all of our stakeholder groups. It is in, I know, the addenda as well, but it shows you how this is the only subgroup, this is the only indicator in which we bring in the RFIPs.
So I just want to echo Board Member Strauss's appreciation for you and your staff, especially because you worked really, really hard over the holidays to pull all this together after we asked you to go back and look at scale scores. So I just have a couple of questions and comments on the academic indicator slides. And I wonder, there, that one. Just wanted to make sure people were kind of focusing on this for a couple of reasons. Although we did talk about this in November and we have approved this, because we didn't really have the very specific data around pupil achievement and the academic indicator, I just want to make sure people understood what it means for purposes of a technical assistance. It's kind of the so what question, you know, what are we doing with all this data? And Cindy said this, but I want to make sure that I am clear about it, Cindy, that we purposely made the academic indicator a little bit more rigorous for purposes of defining how many LEAs we're going to need to be in technical assistance, knowing what we knew in the preliminary analysis of the first year of Smarter Balance. So I just want to clarify that's accurate, and you look at that in priority number four there, because we get, and Cindy also emphasized that the five-by-five grid is different for each indicator. We got a lot of commentary from writers saying, oh, you're doing something different on academic indicator. We're actually doing it on all of them. So just to clarify that, so as we hear people come up and talk about it, I also think it's important to, this is just a good reminder of a multiple measure system, right? All of these indicators can be used, certainly will be used to celebrate the success of LEAs, but also can be used for purposes of saying, hey, you're struggling in this area here, you need to have a little bit of assistance. Because I think that kind of gets lost, and especially now that we have test scores in front of us, it's like the rubber band, it snaps back, like, oh, test scores are the most important thing. They're not the most important thing, they are a very important thing, and we're acknowledging that in this construct. So just wanted to be clear about that. I think that's it. But anyway, thank you.
Board Member Holliday.
The scale score methodology for the academic indicator is going to be used with the grades three through eight?
Right.
But not the 11th grade, is that correct? Or is it going to be used for the 11th grade assessment as well?
I think that we are, I mean, yes, we are.
What's the answer?
Hang on just one moment, I need to bring my technical expert up, because we've been so focused on grades three through eight, we have put aside some work such as grade 11.
My name is Jenny Singh, I'm the manager of the Academic Accountability Unit. The academic indicator is grades three through eight only. Grade 11 is in the College Career Indicator, but we will also be producing a report for grade 11 that will use the same methodology, distance from level three. We will report that out on the website.
State Superintendent.
Obviously, this is a really important topic and item, and we've been tracking it and putting it high priority over the years as we've been implementing local control funding formula and the LCAPS and these accountabilities system. And I think we're all in agreement, we want to see our English learners succeed, and without their success, we can't succeed as an education institution or a state. So in briefing with staff ahead of time over the last week, I had a couple of questions that I thought could be helpful to, how do we get more data so we know how English learners are doing? I want to see our school districts doing more. I want to see the LCAP process address English learners' needs more. So I know one of the debates, whether it's four years, two years, or just those that have been reclassed, are there other places where we can get that data? And perhaps you could discuss the dashboard and how the dashboard could break down the data so that we can see progress in three dimensions, the two-year, four-year, and the reclass?
Sure. It was actually a slide that is later on, so I'm not going to skip to it because I don't want to, well, actually, maybe I should, since you've mentioned the word dashboard, which I don't know that everybody else has heard, so forgive me for skipping ahead. It's like the end of the book.
Multiple measures reflected like a dashboard.
There you go. So as Superintendent Tarlequins mentioned, there is a new name for the web-based system, the California School Dashboard. And this came about, I want to address that first because I don't want you to be confused about why we have yet another name. It came about because as I think the board kept working through actions and talking to stakeholders, rubrics just didn't make sense. To a traditional teacher or somebody in the profession, it's not a traditional rubric. And so while LCFF requires the state to, rather, the state board to adopt a new accountability tool called the Evaluation Rubrics, which you have done, the term, the California School Dashboard is something that's come up in conversation over the last several weeks with a great deal of stakeholder input on something that's a bit more easy to say. So calling it the dashboard, we think, is more parent and community friendly, and we think it'll be, you know, a better reflection of what it actually does, which is show you, you know, upfront how a school or a district is doing. The state board will continue to refine the accountability tool that, as we've talked about, the rubrics as required by statute, but the performance data will be presented, that will present to the online dashboard, it will continue to evolve as well. But to Superintendent Tarlequins' point in the second bullet on this slide, the dashboard does not limit what kind of data elements we can put in there. The indicators limit what kind of performance categories we have, so we will have performance categories for each of the indicators. But as far as the data behind it, we've been asked by our technical experts, as I'm sure Members Sun knows, they want to see what got to status and change, what are the raw numbers. And so information like that, information on English learners only, information on English learners plus four-year RFIPs as a standalone group, are all things that we can definitely add to this web-based system. Now, keep in mind that this data is being populated based on data that the local educational agencies give us through CalPATS. So they have this data now. They see this data, especially when you talk about the academic indicator, through the CASP reporting website, which they are now, I think, familiar with and comfortable with and using, and that is very transparent, something we've always, you know, we've put out with this new round of our new assessments. And so I think what we've learned over the last couple of months as well is reminding the local educational agencies they have this data, they should use, they should learn to use this data absent the state having the dashboard launched. And so we've been in contact with a lot of districts who are looking at their data and are concerned about where they are going to be showing up on the dashboard, but that is something that they are using then to think about how they're going to develop their LCAPS, and, you know, that they have every opportunity to report out on that student group through their LCAPS.
The data's being collected on multiple levels and will be more transparent and accessible with the dashboard as we get it going. So I think that's important so that parents, the educators, the school site administrators and all can access this data, that advocates for English learners can access this data. So I think that's really important. For long-term English learners, how can we get data to show where they're at and what progress we're making in reclass? And could you address the issue of the variety of, you know, criteria for reclass are not uniform, and how can we move in a direction that would help LEAs get closer together on how the methodology and definition of reclass?
Sure. So to start with the first piece of your question, which is around long-term English learner data, my division put out that that data is required by legislation in 2016. We'll continue to refine those data sets. There's some pieces of that display that we don't think are very user-friendly, so as we think and the discussion about reporting on English learners evolves, it's something that we want to take to our English learner progress work group, the reporting of data and how we display it on websites. You know, it's not to say that we can't have the dashboard linked to things that we have existing at the department. Dataquest is a very popular website, it gets a half a million hits a month on some months. So, you know, in addition to the department's website of being a frequent place that is an authoritative source of information, I think it's something that we can leverage. In terms of reclassification and not having a standard criteria, you know, that's a couple years, that is a discussion that's happening now and whether or not it's going to take place this year or future years because of the new test coming on board, the LPAC. I'm not able to answer all those questions, but I know Michelle is here as well, and Veronica, if you have specific questions around that. But that is a topic that the legislature has indicated to us is of importance to them.
And then I'll just wrap up, I'll address later the need to have even more facile and available sharing of best practices, and there's many efforts going on with CCE and others to do that. So I wanted to bring that out. Could you also just explain briefly what the CDE EL Progress Work Group is so that we maybe know more about what is going on and how board members here and others can interface with that work?
Sure. So the board asked the department to lead a work group around the English learner progress indicator, and specifically how we would incorporate different data sources like the long-term English learner, how we'd think about reclassification criteria, and then they took up the definition of the English learner student group in their discussion. And this is a group that we have reported to you in the information, in not only information memorandum, but in our agenda items, so you've been getting a regular update on the group since it was created in late summer. But it is made up of ELA title three folks, experts. There is an academic person on there. We do have Robert LaCunty from WestED serving as a technical advisor as well. And that group, because it's run by the CDE, has been, it's been met twice, and we'll have, we have two more meetings scheduled, but we are really using it to get some expert feedback on how we would proceed. We do have a technical design group, so we can look to them for the technical soundness of it, but when it comes to the program and the actual real, how you would implement something, this is the group that we would look to work with. So that is their purpose.
Board Member Sun.
Thank you. So I have, kind of turning a little bit away from the dashboard, just a technical question of when the parents, and this is around communication of the scale scores, when parents get the student report, they show a range on that student's report. And so within that range, how accurate and how do we explain that concept of distance to level three? And how accurate is it when we know that there is kind of a plus minus around that?
So I'll defer the accuracy to it to my colleagues, but I, you know, I think we're going to look to people like you to help us with the communication. We really need a crosswalk between what a parent report looks like and what a top-level display is. Top-level displays for a school and a district, it's not at a student level. So it's, and behind what a top-level display is, which is the performance categories, is a five-by-five grid. And so how do you disseminate information when it can be, I think, very complex to understand? We are committed to putting the five-by-five grids on our website by school, where schools land in the five-by-five grid. We think that'll be a helpful tool, especially for our ELA administrators to talk about with their parents and with the community members. But the whole reason that you asked us to look at scale scores, because it was a more accurate representation of how a student was doing, and enrolling those up to a school level, again, this is what the technical experts think is the most accurate representation for putting together this methodology that is before you today.
And just as we're looking at this data and everything, it just seems that we sometimes want the information, the data, to be something maybe that it isn't. And what I mean is that, I think that any piece, not just the academic indicators, but anything else, we should look at the purpose of that data and whether it meets that purpose or not. So I think when we talk about these, we kind of convolute the purposes of, are we displaying this data for transparency purposes? You said LEAs have the EL data themselves, but maybe we want to display that because for transparency, we want parents and community members to know that. But I think that if we were to say, by displaying the EL and the, the difference between the EL students and the RFIP student data, and we want to use that as a guide to locals for continuous improvement, I don't know that that will do that, because we end up with the same issue with that EL data being a very fluid population. And then if we are looking at, then the other piece is, are we looking at this data for, as an indicator for intervention or support, the accountability pieces of it? So I think that we mix purposes sometimes, and I think we need to be a little bit more clear when we display the data, what that data is and what it actually does. And maybe as we become more sophisticated and we refine this, that we're more clear to the public about what this means and what it doesn't mean, and what's purpose it's serving and what purpose it's not serving.
Second that, yeah. Ortiz Lacoon.
So I have two questions, and I'm not sure how far to get into this conversation because, you know, I want to follow the protocol. But going back to using only scores for third through eighth grade, we know that when we made that decision, the draft regulation- made that decision, the draft regulations did not allow the use of grade 11 for multiple state indicators. That is no longer the case. The final regulations do allow the use of test scores for multiple indicators. Have we, can we, should we reconsider the use of grade 11, not only for college and career readiness, but also within the academic indicator? So that's one question. And then the other was for the dashboard, and it's a little unclear to me how far down somebody would have to mine the data to find specific information only on ARFEPs, on ELs, and are we also saying LTALs would be uploaded? So I was hoping that there would be a demonstration of, but I know it's still under development. But if we could get a sense of, this is a top-level display, what will be there? And how far down do I have to drill to find that specific information? And what, how does that look? What does that data tell us? Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah. Do you want to comment on this, Dave Sap, at all, on the second question here? You're handling the...
I can take the first one. You had asked about the final regulations, and I think that there's a lot of consternation about what's going to happen with the new administration being sworn in next week and whether or not final regulations mean final regulations or if they get withdrawn. So with that, with that in mind, you know, we obviously have looked over the regulations, we are aware of the potential there, but I've been advised by my, you know, colleagues to tread lightly until we have a better understanding of how this new administration's going to act and the department under a new secretary will choose to proceed.
David Sap with the state board staff. The question about the data display, it's difficult to answer, because as mentioned earlier, the site is still under development, where we've continued to get feedback on the design, and over the next several weeks, we'll be actually doing some structured input sessions with different audiences to get additional feedback on accessibility and usability of the information. But the current design now, the way that the contractor has built it is, it's basically one click to get to more detailed reports that are, would include sort of this detailed data breakdown. So that's the current design, and it may change based on how the users describe their experience of whether that works well or not. So at this point, that's sort of what it looks like, but the site is still under development and will get a lot of feedback before it's finalized in terms of what rolls out for the LEAs themselves to be able to preview and then for the final launch later this spring.
But can you tell me what groups can be displayed on the top level? Is it those that are in ed code? Is it those that are attached to the state indicators? You know, the question was ARFEPs, ELTALs. Why wouldn't that be, why couldn't we show that in the top-level display? I think that it's important to have, there is a reason, but I think it's important for us to publicly state that reason.
So the student groups that are considered for purposes of technical assistance determinations are defined in the education code, that there's a, those are spelled out by the legislature of, these are the student groups that must be considered in reviewing performance for technical assistance purposes. That includes English learners, and the board is going to be asked to take action today on what that definition is for purposes of assistance and support. Beyond that, there are additional student groups that exist in ed code, or as Cindy alluded to, that data are currently collected and reported in one way or another, that can be included. The top, you know, that initial landing page with the performance levels is being limited to the statutorily identified student groups, because those performance levels for the red and then for the test score indicator or academic indicator, it's red and orange, that combination are what are relevant for that technical assistance. And by adding additional groups to that sort of top level with the color-coded performance levels, there's a great risk of confusion about sort of what the assistance criteria are, and so that's the basis for this distinction of the top levels focusing on the statute, you know, the indicators that are used for, that the state indicators and local performance, and which student groups are looked at there are the ones that are defined in statute as the relevant ones for technical assistance determinations.
Well, Bruce Holliday is next.
Thank you. Mike Kirsch. To follow up on Member Sung's comment, we have to remember that the decision that we're making today about the definition of ELs has to do with setting the bar for technical assistance and support. It does not prohibit us from making very clear in one layer or another of this dashboard all the other possible combinations of the data, such as ELs alone, that could be very useful or valuable for a school or a district to look at, and we would encourage them to do that. And I think it's very clear that the board is supporting that, that that data be very obvious and very accessible. I also would just like to say that I do think that the long-term English learners is, in some ways, sort of comparable to the chronic absenteeism group in the sense that these are young people that sometimes don't get as much focus perhaps as a larger group that is progressing more successfully. And I do think that having a way of really identifying those and keeping track of those could be really important to a school.
Okay, Board Member Burr.
Well, first, I just want to say ditto to Board Member Holliday. It goes exactly to Board Member Sung's point of what is the purpose for this information? And the purpose for this information that we're acting on today is to build out this accountability system and continuous improvement system. But I did want to just clarify, I think, Cindy, one thing you said about the information being available in DataQuest?
Yes.
Because I think that we're, again, we got lots of sources of information for different purposes, but we've had a very robust data system for many, many years, partnership with lots of different folks, that the data that is provided by the districts is all uploaded into DataQuest. So it's not as if the data isn't there. If people want to know for transparency purposes, you know, what does your ARFEP population look like? What does your EL population look like down to the school level? So I think we just need to reinforce that, that if people want to know it, and certainly we want LEAs to know it and act on it, it is available. It's just, it's there for a different purpose. Is that accurate?
Yes, that is accurate.
I just wanted to make sure, are you going to talk about the growth model at some point? I see that in the slide deck.
That's next.
And we're going to come to that, okay.
Yes, okay.
I get teased by this slide deck as you go through, and I'd like to see that.
You went to the end of the book. That's the problem.
Okay, so that will come up.
That is next, unless there's other questions about the action that you're going to be taking on the recommendations. Okay. So with that, I'm going to welcome up Michelle Sinner, my colleague from the assessment division.
Good morning, President Kirsch, Superintendent Torleksen, and board members. I was ready for this, but, you know, President Kirsch's eagerness has made me now a little nervous. So I will be going over attachment to only, and that is a draft set of what we have called the growth model selection criteria. So we consider this the very first step in a policy conversation that we need to engage in, and that conversation, we hope, will occur today with you. That one's not working, okay. So the conversation we want to talk about today is really about the types of questions that we want this growth model to answer and the types of characteristics that we want this model to have. And we've had little bits and pieces in terms of conversations, but we really haven't had a deliberate conversation with the board yet. So my hope is to facilitate the conversation with you today via the draft that we have in front of us. So while I have shared the five criterion with our CASP stakeholder group, that really is the only group that I have had a chance to reach out to besides asking for technical assistance from partners such as our Smarter Balanced Assessment Consortium and ETS, who were both very helpful in us trying to come up with this first draft. So our goal is to have a conversation today and then to start those conversations with other stakeholders, including our technical group that will have a meeting in February. The goal is to refine the selection criteria based on the conversation that you have today, and then eventually also use that selection criteria to come up with a defined purpose for the growth model, and then to eventually use this selection criteria to then run different comparisons about the models that are out there, and how do they fit into these criteria that you have, you have had this conversation to discuss. So I'm going to briefly go through the five that you have in front of you. The first is, we want our model to conform to rigorous technical standards. It should be capable of measuring academic progress over time for schools, LEAs, and the state. That's a very specific list, just to point out. That list did not really say students in terms of providing a student measure, maybe calculated, but you will see in this, in this draft here, we're really talking about displaying that for, in terms of aggregates, for these schools, LEAs, and potentially the state. It should produce precise information that's valid for its purpose, and the model should have the capacity to produce reliable results for student groups that are as small as 30. So that gets us through the first one. The second one, it should be capable of being included in the board-approved accountability system. Specifically, we would put the growth model as the measure of change for the academic indicator that you have just discussed, that is for grades three through eight right now. Information should be consumable, though, for our LEAs, for the purpose of establishing local goals, for the purposes of evaluating their local programs. So note that this doesn't restrict the use of the information of the growth model to just what would be displayed in the California dashboard, but we would hope that districts and schools would be able to use this information for local purposes. That would mean that we would have an obligation to provide data to our LEAs so that they would be able to conduct such local analyses. The growth model should provide a measure of progress of academic, academic progress across the full continuum of performance. The model should have the capacity to be used to evaluate gaps between different student groups, to make determinations about the narrowing of those gaps. The information on which the growth model is based should be consistent from year to year. The model should reflect how students performed in terms of where they started in the previous year. Note that the emphasis is on the ability of the model to measure growth across the continuum of the scale, as well as to take into consideration a student's prior score. This doesn't, does not say that growth on any part of the scale is necessarily equal, doesn't say that. Just want to point out a few, draw your attention to a few things. The next, the growth model should provide for the inclusion of all students. It should be applied to all students who earn a valid score on the English Language, Arts Literacy, and Mathematics statewide assessments. The information should, should be based only on student test scores and not on any other student or school characteristics. That's why it was so important that that other recommendation was stated before, which talked about the continuum of performance and not all growth being equal. So criterion fine, five, five, the last one that you have before you, the growth model should provide information on academic progress that is easily consumable by educators and the public. This doesn't necessarily mean that the calculation is simplistic, but that we can find a way to communicate about it and display it in a way that is understandable. So those are the five, and like, don't want to get ahead of ourselves here. Like I said, the goal today is to really get feedback. This is a draft, this is a starting point. It was based on little bits and pieces of conversations that board members have had in prior meetings, but you really haven't had an opportunity to see it all placed together. I think it's, I tried to draw your attention to those parts that I thought were important to really think about. For example, I think it's important for us to have a conversation about how we would display this. As you can see, the recommendation is not really for a display that is for each individual student. I think that that is something that other states may do, but is really not being recommended here. I think that the information that we provide to our parent groups right now is easy to understand, it is clear, we have received quite a bit of positive feedback on how we are providing those, that information. I would not recommend that we start including this. It's something we can look at in the future as we go down the road and we have our growth model, but in terms of the beginning, I would use this really for looking at aggregates of growth and looking at student groups. The other thing is, we talk about it being consumable, but this is not just a subtraction of scale scores most likely, right? So this idea that it is understandable, but it does not need to be simplistic, is an important thing to understand. We can still have a model that is fairly complex and sophisticated in terms of its technical nature, but find a way that we can talk about it so that it can be used. So any, any feedback or suggestions on how we can improve and refine this so that we can go on to our next step of getting some more technical advice, and then looking at the specific models and comparing them against these?
Well, we've talked before about the growth model ability to, if you will, simulate and explore future results so that it is ambidextrous and just doesn't report now. So we had a conversation before of like, and you said, we need a growth model in answer to my question, which is, what if, you know, I'd like to understand, and the board would hypothetically, if we were to close achievement gaps, how fast do people need to grow? Obviously, students at the bottom have to have an accelerated rate compared to the top. What is that? What would it look like? You know, what, so can it do that sort of thing? So will it be useful for analytical purposes in addition to just saying, what is?
So I think the board item did reference three different categories, broad categories of growth models, one of them being a projection model that really looks at projections in terms of if a student continued on the growth projection, where would they be? Where would they be in a year and so forth? That is one category. I would say, based on the criterion that you have in front of you, that is most likely not a model that would come out very strongly on some of these. That being said, I don't think that these criterion would in any way prohibit looking at longitudinal analysis, looking at how did a growth in one year, what did that look like for student groups? What did it look like the next year? And then doing analysis to make some projections without actually using a growth model projection model. The other types of broad categories are ones that are looking at absolute growth, that, for example, would be looking at a certain bar or standard. The other is looking more at relative growth, so those are the broad categories. We have not spent time yet really analyzing the specific growth models against the categories. We're not yet ready to have that conversation. It seemed premature because we hadn't yet talked policy-wise what you want the purpose to be for the model. Some states want the purpose to be to put a projection on that student report that goes home and let parents know, do, where do you think your student will be next year? That is a potential. That is not listed here, but that is something that you can consider.
Okay, other board member comments. Board Member Burr.
So Michelle, appreciate that you're bringing this forward. I think it's really helpful, but a couple of questions. One is, I thought we had a statutory mandate for the development of a growth model. Am I mistaken, or did I dream that?
There was a statutory mandate, I believe, but I am not absolutely certain, Member Burr, that that was one of the codes that is no longer in existence. This right now, the growth model, the suggestion would be that it would be used as the change measure for the academic indicator.
Okay. So I just think that would be helpful for us as we go forward to say, is there really a statute? Because I know there was one, I don't know.
You're right, there was one.
If it evaporated somehow.
I think it did with 484, but we can double check.
Okay, because I know it predated our CASP.
Right.
It was for California Standards Test, but I think it's sort of, it did lay out some expectations about, I think to Mike's point about what point about whether or not we're trying to set targets to say, yes, we expect you to grow at this rate. And, you know, that's a way that we measure in our accountability system. So I think we need the context a little bit more. I think what you've started with is candidly, motherhood and apple pie. It's a great set of principles for us to think about. I had two specific questions. One sort of goes to member Sun's, I think, question about, you, you seemed very careful about how you were using student growth relative to LEA and state growth. But a question would be, is if we're, it has to start somewhere.
Correct.
And presumably, the student growth information would be available at the school level and the LEA level to act upon as necessary, but at the state level, we wouldn't be putting, you know, plucking out individual students' activity.
That's, that's correct. I was trying to state it in a way so it was clear that the calculation would have to be done at the student level. That calculation should be available for our districts to utilize in terms of their analysis. I see a role for the state in terms of providing suggestions on how you might conduct analysis using that data that we are providing to them. Not necessarily the only ways of using the data, but suggestions on appropriate uses of that. I think that this idea of setting up targets and projections, you will see it's nowhere in this, and it really was intentional from my part. That doesn't mean that that may not be where your goal is, to set growth targets and expectations. The accountability system in itself, the indicator, will do that via your five-by-five, right? But this does not set those expectations at a student level.
Okay. So I think as you come back with the different, the three different models that you talked about and, and what it looks like in the context of these criteria, that, that's kind of the question in front of us. Because I think we have growth in our mind for different reasons, and some of them are mine or old from old statute. But we really have built into the five-by-five model, change, which is essentially growth. And so the question will be, is that sufficient? Or do we need to do something beyond that, seems like to me? But my last question has to do with about grade 11, because that keeps coming up. And, and my recollection of the reason, one of the main reasons we kept it out of the academic indicator was because we didn't have any way of measuring or weren't sure that we had a way of measuring from ninth to 10th to 11th. So we said, let's put it all in the college and career indicator. So the question is, if we go through this exercise and we get additional years of data, whether or not grade 11 makes sense to be included in the academic indicator? Will, will that be explored in this evaluation?
Technically, you, you can do the calculation from eighth grade to 11th grade. There's, there's no reason why you couldn't do that. I think that part of the conversation when the decision was made really had to do with double counting the grade 11 tests and really not wanting to do that. I think we should, also, I think Cindy made an excellent point when she talked about this being continuous improvement. There's no reason why we can't have this conversation about three through eight now as we continue to explore whether or not we think it's appropriate for grade 11, or whether or not it's appropriate, maybe not for the indicator, but for inclusion in that extra data that is, that is on, that is one click away, as, as David Sapp mentioned, which I think is a great new quote that we're all going to use, one click away.
Other, other board member, technical questions on this issue at this point? Okay. All right, thank you, Cindy. Cindy may come back, I guess, is what I meant. Thank you, Michelle.
Great. And we are moving on to our next guest presenter from the California Collaborative for Educational Excellence. I think we have Josh and maybe Ish. All right. And they will introduce themselves.
Make sure I'm on pace. Is the PowerPoint, okay. Good morning. President Kirsch, members of the board, thank you for having us give you a brief presentation on what the California Collaborative for Educational Excellence has been doing. My name is Josh Daniels. I am the Director of Outreach and Training. I'll be referring to my agency as the CCEE, or for all you Star Wars fans, C2E2. And I'll get right to it. So we were established as part of the LCFF law to advise and assist LEAs in improving student outcomes. We have a five-member governing board. Two of our esteemed governing board members, including our chair, also serve on your board, board member Burr and the state superintendent. And our executive director is Carl Cohn. We've, we have these evolving guiding principles about how we approach both the PD work that we're doing, as well as the support work that we're doing. And I'll briefly go over them. We start with a profound respect for the local level. We think that those at the local level have insights and expertise that we at the CCEE do not have. And when you go and you partner with an LEA, it is important to come with that understanding. Community stakeholders are important to the process and are important to getting the local decisions right. We have a commitment to, to the improvement process, but it must be owned at the local level. If we go in and we propose solutions and the LEA itself is not owning that process or those solutions, once we leave, it will not happen. And so it must be a partnership, a true partnership, where the locality, the LEA owns the process and the outcomes. We like to use a phrase, perhaps not as good as Mr. Saps, but we like to use a phrase that says, we don't do anything to you or for you, but with you, to sort of underscore the partnership. And lastly, we, we think this is one of the key points, closing the achievement gap takes time, because it involves systemic change and capacity building. It's not as simple as putting in a fix-it program and then walking away and saying, it's fixed. But it really means building capacity so that five, 10 years down the line, the improvements you've made are, are realized. So how are we going to go about doing this work? The legislature gave us a one-time allocation of $24 million. Four million of that was for the pilot program to work with LEAs on a pilot basis, and 20 million was to provide statewide professional development. And the legislation said that it must focus on how to use the rubrics, now the dashboard, this was written before today, and the template to support continuous improvement, and that the, the PD must provide it in all regions of the state and available to all LEAs. We brought the PD plan to our governing board on October 6th. It included four components. The first component was two sets of statewide workshops, one in the spring, one in the fall. The second component focused on creating and supporting aligned local trainings, not necessarily uniform, but trainings that were consistent across the state with respect to the rubrics, excuse me, the dashboard. Component three is, uses the concept of professional learning communities to really get sort of deeper into the work of how to support systemic change, that capacity building. And then the, the last component is a support desk. This plan was, as I mentioned, was approved by our governing board on October 6th. Per the legislation, it was then sent to the Department of Finance that approved it on October 12th. I'm going to now turn it over to my colleague, Ish Rairoot, who is the Assistant Director for Training and Outreach, to focus on the fall workshops that occurred in November to give you a brief update on that. Thank you.
And seven seconds. Good morning, everyone. President Kirsch, Superintendent Torlefsen, members of the board, Ish Rairoot again, Assistant Director of Training and Outreach for the CCEE. As you can see, we had nine workshops. Those workshops happened across the state. In the next slide, we'll show you the locations. So we'll pull that up momentarily. We'd like to thank Vice President Strauss for attending one of them, and also thank Melanie Sheppi and the California Department of Education for their support. She participated and presented at some of these workshops. We looked at developing this common baseline around the dashboard. What is listed here is the evaluation rubrics. And we wanted to recognize upfront that people were going to come from various experiences and various backgrounds, but regardless of where they came from, if they were experienced, they would leave with some resources they could use. And if they were new to it, they would leave with sort of this, again, this baseline understanding. We found across the board, and I think the, the next slide will attest to this, that there was strong interest, particularly from school districts, which was good news for us, because certainly we want them to be able to take, take away the knowledge and use it. The feedback overall was positive. As you can see there, there were, there were some lessons learned for us, which is that we need to continue to tend to this idea of differentiation. Having hundreds of people in the room with so many different backgrounds means that we need to look at sort of how to best serve all of those different groups. These are the workshop locations. You can see the total number of attendees listed at the top is 1,905. And then each of the venues is noted there, from November 2nd to November 19th. You have the location and the number of attendees per location. So everything from 402 in Sacramento to 60 in Reading, or 45 in San Jose on one of the Saturdays. We have been trying to figure out the best way to make sure this is accessible to everybody. So in addition to having these in-person sessions, people can access resources on our website. You can access the PowerPoint slides in English and in Spanish, as well as the handouts. We had translation services available at the locations, and our video and, and other resources are also there, which can be accessible, that, that web link at the bottom of the So in terms of next steps, we have released a video version that people can, can use, and we've broken it out by section. So if somebody wants to just look at the evaluation rubrics, they can just look at that section of the video. If they're trying to understand some of the tools, they can look at that section of the video. We also want to thank our partners at the State Board of Education, the California Department of Education, and CSESAA, who are helping us to develop a frequently asked questions document in response to inquiries that surfaced at the workshops. We use something called Social Q&amp;A, which was a digital platform that people could use to ask questions. For those that would prefer, they were also able to write down questions about the evaluation rubrics of the dashboard on three-by-five cards or sheets of paper. So we aggregated all of that. And again, we're working on this FAQ that will be coming out soon. And then we are starting our planning efforts for March. So we'll do another round of workshops come March. And right now, the way we're describing it, you can see it there, is that the preliminary focus is on using the evaluations or the dash, the dashboard, the valuation rubrics of the dashboard, and the revised LCAP template, and how we can look at those two things together and make sure that they're complementary and that they're supportive of continuous improvement in the local context. So with two minutes and four seconds, I would like to make sure to open it up to any questions that I might be able to answer.
Well, so I just want to thank you, Ish, and the entire team for the work. And I was, I was really appreciative of watching you all in action. And just to compliment the work that you've done on your digital, on your PowerPoint, and your, some of the representations that you have, I think are, they're the best that I've seen of some of the, trying to make it really clear to the stakeholders. And I thought each of the, you had a tough audi, I mean, a tough setting with a big conference center with concrete floors. And I think you learned about how to, but you really had people engaged. The digital engagement, I thought, was particularly effective. And you did represent that we had a wide variety of stakeholders from all different backgrounds and experiences. So just a compliment to you all for how thorough and how well-prepared and the, the material that you gave them. And for all of us, all the slides are available on their website. Sue told me that before, so it was really nice to know that that's available to everybody. So I just wanted to compliment all the work of trying to create all the resources to be available to all of us out in the field.
So much, appreciate it. Board member Williams.
I, I just want to get clarification on the very last point on that slide, that the preliminary focus, starting in March, is on using the LCFF evaluation dashboard and revised LCAP template together, is, will the focus, is the focus then being able to look at the data that will come out of the evaluation dashboard and think about how it should inform the priorities in the LCAP?
So that will certainly be a component. So, are you able to hear me all right? That will certainly be a component. So one layer of this is going to be actually looking at the digital version of this dashboard, right? So, so actually showing people what it would look like. It would include the potential for reminding people how calculations were done in terms of reference charts. It would include, people have the opportunity to, to talk with partners and potentially in breakout sessions, based on their areas of interest, how they could use data to inform the work that they do on the LCAP. And we're wanting to be responsive to, again, to the various needs. So for some people, that might extend to communication about it, right? So it might be, all right, we've, we've used these data, they've helped to inform our LCAP in these ways, and how do we communicate about it? So we're, we're going to try to create opportunities for all of that.
Okay, one, one last question. And you mentioned that there was positive response from charter schools who attended.
Yeah.
About how many attended?
So I'm glad you asked that. And if you'll just hold with me one second, I have a series of charts for reference, just in case you asked. So we had 177 charter school participants.
That's pretty good.
It was great to have their, their participation.
Board member Holliday.
Does this complete the presentation for CCEE?
Yes.
My sense is that you may, that you are being approached by a number of schools and districts or LEAs seeking help on very specific concerns that they have about academic performance at, at the local level. Is that true?
Yes. So everything that I've been presenting on has been related to our professional development plan and the workshops that we did most recently. But to your point, there's a whole nother body of work that the CCE does around what we're currently calling pilots, and it's a partnership and an engagement with, for example, a local educational agency like a school district, around areas of need that they want to work on. And CCEE staff is providing direct support to those LEAs around continuous improvement. It could certainly connect to these issues around the LCAP template and the evaluation rubrics of the dashboard.
So how's that going? Do we, are you, is the CCE overwhelmed by the number of, of LEAs coming to you for assistance? Have you reached capacity? What, I just want to sense.
Yeah, I know. So, so that is a great question. I'm going to look to my left. I think we're currently at seven. So we currently have seven pilots. We are looking at bringing on more, and there have been more inquiries. In terms of, of the total numbers that we're able to serve, I don't think we yet have a final answer on the total number that we're able to serve. But I'm looking, Josh, do you have a number of that I don't? Yeah.
Josh Daniels, CCEE. So we are still adding a few more, but it's definitely true that there is more desire for, to work with us, that we have capacity to provide at this point.
Board member Ortiz, look on.
So this is not specific only to C2E2, and I've never watched Star Wars. I think I'm at 1%. I just realized it were different than Star Trek, like, two years ago. Yeah, sorry. So my question is about technical assistance, comprehensive, the, the whole gamut of services. And one of the things, and I know I've shared this with a couple of the board members, is I still don't know how that looks. What is our capacity? How are we gauging that capacity? Do we tailor the support differently, depending, for instance, let's say that your lowest performing group is African-American students? Do we then send out people who are experts in African-American students? And what best practices have worked with this specific student population? Or if it's English learners? Or is it very general, like, this is your data, what can you tell me about the data? At what point do we escalate or intensify that support? One of the things that I thought about with the county offices, there's so many different sizes, right? And so what is our capacity, again? What happens if they're the ones that need technical assistance? Are they also giving technical assistance and receiving it? I don't know if, if we've had a, a full discussion about that. So, not that I want to put it all on you, because I realize that some of it has nothing to do with, with CCEE, but maybe some reflections on that?
So this was raised at our last CCEE board meeting, and there was some discussion about the different groups that are providing technical assistance, including the CSESAA, including the department, and, and others. And I think that there's continued conversation around how it would be divided up. Member Burr, I want to sort of be sensitive to your role in this. Would you like to add additional thoughts, or would it be best if I take it?
Go ahead, you were. So I, I'm officially taking off my state board hat, putting on my CCEE hat. Couple of answers. We, we did have a preliminary discussion at our December meeting about an expansion plan, if you will, for what, what does the collaborative look like when it's built out? But that, underneath that conversation is a required conversation about roles and responsibilities of all of our partners, and that has just begun. So who does what, when? So who does what, when? You know, what's the front line? Is it the county superintendents that do the frontline work, which we think it probably is? The, as additional needs are, become aware of, then it comes to the collaborative. It ultimately goes to the superintendent if you have to do intervention. There's some statutory definitions that help us define that. But that, that's an ongoing conversation that'll come back to us in our February meeting and I'm sure talk more specifically about it in April. So those are ongoing questions. I think the pilots that Esh mentioned, I think Josh mentioned as well, are, I think, very helpful to us. They are people who volunteered. We've got a range of districts, size of districts all over the state. We have a county office in there that volunteered. And as Josh emphasized in his opening slide, this is work that's done in partnership with those LEAs. We've had lots of efforts over the years to come in and fix LEAs. We're going to send in a team, a strike team, whatever you want to name it. And those have been, you know, middling successful. So this is really an attempt to, if you will, teach them to fish, right? Help them with the tools they have and identify areas where they can get some additional assistance. So the pilots, we hear an update on our pilots every month, every time we meet. And the one thing I want to especially thank Superintendent Torleksen for is this emphasis on needs of English learner students. So we've been pretty careful in our selection of the pilots to make sure that we have a very broad spectrum of LEAs and with high needs with respect to their EL students. So we're learning a lot from that. The other thing that we didn't mention is peer-to-peer networks, which is a big piece of the first phase of work and will be ongoing. I think we've seen through CORE and other peer-to-peer networks, that can be a very effective strategy. We're learning about that. That's being done across districts, it's being done across counties. So there's a lot of work that's just begun and you'll hear a lot more about it. The one thing I wanted to mention to your question, Member Williams, there's a lot of data about these workshops on our website. We had a full presentation. The staff did a wonderful job in collecting the data, both about just the sort of nuts and bolts, who attended, how many people, et cetera. But also who, you know, what the level of satisfaction was, what were their needs, what wasn't met? So if you're interested in kind of diving deep into what we have, it's really on our website. And I finally, I just want to say thank you to the staff because this has been kind of a Herculean effort to get this off the ground. And this professional development piece is so important. It goes to the issue that President Kirsch has raised. We're now in the capacity building phase and we didn't have this opportunity when we did the first LCAP. And so it's a wonderful opportunity and I really appreciate the work that's been done to date around it.
Yeah, this, I just want to remark, this is a broad topic, one I think about a lot. And I mean, the CCE charges not just to work with districts that are in the red and it is to go across the spectrum of districts. However, we have a lot of other capacity improvement assets on the ground and you'll hear one of them in item three. And the question that Board Member Ortiz-Lacone asked, I think is the broader question. So we have 310,000 teachers and 11,150 schools. It's huge. So how do we get, and we have four new curricular areas, not four, curricular areas we've overhauled on the board. And implementing all this is just a huge situation. And there's a lot of different people working. Of course, there's the CORE districts, but UC Davis has a group working with rural districts. Kenji Akuda from Stanford has a Central Valley network. I've met with them of districts. The Gates Foundation has funded a series of improvement networks in addition to CCE and the county operations. So one in preliminary surveys of this, which is old, is we have some areas that are quite deep in this assistance and capacity building. And then we have deserts where there's nothing in a state that goes, you know, from Maine to South Carolina if you put it on the, on the East Coast. So this is something I think item three will maybe open up a little glimpse of, but the question really is, I mean, and most of the discussion in the past year is as of today will be overwhelmingly on accountability at the back end, but, and for continuous improvement, which is good. But first, there's, you know, our math scores are really low. Saying that they're, you know, reporting that is going to help some, but what is helping the teachers teach the math is the question on the front end. And intervention agencies can only do so much. So at some point, I think, once we get done with some of the things we're charged with doing by the legislature, I think this, you know, need to, need to think about this broader question and try and get some handle on it as to what we're really doing in, in capacity building support and all those sorts of things. And how well is it distributed and how well is it targeted? And data alone won't solve your problems, you know, of math, of teachers that are struggling to teach a new mathematics curriculum as using an example. So with that, I will end and next on my list is Board Member Sandville.
Thank you for the work you're doing to help professionals develop and then to help us build capacity and making the resources available electronically. So that's fantastic. I do have a request and this is related to geography. You did a lot of outreach and touched many communities throughout the state, but I would strongly encourage you to look at the tri-county area of Ventura, Santa Barbara, San Luis Obispo County, the central coast. I didn't see any workshops there. So as you develop your plan for outreach and service, please remember the central coast, the tri-county area. Thank you.
Thank you for that feedback.
Okay, Board Member Williams and Board Member Holliday.
I have been wondering to what extent you, the CCEE was going to build its own staff up and that was, that is going to be the people that go out and support LEAs that want or need the support? Or to what extent you were going to be, have a certain core group at CCEE, but then have other experts, other people like the county offices of ed, CSESAA, maybe even districts that are well-known for being core districts in, you know, certain kinds of areas, other providers that have, and like you would have a list or a bank of strong people and organizations with really strong expertise, but their expertise might be specialized. The thing I've worried about is specialization, that you have it, that CCEE have it, not just general school improvement knowledge, but for, and as an example, over the next three years, you're likely, we're likely to see that there are going to be some districts really struggling with next-generation science standards implementation. But we have a next-generation science standards early implementation group of eight districts and two charter management organizations that are almost ready. They're, they have a year and a half left in that program and they're almost ready to actually be able to service resources to other districts. And they, in science, if they were struggling with science. And similarly, I have concerns about charters and because while there is more difference among charters than they, than I think there is among traditional school districts, they vary more among themselves. But they, they do have things they share in common in terms of the way they approach their work and think about their work. And so making sure that you have either in your own capacity or others in the community, you know who's the strongest ones that would be willing to step in and help a charter that needed some support. So the question, so I had two questions. One was how much of this is going to be CCEE staff? How much of it is going to be drawing on other, other kinds of groups that are out there that usually do the work? And, and are you going to make sure that whatever group, whether it's your staff or another group, that gets matched with a, an LEA is matched appropriately based upon their need and the expertise of the organization or individual that gets matched with them? I think that's really critical.
So-
Board Member Holliday. So to build a little bit on Member Williams' comment, I do think that it's a huge task here, as President Kirsch has talked about, about coordinating all of these various resources in a, you know, intelligent way so that we take advantage of all the, all the good work that's being done out there. At the same time, I do think that it would benefit the CCEE to also be focused on some very specific needs that we've all been aware of for a long time and to build capacity in terms of expertise on some of the key problems in terms of closing the achievement gap. And Member Burr has talked about one of the pilot programs being focused on EL students. That's great. But African-American male students is, you know, the elephant in the room. And we, you know, we really need to remember some of these very specific challenges that we have in closing the achievement gap and make sure that instead of the sort of general, here's how you all look at LCFF, right? You know, and I don't mean this in an intervention sort of way where we go zooming in, this is how you solve the problem. But instead to make sure that we're paying attention to the latest wisdom about some of these very key problems that we have facing the achievement gap.
President Kirsch, I want to be sensitive to time, but also respond if needed. Would you like me to offer some quick follow-up comments? Okay, I'll be very brief. So I want to just thank you for the questions, let you know that there are some other people in the CCE that are, that are taking a very important role related to technical assistance. And so Josh and I came obviously to speak more about the professional development plan because this is very much on our radar. This question about making sure that there's a good match is central for us. So I think this was the last question that you offered. And when there is an intake, that's actually one of the primary areas that gets discussed is what exactly is the need and how do we make sure to address it? Currently, a lot of the work is happening with CCEE staff and I think we're going to continue to have conversations about this question around specialization to make sure people get exactly what they need. And I have a feeling it's part of a far broader conversation as well. Anything else?
Okay.
Thank you so much for your time.
We need a break. I think we're 20 of us. Okay, how much more do you have then?
I have three bullets and we're done. Okay. So what I did not, or four bullets, what I did not get to with this last slide, because we jumped ahead and I don't think it was appropriate to talk about the time, is we are in the process with CCE, others like West Ed and the state board staff, of course, looking at doing a communications role on the accountability system. Whether it's talking about the dashboard, whether it's talking about how to use the dashboard in the LCAP, whether it's talking to our accountability coordinators about how did we get to, you know, their place on the grid? There is, there is a whole series of conversations happening and also leveraging our partners in the advocacy community like AXA and others who have said that they want to be out in front on these issues. And CSESAA, who's actually been doing some great trainings around these things. So I wanted to make sure that you were aware of that. And we may ask you for help too. I think Ting brought up some points that, you know, resonate with me that we need to address as well. We are, this is just logistics-wise. The rubrics, the dashboard is still under development and we hope to have in the next couple of weeks, a process to enroll our districts. We've already enrolled our county offices of education. The district enrollment is going to be a little different because we would like to have the superintendents approve the person who has the access to that. The month of February will be a private preview for districts to really get used to the look and feel of the dashboard, to be able to, to understand where the data came from and where, there may be nuances that they weren't aware of that they'd be able to see. And then a public release of the dashboard in March of 2017. Again, this is all something that we've been working up to for a lot of months and we've been working with our contractor very closely on this. And just like the entire system, the dashboard is something that I think will continually involve and we are looking for user feedback throughout the process. And if we need to display something differently, you know, this is, this is the opportunity to do that. There is a lot of flexibility as we get into, especially those one-click-away displays, to make sure that what those look like work for, for members of the public and for, of course, our local educational agencies to make informed decisions on how to address the needs of their student populations. So with that, I know the next piece on the agenda was to open it for public comment, but I'll defer to President Kirsch on what you'd like to do.
All right. I think the board will then take a recess till 10 of 11.
Yep, 10 minutes. Go, go here.
Okay, the board will reconvene. And we're ready for public comment. Let's call the names of the first group that's going to come before us. Will the audience please be seated?
There are 51 people signed up for public comment.
How many?
51. May I have the following individuals please line up at the podium? Lori Olson, Karen Cordera-Kaplan, Martha Zaragoza-Diaz, Shelley Spiegel-Collman, Jan Gustafson, Lily Louvila, Norma Sandoval, Sandy Mendoza, Elizabeth De La Torre, Cheryl Ortega, Zalonia
Please get the mic on.
Good morning. My name is Anya Hurwitz with the SEAL Model.
Good morning. Maria Villa, Director of Family Engagement for CAVE, Project To Inspire.
Peter Schilla with Californians Together.
How are you, Lockwood, CAVE?
And I'm Lori Olson. I'm the Director of the Sabrato Early Academic Language Program. I'm a researcher and provide technical assistance on long-term English learners to districts and I'm co-chair of the California English Learner Roadmap. And we're here to really urge you to adopt an approach to the English Learner Academic Indicator that separately reports English learners from RFPs and also reports on the RFP plus EL four years and asking that all three of those cohorts be reported on page two of the LCAP template. California's efforts to create a single accountability system that links together both the local planning and resource allocation through the LCFF process with state technical assistance and support and accountability is really historic. And in a state like ours with large numbers of English learners with persistent historic underachievement and with documented longstanding inadequate responses to those needs, your decision today about the English Learner Academic Indicator goes to the very heart of whether this new linked single accountability system is going to in fact, address the needs of English learners. The English Learner Academic Indicator has to respond to two purposes. One of them is the state and federal accountability process of identifying the districts for technical assistance and support. But the other is guiding districts to determine and set their goals, to allocate funds and to really design the programs and services in response to needs. And thus far, the state's LCAP guidance and leaving it up to the independent initiative of districts to go and find the right data and respond to it has just not been sufficient either for accountability or for planning. And what you've put forth in the English Learner Academic Indicator so far will not rectify that situation. The new system already includes a pretty solid English learner composite profile for progress around English language proficiency and reclassification, but that's only one part of the story. We're charged also with providing access to academic content. And that's both access to the classes, but it's also all of the scaffolding to make it comprehensible. And yet significant numbers of our English learners are accruing large irreparable academic gaps as they're moving through our system. Without a strong English learner academic indicator that can really go to the heart of that, we're going to really lose what an accountability system ought to be. Both English learners and RFPs require focus and accountability. Combining them into a single indicator provides one overall picture, but it masks the experiences of each group. The solution is separate EL and RFP academic indicators in addition to the EL plus RFP.
I just wanted to come and thank you. I agree and support the department proposal that the EL indicator should be driving continuous improvement for accountability. However, in terms of the LCAP, there should be a clear focus on English learners. Academic growth reported separately from RFPAPS and data on RFPAPS is separate from ELs. The growth of current students cannot be determined by just one indicator. So as the state has made clear, the movement towards multiple indicators, that's great. We need to ensure that districts similarly have multiple indicators so that both language and academic proficiency are made evident. And that ensures there are conversations between the EL proficiency and EL academic measurements as they're developing LCAPs as well as for RFPAPS. So to this end, the combination of EL plus RFPAP washes out both groups into yellow in the majority of cases. So without separate data alerting to the specific needs of each group, without clear guidance requiring the LEAs plan a response to those needs...
Time.
...have the potential of leaving the needs out. So I just recommend the amendment to item two to add the definition of the English Learner Academic Indicator to include reporting the performance levels of ELs and RFPAP separately in addition to ELs plus four years of RFPAP. Thank you.
Good morning. Martha Zaragoza Diaz, and I'm representing CAVE. It is requested of the board that you add to the student board, to the student group charts, data on RFPAPS in addition to English learners and English learners plus RFPAPS. Doing so would be very easy. It would be just an added line to the group charts. In doing this first step, clarity is provided as to data that needs to be included on these charts. And RFPAP data, along with other EL data, provides more comprehensive information, allowing further step of placement on performance levels. We believe this request is very doable in light of the fact that the data is available. Please support the request to separately report EL and RFPAP in addition to the EL plus RFPAP data. Thank you.
Shelley Spiegel-Coleman, Executive Director of Californians Together. Assuming the top-level display that Martha has just suggested, let's take a look at Page Two of the LCAP template. Hypothetically, the results from a school district are shown here. The RFPAPS are doing well, and so they're indicated under the greatest progress. This is not only, this not only informs the district about how well they're doing, but it also serves as the process to respond to S.'s mandate to monitor RFPAPS for four years. As for the English learners subgroup, you'll see that they appear in the red, both in greatest needs and performance gaps. But what you don't see here is EL plus RFPAP four. That's because they're yellow. Seventy-six percent of our districts will not appear on this Page Two LCAP template, and that means it will be blank for English learner academic achievement. We're saying we can do better. We need to have measures that give districts directions on what they need to address in the LCAP. And we need them to just reflect who the students are today, ELs, RFPAPS, and ELs plus four RFPAPS. Or this blank sheet will not give the district directions they need. Thank you.
Good morning, board members and Superintendent Torleksen. I'm Jan Gustafson Correa, CEO of the California Association for Boundable Education, CAVE. Some people have suggested that instead of performance levels for ELs and RFPAPS, the district should go to their data dashboard to see test results for these two groups. Raw testing data does not build for continuous improvement as designed by this board. Continuous improvement looks at the status and improvement of each subgroup to compute a performance level, and nothing less should be expected of the academic achievement for English learners and for RFPAP students. So to implement an academic indicator for accountability and for planning and programming purposes, we need performance levels for English learners, for RFPAP students, and ELs plus RFPAPS for four years included on their group data results on the top-level displays, and then transferred to Page Two of the LCAP template. We request this language to be included in the adoption of Board Item Number Two. Thank you.
Good morning, board members and Superintendent Torleksen. I'm Jan Gustafson Correa, CEO of the California Association for Boundable Education, CAVE. Some people have suggested that instead of performance levels for ELs and RFPAPS, the district should go to their data dashboard to see test results for these two groups. Raw testing data does not build for continuous improvement as designed by this board. Continuous improvement looks at the status and improvement of each subgroup to compute a performance level, and nothing less should be expected of the academic achievement for English learners and for RFPAP students. So to implement an academic indicator for accountability and for planning and programming purposes, we need performance levels for English learners, for RFPAP students, and ELs plus RFPAPS for four years included on their group data results on the top-level displays, and then transferred to Page Two of the LCAP template. We request this language to be included in the adoption of Board Item Number Two. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Lilly Avilla, and I'm the Director of the English Learner Program for the Moreno Valley Unified School District, and I'm here this morning representing Dr. Judy White, our superintendent. Both Dr. White and I are in full support of the definition of the English learner academic indicator to include reporting performance levels of English learners and RFPAP separately in addition to ELs plus four years of RFPAPS and in all three cohorts being reported on Page Two of the LCAP. Separation of English learners and RFPAP students in the academic indicator will, as you heard from staff earlier, help to demonstrate the effectiveness of the entire EL program from initial identification through successful reclassification of English learners. Additionally, by separating the two groups, districts will be better able to monitor and provide services and supports to both groups, English learners and RFPAPS. Combining them will mask the results of both groups and diminish targeted attention to each group through the LCAP with appropriate allocation of funds. Thank you.
Good morning, members of the State Board. My name is Norma Sandoval, and I am a principal representing Lemon Grove School District. It's a small school district in San Diego and the 1930 historic case of Robert Alvarez versus Lemon Grove School Board. We learned a lot from that case. As the first successful school desegregation case preceding Brown versus Board of Education, we came to understand the dangers of overseeing the needs of subgroup of students. Our district has come a long way. Today, we work actively to secure equity and give every child the tools they need to succeed. Our district's focus this year is on English language development. This decision was based on a desegregated data reporting, which allowed us to see and address the needs of our subgroups. My site's SEC, for example, was able to allocate funding for a reading intervention teacher specialized in ELD. The state staff states they hope LEAs can consider the EL data to base their planning. This still remains an option, and will call for LEAs to go the extra mile to seek that data. Lemon Grove believes it is important to have desegregated data for all students, so hopefully we could support the LEA and RFPAP statements for planning and funding allocations in the combined ELA and RFPAP for accountability. Thank you.
Hello. Happy New Year. My name is Sandy Mendoza with Families and Schools. LEAs should be asking themselves, what are the goals for English learners, outtales, and RFPAPS? What are the actions and services we are going to take across our school system to improve programs needed for these targeted students? And how will we measure and communicate progress in ways that bring transparency and clarity about which students are struggling the most? Actual accountability to results would require LEAs to be more open and transparent so parents and community can evaluate whether their EL programs are meeting their expectations. It is important for schools and districts to communicate what they are doing, why they're doing it, and how effective it is. We have an opportunity to strengthen the accountability culture in schools and build their capacity to engage in self-evaluation and continuous improvement for both ELs and RFPAPS. We are supporting the definition of the English learner academic indicator in addition to ELs plus four years of RFPAPS on Page Two of the LCAP template. Thank you.
My name is Elizabeth De La Torre, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Superintendent of SAUSD and as a parent leader from Santa Ana District in CAVE, Project To Inspire. I volunteer at my child's school and serve on the ELAC School Site Council and Special Education Community Advisory Committee, as well as at the school and district LCAP committees. I'm at my child's school every day, and I see directly the critical and important needs of our English learners and all students. Our English learners are working extremely hard to improve, and I feel that it is imperative that on the LCAP, the data on our ELs and RFPAP students is separate, clear, and accurate so that parents, teachers, and administrators can easily see both the progress and needs of our English learner students. By including separate data on ELs and RFPAP students, it will be transparent, clear, and help us target how we will support our students. I am supporting the definition of the English learner academic indicator to include reporting the performance levels of ELs and RFPAP separately in addition to ELs plus four years of RFPAP and all the cohorts be reported on Page Two of the LCAP template. Thank you.
I'm Cheryl Ortega, representing United Teachers Los Angeles. UTLA supports the definition of the EL academic indicator to include reporting of ELs and RFPAP separately in addition to ELs plus four years of RFPAP and all three cohorts. Aggregate groupings has the disadvantage of seemingly presenting EL subgroups as performing at a higher level than is accurate. This results in potentially decreased funding and therefore the reduction in services to those students. Consequently, necessary and intentional programs for ELs may be not addressed in the LCAPs. Additionally, because it is critical that the progress in the acquisition of English language development not be confused with progress in academic curricular areas, we need separate and accurate indicators to measure programs in each area, progress in each area, sorry. We ask you to help provide the most accurate means of determining authentic student needs. Desegregated indicators make educators more able to meet the real needs of our students. Thank you.
My name is Chilene Cruz Gonzalez. I'm Vice President of the ASUC Unified School District Board of Education, and you should have received a letter from our Superintendent, Dr. Linda Kaminsky. As a district with a significant number of English language learners, it is important for us that our state accountability system provide us with accurate identification of specific student groups who need additional support. Adding the RFPAP data to the EL academic indicator subgroup would only muddy these waters. As districts and school boards utilize local control for continuous improvement, accuracy of top-level data reporting becomes critical, especially as we seek to close achievement gaps. As an appropriate and effective, an appropriate and effective system should identify and support need, not preclude provision of support by artificially masking the needs of English learners. For those reasons, we also support the addition of adding the English learners and the RFPAPS to the top-level reporting. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Manuel Colon, and I'm the Chief Academic Officer for the Anaheim Union High School District. We, our district serves 30,000 students in grade seven through 12 with over 6,000 English learners. One of my roles is to oversee the LCAP process. We are proud to share that our district has been selected as a pilot district by the California Collaborative for Educational Excellence. We were selected because of our inclusive and transparent LCAP process. One of the activities we do is a need-gap analysis. We look at where we are doing well and where we are struggling. Unfortunately, one of the subgroups that consistently struggles is our English learner subgroup. It quickly becomes clear to our stakeholders that English learners is a priority, and we collectively need to ensure programs and services for English learners are protected. We know that if our English learners are hidden, aggregating them with four years of RFPAPS, we, services would be reduced, causing these students to fail or drop out. I am supporting the definition of the English learner academic indicator to include reporting the performance levels of ELs and RFPAPS separately in addition to ELs plus four years of RFPAPS and all three cohorts be reported on Page Two of the LCAP.
Time is up.
Thank you.
I'd like to call the next group of speakers, please. Lilian Maldonado-French, Francisco Escobedo, Shannon Walker, Elizabeth Robitaille, Karen Valdez, Leticia Garcia, Joanne Lawler, Melissa Bazanos, Cindy Livers, LiAngela Reed, Doug McCray, and Martha Alvarez.
Good morning. My name is Olivia Yaya, and I oversee the Services for English Learners Department for Saddleback Valley Unified School District in addition to our pre-K-12 two-way immersion program. One of the responsibilities in our department is to analyze desegregated data to determine if our ELs, who are the most in need of improved services, are being successful with the curriculum products and services provided. Our parents, teachers, and administrators want concrete evidence in order to make informed decisions. We are the CSI for our ELs, shining a light on them to determine what are the appropriate and best services leading to academic proficiency, including reclassification and preventing long-term ELs. Therefore, our district is supporting the definition of the English learner academic indicator to include reporting the performance levels of ELs and RFPAPS separately in addition to the ELs plus four years of RFPAPS and all three cohorts to be reported on Page Two of the LCAP template. Thank you.
Good morning, President Kirsch, board members, and Superintendent Torleksen. My name is Dr. Barbara Flores, and I'm currently a board member in the eighth-largest school district in the state of California, San Bernardino City Unified School District. We have approximately 28% English language learners, 52,000 students, and when you add the RFPAPS, it's about 50%. So this is a very important issue. I have four points. I'm here today to support the definition of English learner academic indicators to include reporting the performance levels of both ELs and RFPAPS separately in addition to ELs plus four years of RFPAPS, and am requesting that all three cohorts be reported on Page Two of the LCAP template. Number two, I also want to make visible that ELs plus four years of RFPAPS limits the possibility of distinguishing which groups contributed to performance level rating and to know what growth targets to set and for which groups. That was it? Okay, thank you. All right. And as a board member, that's real important.
Good morning, President Kirsch, members of the board, and Superintendent Torleksen. My name is Mike Hendrickson. I'm the Superintendent at Charter Oak Unified School District in LA County. I'm here today to express my support for the definition of English learner academic indicator to include reporting the performance levels of ELs and RFPAPS separately in addition to ELs plus four years or less of RFPAPS. As an academic indicator that only shows a combination of ELs and RFPAP students would not delineate the performance levels of each of these distinct groups of students. Districts and their schools cannot be recognized for their work and progress with LFAP students, nor be apprised of the needs to increase and improve services to EL students under the proposed combined group definition. The way to address this expected disparity in performance between ELs is not to overshadow the performance of current ELs by combining them with RFPAPS, but to instead set rigorous progress goals and hold ourselves accountable for current ELs on their way to becoming RFPAPS using the LCAP process. Thank you.
I'm Lilian Maldonado-French, Superintendent of the Mountain View School District in LA County, and the majority of our students are EL. We thought they were fairly fluid, but upon analysis, we found that 95% of our ELs in the grade six to eight had been identified for over six years. At the state level, that number is 86%. This group is not fluid. We wrote our LCAP to target our students based on years in program with intervention for our long-term English learners, as well as prevention for our K-3 students, and we have seen fantastic results. Our ELs now outperform those at the state or county level. This growth would be masked by reporting only a combined RFPAP and EL performance indicator. Therefore, I support the definition which includes both ELs and RFPAPS plus RFPAPS and four years. All these cohorts should be reported on the LCAP. Yes, this information is available elsewhere, we know. But it is the LCAP that the community looks to for information about our students and our programs. Thank you.
Good morning, President Kirsch, Superintendent Torleksen, members of the board. It is with great pleasure to be here to discuss LCAP. First, I want to share my gratitude for your courage and this whole LCAP process. It has enhanced stakeholders' participation and helped us look at multiple measures. When you look at Chulavista, I'm the Superintendent of Chulavista Elementary School District, the largest elementary school district in the state of California. We serve over 11,000 English learners. We're about five minutes from the Board of Mexico. When you look at our achievement results, we exceedingly do better than the state. Our long-term English learners in the last five years, we decreased by 50%. And President Kirsch, you talked about data alone does not change scores, but however, how we look at data, it directs us, right, on the right professional development to help our student improve. And I can tell you, as a superintendent and my board would agree, that if we would look at just at English learners with RFPAPS alone, we would not have the success that we've had the last five years. So although I'm in complete agreement having them part of the accountability process, the whole planning and planning for professional development, we have to look at English learners aside from RFPAPS. You know, in my case, our RFPAPS do so well, we wouldn't have interventions for our English learners. learners. So I, I implore you to support the definition of English learners academic indicator to include reporting the performance of ELs and RFEPS separately, in addition to ELs plus four years of RFEPS, and all three cohorts to be reported on page two of the LCAP template. Thank you very much.
Good morning. My name is Shannon Walker. I'm an education equity attorney and my comments are on behalf of California Rural Legal Assistance and the Lawyers Committee for Civil Rights. First thing I'd like to say is that the LCFF expressly defines English learners and that definition does not include RFEPS. The legislature could have included RFEPS, but they didn't. The legislature's express intent was for English learners to be treated as a distinct subgroup whose specific needs should be addressed through concentrated funding and for whom LEAs must demonstrate increased or improved services. The state board does not have the authority to undermine the clear intent of the legislature by now defining a standard for use in the LCAP template based on a different population of English learners. Additionally, combining former ELs, which has been discussed, with current ELs will mask actual performance of low-performing EL students, making it difficult to identify them. And has been pointed out, 86% of our sixth to eighth-grade ELs have been in our schools for six or more years. They deserve their own academic indicator and this proposal would deny them that. Thank you.
Good morning. Elizabeth Robitaille from the California Charter Schools Association. We ask the board to adopt the distance from Level Three methodology. We've used this methodology in our academic analyses for the past year and a half. We've learned important lessons about how to make this information meaningful to educators and families, and specifically, we recommend that the state combine the ELA in math into a single indicator for greater comparability, and recommend that the state translate the distance from Level Three into a zero to 100 percentile to give more context to families about how a school performs relative to others across the state. CCSA remains very concerned about the lack of academic measures for high schools. We ask the board to include the same distance from Level Three for 11th graders as a separate academic indicator in the evaluation rubric. Otherwise, we remain one click away from meaningful high school academic accountability. Lastly, we support the recommendation to define the EL student group as ELs plus four-year RFEPS. We believe this best complements the EL progress indicator to measure the academic effectiveness of the entire EL program. Thank you.
Good morning. The next four speakers gave me their time. President Kirsch, Superintendent Torleksen, members of the board. My name is Karen Valdez and I'm the Assistant Superintendent in the Menifee Union School District, also a member of CPAG, but today, I'm here on behalf of Riverside County Education Leaders and the 425,000 students we serve. Riverside County educational leaders strongly agree that it is important to articulate California's high academic expectations for our students while crediting school districts for their gains and support using distance from met or Level Three as the performance standard for the academic indicator as the basis for the growth model. While we support staff's recommendation, we ask the state board to acknowledge S's prohibition to use average scale scores and to remain committed to developing a single and coherent local, state, and federal accountability system. On the issue of EL group definition, Riverside County Education Leaders support the inclusion of reclassified English learners, but remain concerned about concealing EL performance. We believe it is important to adopt a, a student group definition that mitigates any masking effects caused by the inclusion of reclassified ELs while properly crediting school districts and schools for effectively educating and serving their English learners. Furthermore, we understand that stabilizing value on this volatile student group when we include reclassified English learners. For this reasons, we support an EL student group definition comprised of ELs and reclassified ELs for a period of four years after redesignation. However, we recommend that board consider ways to mitigate masking effect of EL student performance within the student group definition. So addressing the issue can be mainly achieved by adopting mandatory state reclassification standards, which we hope would be forthcoming this year in terms of the legislative year. And however, another viable way to address this issue is by using a weighted method within the student group that gives close, that gives lesser weight to reclassified ELs than to the EL peers. Again, we ask that the board consider alternate ways to address this issue as the EL student group definition evolves. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. We look forward to continuing to work with you and your staff as we continue to develop and improve an accountability system that works for all. Thank you.
I'd like to call the next group of speakers. Araceli Simeon, Kim Lewis, Sandy Mendoza, Roberto Vieramontes, Tara Kinney, Hannah Melnick, Dani Espinoza, Daisy Gonzalez, Estelle Lemieux, Ken Burt, Jessie Aguilera, Lorraine Richards, Sheila Whitley, Angela DeRamas, Felicia Jones, Colleen Pactor, and Patty Scripter.
Good morning. LiAngela Reed on behalf of San Bernardino County Superintendent of Schools Ted Alejandre and San Francisco Unified. Superintendent Alejandre would like to echo the needs expressed by CABE and Californians Together for an appropriate measure of performance that also strikes the appropriate level of transparency, and we thank the board for their continued efforts to find a fair balance. In San Francisco Unified does echo the concerns raised by Californians Together for separating the EL, RFEPS, and then combines, we have three levels, so that the information is visible and in providing the appropriate context, and looks forward to continuing to work with the board on their commitment to ensuring that all students matter. Thanks.
Good morning. I'm Doug McCray, retired testing specialist from NRA. First, the department recommendation for scale scores with the distance to standard metric is technically sound and I support it. However, the rationale for threshold criteria is, are very hard to follow. The criteria appear to neglect expected changes over time in the status criteria and known variability for change for numbers of students contributing to each aggregate score. These factors are likely to erode the credibility of the new accountability system over time. As noted two months ago, scale scores are an appropriate preferred metric for calculating aggregate scores, but have a very limited appeal for reporting. I submitted a one-page handout on how California can use scale score metric for calculations, but convert the results to an easier-to-understand percent metric for reporting and communication purposes. The suggested strategy has been used by the K-12 testing industry over the last 45 years to solve the dilemma of technical properties versus reporting properties for choice of metrics. I urge the state department, state and scale scores, and state board to consider this tried and proven strategy. Thank you.
Good morning. Martha Albertson of the AXA. We want to appreciate the staff's work in just really thinking about the new system. We, we have seen a lot of memos, a lot of different addendums to the board items, and we really appreciate all of the work that they're doing. And we have heard from our members too, that they really want to get up the, more timely information moving forward so that they can really be able to use the local performance indicators during the LCAP process, as well as be able to think about how to use incorporate student data into those conversations at the local level. So we appreciate the update this morning about the California School Dashboard and how it's going to be used at the local level. We at AXA want to be partners in this work moving forward, and to that end, we have established a task force looking into these issues, including ESSA implementation or the, the state plan and the new accountability implementation. We support the staff recommendation for attachment item number one on the academic indicator to use distance from Level Three. We believe there needs to be more communication and helping the public understand what that means. The scale scores will be difficult to get that information to parents and teachers. And then we also support the staff recommendation about the EL definition. We just urge the state board to keep thinking about the evolving system and how we can address the issues raised by other speakers today. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Araceli Simeon and I'm here, I'm a CPAG member, but I'm here representing the Parent Organization Network. The PON, along with other eight organizations, submitted a letter to provide recommendations on the rubric or standard for parent engagement. And so part of what we wanted to express is to thank you. To thank the SPE and the CDE for the commitment to creating a committee to focus on parent engagement, which has learned that it, there is going to be a committee, and so we are excited to hear about the formation of this group, and we want to offer up our time and expertise to assist with the work that is coming in the future years. In regards to the, the current tool, the current standard for parent engagement, we definitely want to advocate to support changing the tool so that both options one around surveys and options two are required so that we have enough data to continue improving the tool, given that we couldn't provide more guidance and metrics because there is a lack of data. So data is, it's imperative in order to continue the improvement process.
Good morning. Kim Lewis, representing families and schools, and I want to associate myself with the comments of PON and the letter that we've submitted in our appreciation for the creation of an ad hoc committee around parent engagement from what we've heard. Also, on the self-reflection tool, we'd like to suggest adding a summary section to provide some context for the narrative summaries, and kind of what we're looking for, some guiding questions and examples of what the summaries would be, so that we're collecting data that's really useful from the narrative standpoint to go forward and move forward. And if we don't provide enough clarification, we know that some of the information we get may not be as useful as we'd like it to be. Also, we would recommend for an option for the LEAs to request technical assistance, especially in the first year when folks are only getting to select met or not met as a standard, and we think that maybe the collaborative could be able to provide some of that technical assistance, and especially through the peer learning networks, which families and schools are part of, as well as, you know, the ad hoc committee could be able to tackle some of these questions to help continue to provide a guidance and support. And thank you.
Good morning. My name is Estelle Lemieux and I'm here representing the California Teachers Association. The decisions before you today underscored the challenges of shaping our new accountability system while it is simultaneously evolving and being implemented. CTA continues to strongly support the vision articulated by the board and department of an accountability system that will, to quote item two, "provide a more complete picture of what contributes to a positive educational experience for students by reporting performance on multiple measures across the LCFF priorities." But with the initial set of indicators understandably reflecting only a partial picture that is rooted more in our past than in our future, we hope the board will use this meeting today to clarify and reaffirm your commitment to the next stage of rubrics evaluation leading up to the September 2017 meeting, and specifically to establishing a more holistic set of state indicators. We and many other stakeholders supported adoption of the initial set of rubrics in September based on the board's articulated vision and directions to convene work groups and develop indicators that meaningfully measure and therefore prioritize what matters: outcomes and the conditions of learning that form the very foundation of equitable educational opportunity. This isn't simply a matter of adding indicators. We must ensure that the indicators are the right ones, or our system will once again stumble into over-dependence on standardized test scores, high schools, and lagging indicators instead of actionable data that can be used to meet the needs of all of our students. Regarding the recommended actions today, CTA urges you to approve the self-reflection tool for priority two, but not the opt-out narrative summary option. The proposed self-reflection tool is simple and respects local control and provides some common areas of inquiry and a basis of self-assessment of progress consistent with the intended purpose of the rubrics. The proposed narrative summary option, on the other hand, does not. Regarding the academic indicator, although CTA has concerns about the varying scale score ranges across grades and hopes to engage further with the department and the board in the coming weeks, we agree that distance from Level Three is the best of the options currently before you. Finally, regarding the definition of English learner student group, the academic indicator, CTA supports efforts to better identify and meet the needs of reclassified students and English learners alike, therefore supports a definition that includes reclassified students. We thank you and we look forward to continuing our work with the board and the staff, department staff.
Good morning. Roberto Vieramontes with the Learning Policy Institute. We support the staff's recommendation to define the EL student group for the academic indicator for state and federal accountability purposes, that is identifying districts and schools for intervention and support, to include English learners plus students who have been reclassified for four years or less. In addition, for purposes of transparency and LCAP planning, we also recommend that academic achievement data for ELs, reclassified students, and when possible for long-term English learners be report, separately reported. The board should clarify that these separately reported data should inform district LCAP decisions regarding their goals, services, and spending for ELs. Regarding purposes for accountability, our letter states three key reasons to define the group to include both ELs and reclassified students. The first reason, research has widely documented a catch-22 effect when accountability systems exclude reclassified EL students from the EL group, as it happened at A No Child Left Behind. The subgroup as a whole could never make progress because its most successful members, those who became English proficient and reclassified, were removed each year. We provide a commentary by Linda Darling-Haman and Kenji Kuda that illustrates this key point. The second reason, the catch-22 effect can create disincentives for schools to reclassify English proficient students, as keeping these students as ELs will boost EL subgroup scores. The third reason, including reclassified students in the EL subgroup will result in 1,200 more schools and nearly 200 more LEAs being held accountable for the performance of the EL subgroup on the academic indicator because they meet the minimum and size of 30 EL students. Regarding purposes of transparency and LCAP planning, we think it's feasible to make two slight adjustments to accomplish this. The first, adjust the, the dashboard displays under development to report disaggregated data for ELs, RFEPS, and when available, long-term ELs. And then the second, revise the LCAP template and guidance to make it clear that districts should use these disaggregated data to target their services and investments to meet distinct needs of each group. To be clear, we don't think disaggregated data for ELs and RFEPS should be color-coded or used for accountability purposes, but we do think it should play a role in district LCAP planning. And finally, we note that another indicator, the English learner progress indicator, also provides accountability for ensuring schools address the needs of their current ELs. CD's analysis shows that about 700 additional schools will be flagged as read on the English learner progress indicator, who otherwise are not read on the EL subgroup for the academic indicator when reclassified students are included. Thank you.
I'd like to call the last group of speakers to come forward, please. Liz Guillen, Tia Nguyen, Paulina Omanza, Sasha Horowitz, Juen Deep, Brian Ha, Brian Rivas, and Jessica Sacco.
Hi, my name is Colleen Pagturn. I'm representing the Los Angeles Unified School District, which has close to 142,000 EL students. For the purposes of identification for improvement, LAUSD supports a definition of the EL student group that includes EL students and students who have been reclassified for four years or less. Including the data for RFEPS for accountability will provide appropriate incentives for schools to reclassify EL students while also continuing to recognize schools and districts for the progress they made in supporting such students. This definition would also ensure that LEAs in schools remain accountable for the academic progress of EL students once they have been reclassified. However, while we agree with this combined indicator for accountability purposes, we also believe that EL and RFEPS should be separate in the LCAP. In order to view both the successes and opportunities for improvement, we feel strongly that the state should provide data for the EL and RFEPS group independently, and that all districts should be required to address each of these subgroups in their LCAPs. Disaggregating this information and reporting it on the LCAP allows districts to determine goals, set targets, and respond to those students who need it most. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Felicia Jones. I represent congregations organized for prophetic engagement, COPE. We're a community-based organization of clergy, parent, and community members in San Bernardino. We appreciate the time and attention that the board and staff are giving to the design of the academic and performance indicators. Parent and community stakeholders want to know that their district and schools are serving its students and how they will be evaluated. Therefore, we stand in support of the recommendations presented by families and schools and Parent Organizing Network to, to really enhance and standardize the tools to include a focus on data collection, parent-friendly reporting such as a summary, as well as support for, technical support for school districts. We, we also feel as if the dashboard certainly needs some additional work We also feel as if the dashboard certainly needs some additional work so that it is transparent and parent-friendly, and so we're asking the Board to consider enhancements as well as support the 11th grade assessment in academic indicators. Thank you.
Patty Scripter, California State PTA. The California State PTA strongly believes that the future success of LCFF and accountability will hinge on support from parents and students. Therefore, it's critical that parents believe that the measures are meaningful, and so we're also committed to building the capacity of our local members and leaders so that they can and will act as strong advocates for the kinds of measures and accountability for all eight state priorities and especially family engagement that we believe are the intent of the law. And we look forward to continuing to work with you at the Board and at the Department on successful implementation and communication. As we get close to the final actions today, we appreciate the comments from the Board members about how the information will be used and that it needs to be actionable data. And we think that the family engagement local indicators are not sufficient to drive behavior or to support continuous improvement. So we're asking you to form a group that makes family engagement meaningful with actionable data, and we look forward to working with you on that.
Good morning. I'm Liz Guillen with Public Advocates. We submitted a letter on behalf of the LCFF Equity Coalition. Many of the members are here today. Our letter joined with many here who are asking that the top-level display of the new dashboard separate the English learner from the RF subgroup. To the extent that you don't do that, we hope that your motion adopting the staff recommendation, if that's the way you go, clarify that you want that data to in fact be available one click away. The other important point I want to make in my short time is that we also aligned our comments with that of our parent organizing partners. Parent involvement is a new state priority, but it's no less important than the other state priorities. In fact, they're related. We think the information should be collected, and we believe that the recommendations that Araceli made from PON about requiring that both of the tools be required, both of the options, should be done so that that can be part of the data collection.
Good morning. Brian Ha with California Federation of Teachers. The early childhood TK-12 council for the California Federation of Teachers, under advisement of Francisco Rodriguez, President of Pawl Valley Federation of Teachers, recommends that the data on RFEP students not be included as a component of the English learner LCFF academic indicator. It is the council's belief that the inclusion of RFEP students' scores mixed in with the scores of current EL students will undermine the accuracy and transparency of how these two separate groups of students are performing in language arts and math. We respectfully ask that the Board not include the scores of RFEP students as part of the academic indicator for reasons already mentioned. Thank you very much.
Mr. President, Brian Rivas on behalf of the Education Trust West. We support the move to scaled scores for the academic indicator. I think there's broad support for doing that. Your team, your staff did a great job in a short amount of time, but because it was a short amount of time, it feels a bit rushed. We think this may be the most important part of the whole system. We think we would all benefit from maybe taking a little more time to vet the proposal here from national experts, have a public discussion of the trade-offs. We'd like to hear from the Educational Testing Service in a public session about some of the issues they raised, about possibly having different implications across grade spans. It's very complicated. We think it warrants a little more time. We'd like to ask that you take more time and consider acting on the methodology at your next meeting. With regard to the English learner definition, we support the staff recommendation. There are a lot of potential competing issues there, but we support our partners at CalTOG disaggregate the data so that it's available for planning in LCAPs.
Good morning. Jessica Sacco representing the California Science Teachers Association, specifically in regards to the self-reflective tool for the implementation of state academic standards for Priority 2. I really want to thank the staff and the work of the California Practitioner Advisory Group for the progress that they've made on this implementation tool. It has come a long way. I also concur with my colleagues at CTA that Option 2 certainly represents a much better option for LEAs to evaluate and present what they're doing to the public. Not only would you be able to draw better comparisons across LEAs, but it also helps an LEA to organize their thinking as well as present that information to parents as well as constituents. The narrative summary just doesn't give that same format, and we fear that the inconsistency between LEAs could be confusing as to get a measure of what's happening. We look forward to further development on this as we learn about how this becomes an effective tool, how it's being used. This is 1.0 in our view, and we look forward to continued work in the years to come. Thank you.
Good morning. Sarah Lillis with EdVoice. A quick note, the growth model law from an EdVoice-sponsored bill is still on the books at Code 52052.6. EdVoice urges the Board to reflect on how important this policy decision is on the academic indicator and really take some time, not just on the methodology on which we think there are still some critical technical questions and questions about messaging as members on raised, but also in the switch from orange to yellow. Not only does it send a terrible message that all the students in these 1,000-plus schools whose academic performance we've identified as low and unchanging don't require, we're not concerned, or we're not identifying for state technical support, and in their LCAP, that academic indicator is not being identified for additional investment and exploration, which we know it was not the intent of the LCFF or of this Board when thinking about those 3.9 million underserved students. So while the distribution may be different than other, we still think that we really need to think about the message and the policy underlying. Thank you.
Still good morning. Okay. Samantha Tran with Children Now. And building on my colleagues' comments from EdTrust West and EdVoice, this issue around the performance, how we're communicating performance, we can see an example because the academic indicator is actually a harder one to trigger because we have two assessments in it, right? It's not just chronic absence, it's not just suspension, it's actually two different measures coming together, that you could have a dynamic where you have a school that is absolutely at the very bottom of the whole distribution in, say, for example, math. And yet, in English, their average student is still at the one performance level, and they're not improving. And then we don't identify them for support. I think that sends the wrong message to the field. We're really worried about that dynamic. Also, we've raised some technical concerns with the particular methodology around the scale score. We're really supportive of moving to this approach overall. I know that you're backed into a corner in terms of trying to get this out the door, to get this out to the field, but having some further conversations on that front would be really helpful. Thank you.
It's a public testimony, so I'm going to turn to our liaisons and the Department to make some comments about the public testimony in terms of the recommendations. So do we want the Department to start? Yes.
Cindy Kazan is the Director of Analysis, Measurement, and Accountability Reporting Division, and there's just a couple of themes that I picked up on that I wanted to make sure that I either reiterated or maybe said in a different manner. The Department is dedicated to breaking out the EL and RFEP data on the dashboard. We will work with the EL Progress Work Group that I described earlier in my presentation on how the best way to display this information. We have a lot of experience in displaying data, but oftentimes we get it wrong, and so we want to make sure that this particularly, since it's been articulated throughout the public comment, is done in a manner that is easy to read for the public and discernible. Further, the purpose of the top-level display, I think, will be confused if we add in yet another set of student subgroups. And so, as I mentioned earlier, we think the one-click-away piece is something that is, and I think as Dave reiterated on LCFF statute, is more appropriate. The dashboard is an evolving web-based system that none of us have actually seen, right? We've seen screenshots. I've seen a lot of screenshots. I haven't actually seen the system. So to that fact, and I think the criticism behind it, we just need to give it a little bit of time. We need to be able to roll something out that we can have reactions to, and we are committed, just like with the accountability system, continuous improvement in making sure that the display is appropriate and it allows LEAs to address specific needs for that. You know, I also emphasize, and I know that others have, that districts have this data, and there are districts that are using it. We've heard from districts that are using their data and running the simulations to show where they fall out. They ran simulations around the three different EL definitions, and you saw some, I think, letters around that that said, "In looking at our data, we see that this is how it's going to impact us if you adopt, you know, X definition." And then, and finally, you know, like I said, we're committed to making sure we get this right, and so we will, you know, come back as often as we need to to make sure that you're comfortable with what is finally produced for the dashboard.
So I have one technical question before. We had a parade of districts coming up here, and it appears they don't think they have the data. Did I? But they send it to the CDE, right? So I'm lost. They must have it. You know, if we don't do something, they won't have the data, is what I...
They do have it, and I think what that shows us is that we need to do some better outreach to districts on how to use their data. So whether or not it's involving the CalPads Coordinator, as well as Accountability Director, as well as the Title III contact person, you got to put everybody in room to figure out how to make sure that they can use the data they are submitting to us in an appropriate manner. So they have it, it's just making sure they have the right people in the room, I think.
Board Member Strauss will start, as are liaisons, and Board Member Burr is the other liaison.
So I just want to clarify, I think what I heard generally speaking is that the districts and the advocates are supporting our recommendation for EL plus four years of RFEP for the academic indicator, but they are asking for a place where it's very clear the three levels, EL, RFEP, and actually, I'm hearing LTALs as well. Is there a way where it's very clear about the three groups so that the data is presented and that districts can use it in their LCAP planning? We heard from districts that it's actually really essential that they do do that, and they want it disaggregated. So what I heard you say, and I guess I'm just trying to clarify this, I mean, we're going to have a long conversation here, but is that the CDE is going to populate that in a way that districts and the public will be able to see the separate groups of English learners? Is that correct?
Yes, we will disaggregate the data.
And so I'm actually hoping, I know in March we're going to have a presentation on our dashboard, will that be part of the March presentation? Are we expecting we might have a good first run, a good run publicly for it by then so that the data is available as they do their next planning? Is that...
That's correct. I mean, that's our hope, is to have it up and running before the next board meeting.
So the performance levels will be reported for each subgroup, but for the academic indicator, it's reported for EL plus four years RFEP. Is that correct?
If you go with the recommendation that we've presented today, that would be correct.
Okay, Board Member Burr.
So I completely concur with Board Member Strauss about the need for transparency around the various categories of English learner students, and it sounds like we're moving in that direction, so I'm appreciative of that. Just the other two issues I wanted to raise, the issue about the academic indicator. First, I have to say, it's so refreshing to hear people tell us to delay when we're always the ones that are getting pushed on trying to get something. So hooray, we're ahead of the time for once. It is a very complicated topic. I really appreciate it, I didn't say this earlier, all the work that you put into the addendum to go through all of the issues that we need to consider around scale scores and hearing from our experts, both the Technical Design Group and ETS. And I just also, when I reviewed the draft item, I have to say that I said to Cindy, "And I wish you would put in big black letter, this is why we do not just use test scores for accountability purposes. So that's why we're developing a multiple-measure system." Having said that, I think we're at a place where we have to kind of jump off the ledge here and say, yes, we're going to go with this system, the academic indicator as proposed by the Department and by our staff, to start out with. Just like every other piece of the LCFF system and the dashboard system, we have to start somewhere, and this is the starting point. And Cindy appropriately pointed out, we'll get to review it again in March. So it's not like we're going to walk away from it and say it's cast in stone and we're not going to make any changes, but I think for purposes of getting started, it's the best place we can start. We're going to learn a lot more about it with respect to our discussions on growth models and how that plays into it. The other thing, I just wanted to clarify because we didn't spend a lot of time talking about the local performance indicators, although we heard from a number of groups, that we were quite purposeful in proposing two different options for LEAs. These are local indicators, because recall, they don't meet our criteria for state indicators. There's not comparable data, they're not valid, you know, the three criteria that we use. And in my view, we're always going to have local indicators. This is meant to be a mix of state, local, and federal indicators. But we have, as President Curse appropriately pointed out, 11,000-some schools and, you know, 2,000 LEAs, depending on how you count the charters on our districts, ranging in size from five kids up in Siskiyou County to our biggest district in LA. You can't possibly have an indicator, a standardized indicator, that is going to measure all of those variations. So I think it's completely appropriate to allow for a narrative local indicator or give them some more structure and let districts decide. So I'm fully in support of the proposed local indicators.
Okay. Board Member Ortiz.
So I'm going to take a little bit longer, if it's okay, because I have a couple of thoughts around this. I think the good news is that we're all talking about EL students, and I think this is the first time that I see a very intentional focus on this student group. And I heard a couple of things from some of the advocates and some of the practitioners and school leaders here. I heard that they wanted to support the EL plus four for accountability purposes. I got a little confused because, you know, it also said the definition should include RFEPs and then ELs exclusively. So we have to come up with one definition, and I don't know if the definition is EL plus four, but then we also create these other subgroups. And maybe somebody could also clarify because there was also something about the LCAP template. We just adopted the LCAP template. There's going to be no changes, at least this time around, to the LCAP template. But there is a lot of merit in all of the arguments, and maybe we could come back to some of the school leaders to clarify some of these things. I think that in general, there hasn't been consensus around this particular methodology. The CPAC was, there was no consensus there, there was no consensus with the ELI work group. The letters were a little divided. I think people have different takes on it. And I myself, I'm on the same book, but not on the same page with the methodology. I don't believe that EL plus four is the appropriate, for accountability purposes, methodology, and I'll give my reasons. The Department was using EL plus three, and ESA does make it an option to use up to four years. When the Department was using EL plus three during the NCLB time, the timeline was very aggressive. The targets were ideal, however unrealistic. It made sense to see a combined group of ELs plus RFEPs because it was a very absolute system. Yes, you met the target? No. And if you didn't meet the target, it was also a punitive system. We are no longer there, and I think that there's been an entire system shift to look at continuous improvement. When I look at ELs, ELs plus two, which I think we're forgetting that's also an option, and ELs plus four, most of the distribution moves towards the yellow category. And that is where we will, that goes into the accountability system. We hope to set growth targets. If most of our students are in that yellow, how do we show growth? In the LCAP template, how do we identify what has increased or improved? I think that we are masking, more than anything, the outcomes of these two different student groups that have different needs. And I also want to point out that we keep on talking about the ELI indicator, like, well, they have their own indicator. Yes, because it measures language, but language and academic content are two different measures. They're related, but... They're related, but they're different. And I have to say that if it was just a matter of being proficient in English, then our African-Americans would not have the achievement gaps that they have, and many other English-only students would not have those achievement gaps. They both require a specific focus. They both shape practice, and we should keep that in mind in our policy discussions. I don't completely disagree with the recommendation, because I do like the theory of action that was proposed. And the theory of action is, we serve these students from identification to post-reclassification. We want to make sure that this fragmented reclassification criteria did not prematurely reclassify some students, and that we're not holding others behind. Now, the disincentive of reclassifying, you know, people have used that argument for Title III funding. Well, we reclassify, then we lose Title III funding. And I don't know if it has ever been fully substantiated. But I do think that we need to keep track of our students, not as an aggregate, what happens after the reclassify and just use the aggregate information for accountability, but individually, we should know who our RFEP students are. I don't know that that's happening in practice. I don't know that school systems and districts are set up to fully provide the supports, the services, and the differentiated instruction needed for RFEP students versus long-term versus ELs. I'm excited that this theory of action is giving a nod for us to do that, because I think that's something that many of us have known for years, and we just now need to put it into practice. Not only to take credit for accountability purposes, but really to dictate and inform our practice, our services, and how we streamline and allot our resources. I don't know where this will go, but I want to make sure that when we talk about the one-click Dave Sab, what have you done? One-click away, that that one-click gives us meaningful data, not just raw numbers, and that it's actually something that's accessible. If folks here are saying, "We need that data," practitioner, school leaders, it's either because they're using it, and they know the value, and they know other people are not, or because they need better data. And I think that we need to listen to that. We need to set up a system that truly makes this theory of action a practical reality, and that we're really accounting for our students, because they have very different needs. For that reason, in terms of accountability, for me, I feel that four years, ELs plus four years, would be ideal if we had this system in place, where we actually know who are the RFEP students, and we're guiding them, supporting them, and now we could take credit for you, because, guess what? We did well by you. But I do feel that districts have done well, and we do have this catch-22, where if a student reclassifies, they're now part of the Latino student subgroup or the Asian student subgroup. And so for that reason, for me, it would make sense to go midway, EL plus two, because that gives some credit, but it also allows us to continue building this system, this theory of action. I know that there was concerns about the number of schools that would be identified. Under ESA, only 5%, the bottom 5%, will be identified. So we still have to come up with a formula to determine that bottom 5%. It's not going to be all of these schools that will fall under technical support. I know that's an issue of capacity. Under LEA, you know, now that gives us an opportunity to really tie that into the LCAP template. So that's where I stand, but I feel that we really need to consider, how do we flesh out this theory of action, so that it's very clear what are the needs of RFEPs, what are the needs of LTALs, and what are the separate needs of ELs, and how do we move towards supporting districts to meet those needs? Thank you.
Okay, other, oh, well, I was trying to give somebody on this side a chance, yeah. Board Member Holliday.
Just a few thoughts. First of all, there continues to be some real interest in separating the 11th grade tests eventually out of the college career-ready indicator, and I continue to lean that way. I don't understand this talk about double counting. We're not adding things up to come up with a final number, and having more attention paid to the 11th grade scores, I think, would be valuable. Both Doug McCray, as well as, I think, the Charter School Association talked about turning the distance from Level III into a percentage numbers. Have you looked into that? Have you talked about, is that something that you'll be considering as we move ahead with this? Is that another potentially evolutionary piece of this?
We did, my name is Jenny Singh. We did take a look at that with our Technical Design Group, and they actually did advise against that.
Against it?
Yes.
Okay. Might be something that we can get some more clarity on down the road, whether or not that has advantages or not.
Right, so, but we will be working on a communication plan and how to best communicate this to the field.
And I do understand how, in terms of the parent engagement self-reflection tool, that it is certainly going to be very different. You know, surveys from very small schools to very large schools can be very different. Counting how many times we have parent meetings and all varies greatly. It is the case that I think that a quality parent engagement program, process, could be very, very different from a small school or an inner-city school to a rural school to a large district. And yet, at the heart of really good quality parent engagement is not necessarily how many times they meet or in what venue they meet, but whether or not the parent feels as though she or he has been adequately heard, understood, and has, and therefore, I do think that eventually encouraging, in one shape or form or another, use of surveys where parents have the opportunity to speak up, I think would be very helpful and valuable.
Okay, Board Member Strauss, you wanted to...
I just want to build on what Member Ortiz-Laccone was talking about, is that I actually believe that we have a lot of work ahead in building capacity for schools, for teachers and leaders, especially, you know, our teaching and leading force is evolving, and we have lots more retirement, that we have more coming in, and we actually need strong support for training for the different types of English learners. The newly arrived English learners, the long-term English learners is a really big issue for our state, and for the reclassified students, that teachers and districts need to be paying attention to, to give them the support to continue to be successful. So I think, actually, it ties into our item we're going to talk to after lunch, which is what we're doing to continue the standards work, and also the ESA plan. And I think all of this is around building capacity. And honestly, in our frameworks, which we work so hard to add English learner strategies in, which are a resource but not mandated, we've worked so hard to talk about what designated support should be and what integrated support should be for all classrooms. We have it in our science framework, we have it in our history framework, we're putting it in our math framework. But I was on a meeting yesterday for some districts that are doing some significant work that are starting a couple of years later to actually look at the framework. So we realize that it's a far slower process than those of us who work and develop these materials actually hope until it touches all of our classrooms. So I guess with that, I'm asking, we're going to be talking about this at all of our meetings with the professional development capacity issue, about what strategies teachers and leaders and districts can use. So I would really like the CDE, as you bring back these items, to continue to focus on this. I know we're going to talk about it again on our ESA plan and as we look ahead, but I, ESA's a small piece of it. We have a huge responsibility in California with the size of our state and the population we serve to continue to do that. And so I think what we heard from districts is they want the data, they want to use the data, they have some of the data now, they want to make sure it's really clear and transparent. And so as we continue to work on these items, I'm just going to ask the staff to make sure these are priorities. So, and I did hear pretty clear support for EL plus four years RFEP, but with the understanding that we would have data available for the other groups, so with district guidelines, and that's what I'm hearing, the communication toolkit, which I am very anxious to hear about, how to help people understand, because it is the use of data and how you use that to inform practice, that I think would be really helpful. So I look forward to hearing that fall, come back as well. And then, the other thing we talked about in some of our planning is that so many of this is connected, and, you know, often we have silos of different departments and different pieces, but the workaround, what happens in the classroom, by the way, is not just for English learners. Special needs students are a group that actually does very poorly and needs lots of support. So I think we need to keep looking at the teaching practice with support in capacity for our work going forward, so that all kids get the support they need with their best first instruction. And while you have it on a policy level, translating that to practice, and that's teacher prep, and then all different cycles of the career of educators, and I think we, those of us who work in schools know how much work we still need to do. So I did hear support for the recommendation, both of the academic indicator and the EL, with the understanding that we would populate and share the data for the EL groups on the dashboard, and I'm hearing now that that'll come back in March. Is that right? That we'll know where it is in March, that you'll be able to give us an update on the data on the dashboard in March? That's what I'm hearing. So I'm just asking, again, the next item, three and four, will deal again with the networks and professional development, and I just feel like that is such a critical area in the work we're doing. Thank you.
Yeah, Trish is next. Board Member Williams.
I am no expert in EL, but what I heard, what I thought I heard, many say, and I think it gets, I think it's nuanced and it gets a little confusing, they get a little, in terms of the EL plus RFEP, the EL separate and the RFEP separate, and I'm not even, not even talking about the LTAL. But on that issue alone, I thought, I know I heard last week from a call I took, my understanding at the end of that call was that there was support for the EL plus four years of RFEP for the purposes of intervention and technical assistance for determining that. But there was a strong ask that the RFEP be reported separately and the EL also separately and on Page Two, on the document, so not, not a... The problem with a click away is that it's a click away, and it sends a signal, you have to know that it's a click away, and you, and it sends a signal, obviously, that it's of somewhat less importance if you have to go look for it. This, and, and I'm just, this is what I thought I understood from the phone call and what I thought I understood, the people in the audience say, most of them. And I'm sympathetic with that for a couple of reasons, and I do this at the risk of my colleagues not being happy about this, but it's, I'm sympathetic to it because I think that all, I think, I think EL plus four RFEP is the appropriate one, and you're the one that might be unhappy about that, the appropriate one for state and technical assistance. I think that's the appropriate one. But having the other group, EL and RFEP, on the same page, on the same display, should drive, they should be able to drive what, how it's prioritized in the LCAP. So there's the EL plus RFEP for intervention, technical assistance, the separate EL and separate RFEP for bringing it, everybody's awareness to how they're doing, and taking that into consideration for prioritizing funding in the LCAP. That's what I thought I heard, and I'm inclined that way. And I would be curious, you're nodding your head, yes?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, let me comment on this before, if I could, and I need help from the legal counsel. I do not think we can act on the LCAP today. We have not noticed this, that we are discussing the LCAP today. I think we have procedures that are really strong on how you do LCAP amendments, and therefore, I would like your view as to whether we, in any way, can address the LCAP today with a formal motion.
I want to talk about that. They want the...
The LCAP, the Local Control Accountability Plan template was not part of this item and what was noticed. The board can't take action to modify it, and there is also a requirement that any changes to the LCAP be considered in successive board meetings as well. So, and those are two limitations on the scope of the board's actions today with respect to the template.
I was speaking conceptually, that I heard that they want separate data so that the discussions at the LEA level were around how, what the priorities should be, not whether or not we should change the template.
Because we had, the initial group that came before us recommended that the board approve a change to the LCAP, and I wanted to make sure that you understood, that we cannot legally act on that without a prior notice. It just doesn't work that way in this regard. Now, as far as the comment on data display, with due respect, I do think you need to be aware that there is a, there's counter-objectives. If you're going to have a dashboard that's fairly simple and easy to understand, you cannot take everything everybody wants, and I'm not saying, and put it on the front dashboard, or you'll have a whole lot of things. So there is a trade-off, and you're proceeding without looking at the total trade-off between lots of data and easy to understand for the parents. The board has been under fire from some people to say it is too complex, and you can get too long a dashboard, and, you know, and so there's dashboards that I can understand, and then there's, I get into my nephew's BMW, and I can't figure out anything in there. I mean, you got to have a German technician to tell me what the dashboard says. So, I mean, there is a trade-off, and I think proceeding in isolation with adding things now without seeing the total picture we're up against, and seeing a mock-up of the actual dashboard that we will see in March, and the trade-offs, and the kinds of input we are seeking between now and March, I believe, my personal view is, it's premature to vote on what'll be on the dashboard now.
President Chris, I'm sorry, I was reminded that the dashboard does not display the actual student groups. It says, "How many of the student groups are in the red or orange?"
The coming of the...
They did not, the current version of the homepage of the dashboard does not display student groups specifically. It says, "The number of student groups in red or orange." So in order to expand the student group information on who's in red or orange for a specific indicator, you have to click something. So the landing page is simply, you know, a very high-level, top-level display for any of the indicators, and in order to get to, whether it's African-American or Asian or English learner, you're going to, at this point, you're going to have to click at least once.
Yeah, and we can decide what's clicked and not clicked, but I would like to have, I'd like to have the whole thing in front of me, rather than act on something, you know, that's a particular thing at this, at this meeting. But remember, Ortiz-Laccone was next.
I would really want us to consider incorporating not only the members of the ELI work group, but also others in the feedback for how this dashboard will look, because, you know, we could say we're going to upload information for ELs and RFEPs, and it's one click away. Again, if it's raw data, may not be that useful. If it's not color-coded, may not be that useful. And, and I know, I understand the argument. The argument is, you don't have to change the LCAP template, because if it's in your landing page, then the districts still have to respond to what's in the landing page, not for accountability purposes, but in terms of how to align their resources. And I think that that's something that we need to, that is the ask, and we need to consider that, and, you know, there is limitations for how this is being developed. I can't even envision it, really. But let's consider bringing in some of the folks that have presented today, because I think that we could also learn practices from them. Now, Trish, you didn't upset me, because, again, I feel that EL plus two for accountability purposes is the best way to acknowledge that there is still a need, and we don't want to mask outcomes, but that there is still, there should be some credit given to districts for what they've done with our EL students. Thanks.
Board Member Saun.
My comment is just, we're having this form and function discussion, and I think that if, I don't think we need to get into the weeds of what it looks like at this point in time. We need to, I think, focus on what the recommendation is and whether we want to approve that or not. But I, what you're hearing is that there is a general consensus that, that we should display the EL and the RFEPs separately, whether it's on the front page or wherever it is. And it is around that whole, my comment earlier about, well, what is the purpose and what's the function of doing that? And how do we make that clear to whoever might be accessing that information? So I would suggest that, having heard this, that staff go back and understand that and be able to provide us with some information, because this dashboard, as you've said, we haven't really even seen it yet. Because this dashboard, as you've said, we haven't really even seen it yet. We don't even know what it looks like yet.
That's right.
We've seen, yeah. And it kinda continues to morph and change. So I, I think it's too soon for us to start talking about details of what page and where it should be and how it should be.
How many clicks.
Yes, and how many clicks.
Board Member Burr.
Are you ready for a motion?
I am.
I would like to suggest that we have three motions. Cindy's got it on her slide, it's two, but I do think we should break out the definition of EL student group because there's some difference of opinion. So I would like to move that we, per the slide, first adopt the performance standards for the academic indicator as recommended by staff.
I second.
Any further board discussion on that? Not all in favor, raise your hands. Okay.
And.
One abstention.
Second, that we adopt the definition of the EL student group as ELs plus students who have been reclassified as fluent English proficient for four years or less for the academic indicator. I second that.
Further board discussion on that? Not all right, raise your hands. One abstention. Third motion.
And finally, that we approve the proposed self-reflection tools specified in the addendum for the local performance indicators for the implementation of state standards and parent engagement.
I second.
Further discussion on that? All those in favor, raise your hands. That's unanimous. Okay. Okay. Before you do that, I wanted to make a statement saying that this is not the last time, or, and I don't think anybody thought it was, that we will be discussing this issue. But I wanna point out that we will have, of course, some discussion on ESA. We are coming in with an entirely new assessment called the LPAC. It's coming very soon. We have been using something called a CELT, which is, in my view, been misused. It was never set up for the things we've been doing with it. We're about ready to get beyond that. So, and the, moreover, we will, of course, in the ESA be discussing the required indicator of English language proficiency as one of the five required priorities of the, of the ESA law. That's in the law, and we have not talked about how we're measuring that. So there are, these are, these are items that are coming up in the very near future, not sometime in the longer future. So this is what we needed to act on today to meet our statutory deadline. Go ahead.
I just wanna make sure that while we just approved the motions, that the indicator would be EL plus four years, up to four years, or four years or less, RFEP for technical assistance and support, that that does not, that still leaves open what you, what you said before that, which is that we can still separate out EL data and RFEP data for reporting, we intend to. So that, that can, that can be transparent to everyone, educators, superintendents, school board members that at a school and influence their decisions and about their priorities in the LCAP.
Yeah, I think the vote was on EL plus four. That's it. Yeah. Yeah. All right. I guess we're ready to adjourn for lunch. We adjourn for lunch. We will return at 12:05.
No, 1:05.
1:05. 1:05.
Hello? Oh, they're off. Is it off? No? Should I say Dr. Curse?
I have it.
Okay. You wanna read it?
It was.
Test, one, two, three. Hang on.
Adopt the performance standards for the academic indicator based on student test scores on ELA and math for grades three through eight, including the results from the second year of Smarter Balance test, using the methodology known as distance from level three and the definition of the EL student group as ELs.
No, 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 not that. Just the first one.
Okay.
It was the one on.
One A, that's it. That's it. Okay. No, I'm on it. I just stopped.
So the one on the academic indicator, I got confused. I was reading the whole thing together. So on the academic indicator, yes. I will not abstain on that. Hello?
Do we need to reopen the item? I think we can function with this.
So that's fine.
Okay. So we will reopen item one. Item two, sorry. And do we, do we have to, should we read the motion, or?
She just did.
She did. Okay. So now on item two, all those in favor of the motion as read by Board Member Strauss, raise your hands.
It was one A.
One A. We're voting on one A, the academic.
Yeah.
Indicator. All right. So that vote is unanimous with no abstention. All right. Maybe, Tom, you can proceed then, even under these circumstances. It's better.
Tom Adams, Deputy Superintendent for the Instruction, Learning and Standards Support Branch of the California Department of Education. Today is, is item three, Standards Implementation Update. Before we have our speakers come up, I just wanted to do a quick review of where we are in terms of standards. And remember, in 2010, we adopted the Common Core Standards for English Language Arts and Mathematics, and since then, we've hit the reset button in terms of actually on standards implementation. When we began that process, we began it with the approach of, instead of coming at you, we wanted you to come with us. And we've been able to do that in a number of ways by creating consensus around ELA, ELD instruction, mathematics instruction, history, social science, and science. What's key here is the leadership support that we got, both from Superintendent Torleksen, President Curse, Chief Deputy Glenn Price, Eileen Strauss, as well as Peter Burzall, Executive Director of CSESAA. What is remarkable is not simply that we reached a consensus, but we actually wanted to maintain that consensus and create better connections to the field. And that's really what you're gonna hear about today in terms of the steering committees, the collaboration committees, and the communities of practice. So what we have done is, in a group that we affectionately call the Letterheads, State Board, California Department of Education, and CSESAA have created these committees in order to, one, do professional development around the curriculum frameworks. In my 20 years here at the department, this month marks my 20 years at CDE, I've never witnessed such cooperation and such a good effort in, in being collaborative. I also wanna say that in addition to those letterheads, as I mentioned, we also had great help from the California Subject Matter Project. We had various professional organizations such as California Science Teachers Association, as well as the California Teachers Association, and then representatives from AXA. One thing to keep in mind here, though, is while we've created all these committees to do professional development around the curriculum frameworks, we also had in mind a system of continuous improvement. So as we get down to the local level and have those communities of practice, in this eight-year cycle of frameworks, we wanna make sure that we understand what were the challenges in implementing these frameworks and standards, and how that should inform the next development of the curriculum framework. So it combines all our goals in terms of, one, moving together collaboratively, but also creating a cycle of continuous improvement. So here to kick off the presentation is Brent Malakot, the Director of the Professional Learning Support Division, and Efren Mercado from CSESAA.
Good afternoon, President Curse, Superintendent Torleksen, members of the board. It's a pleasure to be here this morning to talk about a promising new model on standards implementation for the state of California. I've gotta say, with these stadium sound effects, it feels like we should start with maybe "Let's Get Ready to Rumble" would be kind of an appropriate introduction to this, but I won't go there. I did, you're right. But I didn't do it with the full effect. As President Curse alluded to earlier, there's been a lot of work around standards over the, the past five years or so. And with that creates a complex landscape when it comes to what is needed by the field. And what we see is, is that there are a lot of different organizations that are providing support, providing work for standards implementation around the state. Some of those include state agencies like CDE, state associations like CSESAA and CTA.
Technical update, we have to kinda shut down for 30 seconds and reboot, so we.
Check. Check. Definitely much better.
Okay, go ahead. Please go ahead.
Would you like me to pick up where I left off, or start from the beginning? Pick up from where I left off.
Yeah, pick up.
Okay. And so with all the work that's gone on with standards and frameworks, and there's, there's been a lot of support from different organizations in the state, providing support to the field. Some of those include state agencies like CDE, state associations like CSESAA and CTA. There are nonprofits that are doing a lot of work around standards implementation, higher ed, and philanthropy, all working towards standards implementation. It was about 18 months ago that leadership from CDE, including Glenn Price, Tom Adams, and Karik Ashley, along with leadership from CSESAA, including Peter Burzall and Efren Mercado, and leadership from State Board, including Karen Staff Walters, Board Member Strauss, and also Nancy Brownell, when she was here, came together to talk about standards implementation and thinking about a systematic approach for the work moving forward for the state. There were some key goals that were identified 18 months ago as that group came together. And the work over that 18 months, it, it's pretty impressive, the amount of work that's been done. Some of those goals included involving all of these key stakeholders that I just mentioned earlier, that we always consider the California, California frameworks, and that the work continues to be grounded in those frameworks, that we create a feedback loop, which was really recognized as a need, that, that feedback would happen between classroom teachers, school leadership, and then all of the policy levers that, that make up this group, that we would assess existing infrastructure, and we would look at key models that we could then project to the field to make sure that we're spotlighting the things that are, that are working best. And then also, and probably most importantly, build capacity across those different levels to make sure, in a, in a state the size of California, and I'm gonna move on to that, that next slide, that there are many challenges in California. Some of those, and I, before I do that, I wanna reference the map to the left-hand side. Those represent the 11 CSESAA regions in California, and that's been used as a structure for us to think about how we would implement standards with a regional approach, making sure that we're working with the teachers in the classrooms in each of those regions. But we have challenges in California. One of those is that there are 6.2 million students, the biggest state, the most diverse state, with 1.4 million English learners. We know that 93% of our teachers serve English learners. And then when you look at the regions again, referring to that map, Region Six, there are 57 districts, and then Region Seven, there are 124 districts. So thinking about the challenges with just how many schools, how many districts, and how things are approached in each of these different regions, and these are the two outliers. Region Six has the smallest number of districts, and Region Seven has the greatest number of districts. And that half of LEAs are smaller than 2,500 students. So with these challenges, we know that we've gotta build capacity, we have to be innovative in our approaches, to think about how we build capacity for standards implementation for the field. Another theme that we recognize from these challenges that we've been talking about all morning is the idea that we need to provide support for our students with the greatest needs. And that is another one of the goals that you'll hear ring true through the rest of the, the presentation and the work that's happening with the Standards Implementation Steering Committee and the other parts of the ecosystem that Efren Mercado is gonna talk about for a few minutes.
Thank you, Brent. My name's Efren Mercado. I'm Policy Director at CSESAA, and glad to be in front of you today. What, what we then did is we moved from the Standards Implementation Steering Committee to be the policy, kind of overseers of what we're trying to do and how to figure it out. But we quickly learned that if we wanted to really impact the content areas in the state, we had to have those content experts in the room. And while everyone that Brent and Tom listed is all, they're, they're all really smart people, but the idea of, if we really wanna impact math implementation, we need to know from math teachers, math leaders, math specialists, and the other math folks in the, in the state, like the California Math Project, et cetera. So we organized these collaboration committees to serve as our think tank on the content areas, and we ensured, for example, for math, that we had the different organizations represented, but also had EL experts in the room, also had classroom teachers in the room, to make sure that what we're talking about makes sense in the field, not just from the county office support function, but also the folks who receive the support. Some other things that we did with the collaboration committees, and our next presenters with, with Chris and Nathan, we'll kinda go into the details behind that, is ensure that we're linking to other initiatives. So to ensure that we have folks from the CTA, ILC Corps, from the, the math in common work that's occurring across the state, and also the early implementers. So we really wanted to work there, work with the partners, and then strengthen communication across the board for, for everyone. This then led to the next, the next level of this work in terms of the community of practice. So the collaboration committees had about 20, 25 folks on them, which is, is great, but also we know in a state as large as ours, that won't get us very far. So we decided to establish what we call communities of practice, which were anchored by the county offices. But another key evolution of this work was originally thinking about the county office specialists for math and science. But very quickly, we surveyed all, all the counties to identify how many folks we had there, where they are, where are the holes, where are the gaps, and all those. And we also asked, who else is working in your county or working in your region? So we identified a lot of key partners, like the California Math Project, the Science, the Science Project, K-12 Alliance, et cetera, that are doing a lot of great work across the state and in the, the counties, to ensure that they're also a part of this group. And the communities of practice are pretty robust, robust groups that are working on these three components here. We wanna make sure that the people who are providing professional learning to the field are also receiving professional learning themselves. A big issue that, that we found across the board was that the, the folks who were providing professional learning weren't always enriched themselves, so it's going off of their, their past practices. We wanted to make sure we did that for the group to help energize them as well. And then we also wanted to focus on networking and sharing of best practices. And some, some, as we all know, there are different approaches in different counties. Some counties have a team of nine math specialists going out, and, and it's a very entrepreneurial approach. Some have two, and it just kinda depends on the location and so on. So we wanna make sure we're sharing best practices and moving that piece along, and then, and then ultimately go into the regional action planning. From the map that Brent showed, you'll see Region Two, across, all the way from Modoc all the way down to Tahaema and Butte, and they tend to not have as many full-time math specialists in each county office. in each county office because of size, so they then leverage support across the board from Shasta, et cetera. So we wanted to make sure that we had that component in place. And most of this work came into play because of the S.D. Bechtel Jr. Foundation supporting this effort to help build the county capacity, but also to build the capacity of the partnership. So I'm going to invite Brent back up to talk about the ecosystem and kind of bring it together, and then we'll move on to Chris and Nathan. Thank you.
And so this graphic represents the ecosystem. We've talked about the Standards Implementation Steering Committee that started 18 months ago, the spin-off that we talk about as the collaboration committees for the different subject areas, and then the communities of practice, which really bring in that idea of a cycle of inquiry, a cycle of continuous improvement. We've realized one very important benefit from this ecosystem that's been created, and that is the information flow. It started with thinking about, it almost feels like a professional learning community at a school, in a lot of ways, when operated very well. And when I say that, it's almost like the collaboration committees become the hub for the work that's going on between the Standards Implementation Steering Committee and the communities of practice. And there's this great information flow that happens across these different groups, but then you also get this vertical articulation that happens between the people that are working in the communities of practice, and all the way back up to the state agencies that provide those policy levers, which provides a really great model for thinking about a cycle of continuous improvement, because we've got that communication that's happening through, from the classroom teacher, all the way to a chief deputy at the California Department of Education. So it's a very exciting model. We're early, there's a lot of lessons being learned. And I do, I want to, we have two gentlemen with us today. I'm going to introduce Chris Dell. He is the STEM Director for Shasta County Office of Education, and he is a member of both the collaboration committee and the community of practice for mathematics. And so I'd like to invite Chris up, and he's going to spend some time talking about the value add that he's recognized as both a participant and for his region.
Thanks, Brent. Good afternoon, thanks for having me here. So as Brent mentioned, I'm Chris Dell, and I'm the Director of STEM at the Shasta County Office of Education, as well as the Sisk math lead for Region 2. And so when I, let me shift here, another slide, there we go. So when you look at this list of who was represented, I really feel like this whole idea of partnership in the work we're doing around the collaboration committee and the community of practice, and those listed, is such a big deal. I know for myself in my region, as Efren had mentioned, Region 2, thanks for the shout-out, Efren. So Region 2, we've got a very rural California, right? So we've got nine counties, and of those nine counties, only three of them really have somebody in the county office that represents as a math specialist and does work with districts in the world of math. So there is definitely a need for partnership. So we really do that in Region 2, rely on not just county offices, but as well, some of our Institute of Higher Ed, and the California Math Council. And those folks are listed here on this list of those that were part of this collaboration committee, and then into the community of practice, you know, to highlight the California Math Council, who's done 58 years of experience in math education. So having them at the table is very important, and the California Math Project, bringing in the Institute of Higher Ed, and having that voice, that articulation of the K-12 to post-secondary world, and pre-service teachers. So really an important deal to really have this partnership that we have in this collaboration committee, and then into the community of practice. We received some feedback from our last community of practice meeting, and to kind of support this, I'll read the statement, it said, "Meeting County Office of Ed Math Specialists has been so valuable for me as a newbie from a rural county." So this is somebody that's a math specialist probably by themselves in a rural county, and that need to have that collaboration is really a big deal. You know, when we think of the needs of Region 11 versus the needs of Region 2, there are some best practices to be learned. You know, Region 11 down in LA, and Region 2 up in northern California, the true north. We really do have, I had to throw that in there. We really do have some best practices that we can share with each other, that are really important to hear from each other, but then as well, we really do need to have that time to work in our own regions and kind of deal with what our needs are. So as the collaboration committee met and discussed some of these needs in math education, how do we push forward and push that needle in math ed, and really implement these California standards to the next degree? There was a lot of conversation, and what rose to the top were these three main focus areas, these three main goals. And so I'll just kind of touch on them real quick. So when we think of content knowledge and pedagogy, you know, as educators understand the expectations of the California math standards defined by the framework, their depth of math content knowledge and instructional practices, ensure students understand the why and the where of the math, before just learning the how. So it's that, how do we make sure teachers and folks really understand that teaching for conceptual understanding is a big deal, but then a lot of times it's, well, they don't really know, what does that look like? So they know the procedural fluency, but how do I teach for conceptual understanding? So that needed to be a focus, is to really support that work. And then as well, when we look at, think of administrators, and supporting administrators in this work, we know administrators need support to recognize and serve as champion for staff, students, families, and the community for high-quality California math instruction. If we want to see teachers pursue professional learning in math education and better their practice, then administrators need to know, what does it look like to have high-quality math instruction in a classroom? So that needed to be definitely one of our focus areas. And then equity and access, another piece that definitely kind of threads through it all, and is a big focus, so when we think of all students should have access to high-quality math instruction and courses. And then as stated in the Blueprint for Great Schools, the California Way engages students, parents, and communities as part of a collaborative decision-making process around how to fund and implement these improvement efforts, and provides supplemental resources to ensure that California's English learners, foster youths, and students in poverty have the learning support they need. So we needed that to be also a big focus for us, because it is, we want quality math instruction for all students. And so that definitely is threaded in the work we do. And then communication, when we think of communication, we need a coordinated communication that will be accessed by LEAs and COEs, as they look to inform teachers, families, and other community members about the California math standards, and align instructional practices. Another piece of feedback that we got from the attendees at the last community of practice was, I learned that we, the participants in the room, are in very different places in our understanding and our practices. And so what I took from that was, and what we heard in the discussion is, when you define what does high-quality math instruction look like in one part of the state, somebody may define it differently, really, in another part of the state. So this opportunity to get together as a state, and really talk about what does that, make that definition clear, so we have that same voice, that common thread of what does high-quality math instruction look like, is so important for us to have that community of practice and that collaboration that we have. So those are our three highlights, or excuse me, are four goals that we are moving forward with. And so we did have already our first community of practice meeting on December 15th and 16th. We had Ivan Chang from CSU Northridge, and Joe Bowler from Stanford there, giving us some content and helping us lay that foundation of what, again, what is that, what is implementing the California standards look like, and making sure that framework is our baseline, talking about mindsets, and a growth mindset in mathematics. So we do have further, future meetings planned, and another big focus is that regional collaboration piece, as Efren and Brent had said. So as I close out math, one more piece of feedback that I thought was pertinent and important to hear, and this is from one of the attendees. They said, "I provide PD for my districts. I'm not often talking to professionals that have the same level of knowledge and research understanding as I do, but this group provides an opportunity to interact and build upon the ideas and strategies that others that have the same or similar mindset as I do, to create programs, processes, and PD interactively, in order to communicate more effectively with our local, district, regional, and/or statewide constituents." So definitely important work, so I really appreciate that. And I'm going to now pass it off to my colleague, Nathan Inouye. I had to ask him like three times how to pronounce his last name, from the Ventura County Office of Ed. So thank you.
So let me introduce myself, I'm Nathan Inouye. Thanks, Chris, for that introduction. And I'm really honored to be here to present to you, and I want to just start off by saying thank you to Superintendent Torleksen and the whole board, President Chris, and especially our two science liaisons for all of your work helping pass the Next Generation Science standards and the California Science Framework. There's many organizations that are involved in that process, to help it get to the point where we brought it forward to you. And these are just 11 of the main organizations that are now trying to implement based on your approval of the Next Generation Science standards and the California Science Framework. These 11 organizations are really the ones now working directly in the field with the teachers, and giving them the tools and resources to take the standards and put into reality for our students. Not only are these 11 organizations important, they are also part of the writing of the California Science Framework, in terms of how this should look. And as a part of the process, five of these organizations, including the CDE, county offices in CSESA, California Science Project, the California Science Teachers Association, and K-12 Alliance, started the rollouts to help support the leaders in the field, which reaches about 2,000 leaders across the state, and we've done now three rollouts. And the fourth rollout is now focused on the California Science Framework. So we're really excited about those rollouts and how they're reaching. But that's a small number of our total number of teachers, which is why this community of practice is so important to us, because we know that we need to reach much further than just the leaders. We need to expand that impact, so that we really see these standards come alive for our students. So that's one of the reasons why the community of practice is so important. And so when we convened leaders from all of these organizations, there are similar goals to the math, I don't think that's any surprise. We focus on four goals or focus areas. One, we identified that professional learning needed to occur, similar to what was mentioned earlier, is to really be able to have the same common language and understanding of what high-quality science education should look like. So that's the purpose of this community of practice. One of the words I like to use is the word calibrate. We really want to be able to calibrate the instruction that's happening, so that what one teacher thinks as high-quality instruction is at the same as another teacher. So there's professional learning for those that are providing professional development, which are involved in these community of practice. We also want, goal number two is about support and training for administrators, so that they're able to identify, and be able to coach, and be able to provide the support for the teachers implementing the Next Generation Science standards. The third goal and focus area is district-level policy development. And so what do the districts need to be thinking about, and in what ways can they support both setting the high achievement for the teachers, as well as providing those resources so that it can be translated into that high-quality instruction? The fourth goal is around communication for administrators, for teachers, and for the community members, and being able to advocate for high-quality science education. So when we convened in December, our theme was around kids like learning this way. This is actually inspired by the toolkit that was developed by the California Dedicated for Education, and they found that this messaging was really, helps provide the support for science. And so for our community of practice, there were three real outcomes that we were trying to achieve. One was we wanted to bring some experts around phenomena-based NGSS instruction. So we brought in Dr. Janine Benias, she founded the Biomimicry Institute, and we also brought in a professor from the University of Washington, Mark Winchstill, and he helps teachers plan around phenomena. The other thing is that there are, the second outcome of the community of practice was just the ability to network, because the, some of our counterparts have not had the opportunity to really be able to find out what best practices they're using, and to try to prevent duplication of work. Couple of the comments from the participants that were attended and provided feedback about the community of practice, one said, "This COP was a necessary group to form for the sustainability of Next Generation Science standards in California." Another one said, "I felt very inspired and was able to expand both my knowledge of NGSS and my connections to colleagues throughout the state." I think that really highlights the importance of that networking and that learning together. The third outcome being about action. We really wanted to not only have the participants learn from the experience of the two days, but then to plan around that and say, what can we do next, right, from this experience? So the participants had some time to identify how they would take this work, and go back to the field with it. Lastly, one of the things is we want to monitor the actual progress of the implementation. So we're implementing a survey, and that survey, the intent is actually to be done over three years. So we're collecting baseline data this year, and the purpose of the survey is to see how implementation is going, and to really use that growth model to be able to track and to find and identify where there's areas of success that we should highlight, and where there's areas that may need additional support. So that's the purpose of the survey. And we have two upcoming COP meetings that the participants are looking forward to, and based on their surveys. And a couple of things about the focus is we're going to continue that work of, what are the next steps for providing that high-quality professional development? So thank you, and I'm going to pass this off to, I believe, Brent.
So thank you, Nathan and Chris, I mean, really impressive work. And to be a part of that two-day training that was going on in December, not a training, a community of practice, was truly impressive. And I'd like to give a shout-out to the regional planning that happened as part of this. And it was really interesting to watch the different regions plan together around what implementation needed to look like for their particular region, but then also share out, and share ideas, and learn from each other on what it would look like moving forward, and how that sharing would continue to happen. It's also important to mention that this work is happening also with ELA and ELD. It's just that math and science is a little bit ahead right now, but I do want to make sure that we mention that the work is happening here. With ELA, ELD, this diverse group of stakeholders has been identified for the collaboration committees, so that work is beginning. Goals and focus areas, like you saw with math and science, are being created, and one of the key first steps that the ELA, ELD Collaboration Committee has identified is building off of the framework rollouts that happened in 2015 for ELA, ELD. And so that work will be beginning as well. It's also, let's take a look at History Social Science, who the frameworks were recently adopted here. Again, stakeholders have been identified for the collaboration committees, and the first key goal for this group, they identified framework rollouts as being the initial piece that they would want to work on. They're a busy group, and I can tell you that there's already a series of framework rollouts that I'd like to mention now, you can also find these on the CDE website, but January 31st, there'll be a History Social Science Framework rollout at UC Davis, March 2nd in Sacramento, March 9th, CSU Long Beach, April 19th, UC Irvine, May 2nd in Los Angeles at the County Office of Ed, May 4th at the Tulare County Office of Ed, September 28th in Santa Clara, and November 1st in Los Angeles. So again, a lot of really terrific work happening, and we're learning from the experiences of the math and science, and it's only helping to build the ELA, ELD, and History Social Science. So thank you for that. I'm going to turn it over to Efren again.
Thank you again. Just to close out and follow up, a big reason why the math and science pieces were kind of turbo-boosted in front were two things. The first year of math results came out, and that made it very urgent in terms of how we do the support. We also knew that we had to do support for all content areas, but also the foundation funding from the S.D. Bechtel Jr. Foundation allowed us to really, to inject the funds in and do this right away. So for ELA, ELD, and History Social Science, we are looking for the same idea as well. So if anyone listening out there wants to help us out, please call me. The other piece here is where we are now, and where we are proposing to go. In no way is this perfect or all figured out. This is the beginning of the collaboration, the beginning of the work. This is the beginning of the collaboration, the beginning of the work, to build off of what's been occurring in the field already and to leverage it and move that work forward. But I can say, as the Policy Director for SESSA, that the County Offices in SESSA have learned a lot from this process, and you're seeing the fruits of that labor here on the standard side, impact how we do the LCAP training, the rubric training, preparing the counties to support and be the frontline for the LEAs across the board, to ensure that that frontline support for standards, for rubric support, for LCAP support is all right there and that we're doing it collaboratively. And that's going to be the biggest difference, and we're working tightly with CDE, State Board, and all the partners. I'd also be remiss if I did not call out to Saret Kaminsky from SESSA and Stephanie Gregson from CDE, who have been a big part of this work as well. So thank you to them. And the way that we're doing the work now and the regional work, I think it also provides a great model for our ESSA thinking as we move forward as a state. And I'm extremely excited to be in the middle of all this with Brent and Tom and the whole team. So if there are any questions, we'd love to hear them. And thank you again to Nathan and Chris for their presentation.
So I want to thank Nathan and Chris and Efren and Brent and Tom for the continuing work on this. And I just would say, for those of you who are interested in these particular content areas, and we know we each have our own liaison areas, the energy in the room at the collaboration meetings where we plan the community of practice is wonderful, and it is a diverse group around our state. And I actually have to thank Valerie Christman, who's helping work on this project recently, but not completely retired from Ventura County, and CISC Chair. And she's the one that actually brought that first map up, which I think sets up the stage for how challenging this huge state is. And I think, being in the room, I was at SESSA's meeting at SCOE on LCAP, where you had -- I think you had 57 of 58 county teams there with LCAP, realizing how big our state is and what the teams are and the diversity of resources across the state. So I think this energy of coordination is really helpful and exciting. And I just thought we might want to take a minute from Chris and Nathan, who are really strong leaders in their own areas, to kind of tell us what happens now when you're going back to the regions? Because the idea is that we know the standards implementation, some say five-day years, some people say 10, some say 20 years, till we touch all the classrooms. So as you all look at Ventura County in that region or up in the Shasta area in that region, what kind of things happen as all this moves back out into the regions to touch our classrooms?
You know, that's a good question. And I think it's definitely going to be different across the state, right? So if I'm speaking from my region, Region 2, which, as I mentioned before, very rural and only three of our counties actually have math support in the county offices, there's that real need to cross county lines and partner with each other. So when we say the next steps, it's really -- it's continuing to work with the LEAs and to kind of see what are their needs, where are they at in the process, and how can we bring that local support to them? And we've had conversations around being creative even of, you know, the county office may -- can't, for example, say, in one of our county offices, they can't afford a full-time math person, but could they take one of the lead teachers in one of the local districts and get them to be a coach part-time? And then allow, for example, like Shasta County, for us to be maybe that -- the trainers of what is it to be a math coach and to really help implement this? So it's going to -- it really, you know, the statement always takes a village, right? I mean, it really is going to take these partnerships to really move forward. And not only just the county offices, but as I mentioned in that list there, but we've got to pull on CMC, we've got to pull on the California Math Project, we've got to pull on the other groups that are really doing some great work around math and rely on them too, because they want to do things as well. So we all have -- there's a lot of passionate people wanting to see this stuff move forward. So it's getting in the same room to put our brains together to see what can we do? So it's going to be different, right? So Region 2 looks differently than what's maybe going to happen in Ventura County. So I'll let Nathan go there.
So thank you for asking the question. For science, I think in particular, what we need to do is leverage resources. And I think, you know, that was mentioned. And what I mean by that is actually, you know, a lot of our professional developers are actually working quite a bit of isolation, and that's not an effective use of our resources. We really need to be leveraging those resources and not duplicating work. And so that, you know, if there's a great tool that's being designed by a region and they're using it, that should be spread across the state. And this allows for that opportunity to share those resources and say, "Hey, you know what? You know, there's this planning tool that we've created and that it should be used across the state or can be used across the state." And being able to share that with smaller districts or counties or regions and then large ones. So I think really the vision behind the community of practice is to identify what resources are existing and being created and being able to share that. Because actually, in terms of the teachers' desire for professional development to do this right, they all want to do this right, and they want to do it now, right? And that's the reality, right? And I think the challenge for us is to get out there to help them and support them in that process. And that's what I really mean by leveraging resources. In terms of science, that's really, I think, the vision around the community of practice is to say, "How do we get this information out to them and these, you know, tools out to them as quickly as possible?" So, thank you.
Board Member Sandoval.
Thank you for the work that you're doing. Really appreciate it. And I was just curious how this connects just in supporting teachers and administrators and meeting the needs of students with disabilities, if that's coming up in these conversations, these communities of practice?
Yes, it is coming up, and we know we have to get a much more focused approach to it. One thing that we're doing at SESSA is we're going to be partnering with some counties to develop resources to help students with disabilities and to identify how do we best approach those topics with districts. But we're going to -- it's going to have to be a bigger part of the work that we do for the Collaboration Committee and also for the community of practice. So that's still a work in progress, but on the radar and a very high priority for us.
Yeah, and I would just echo that and also highlight that when we're putting together these diverse group of stakeholders that are part of the Collaboration Committees, that specialists with students with disabilities are considered and are always part of the conversation. And that helps us keep grounded in a lot of ways.
Okay, any further -- no further board comments. We thank you for the presentation. Oh, super.
Very brief comment. Again, great teamwork, great collaboration. Do you have a sense of the cost, dollar cost, of the effort you're taking? Remember, we did the $1.25 billion about four budget cycles back. It was sort of put out on a per-cap, you know, per-student basis, and it was spent. There was a huge thirst, just like there is now, for teachers to improve their practice, as we just heard. That was $1.25, and it went to implement the Common Course standards, but a lot of it went to connectivity and computer capacity. In the original, way back, the generation of standards, and Sue, you might remember this, when math and science and social studies and English, Spanish, and arts came out, there was hundreds of millions of dollars that stayed dedicated to the implementation and the professional development of those standards at that time. And so here, we're doing it with a local control framework, and I think doing it creatively and stretching every dollar wisely and effectively. But how much are we spending and do we know what it's compared to? Because, Mike, President Kerr, you outlined earlier the challenge of reaching, you know, 330,000 teachers and 11,000 school sites, and you're doing a marvelous job of that kind of outreach and a smart way of going about it. But how much do you think this effort is? How are the LEAs coming up with their LCAPs and dedicating money to this? And how do you see it expanding?
So that's a really hard question to answer, but I can tell you that with -- what we're trying to do is we're trying to make sure that the folks who provide the supports, so that when they are spending those dollars, they're spending those dollars wisely, and it will have an impact on student outcomes. So that's what we're trying to do, is make sure that the support structure, the statewide system of support is in place so that when LEAs and schools want to go through and have this, the PD done, it will be high-quality and there'll be access across the state. That's one component of it. So we're focusing on that piece. So I can't really answer the idea of how much it costs, but I think that this also lends to the discussion around state-level activities and the idea of Title II. And while we're in a local control world in our state, there's also still a need for statewide infrastructure and how that plays out for the ESSA discussion, I think will be very key.
I think it's important to mention, too, that with the SC Bechtel Jr. Foundation funding to help support math and science, we're looking for similar streams of funding for the ELA, ELD, and History Social Science. That money has been so key to the work that's been going on, providing travel costs, meeting costs, all the things that are associated with getting people together. I mean, we're stretching dollars without a doubt, but that money to treat our educators like professionals is a really big deal. And so that's one stream of funding that we're looking for now, is for ELA, ELD, and History Social Science as well.
And appreciate that. I'll just conclude by that. That's incredibly great efforts, and I think we'll need to continue to look -- when Susan Mania was in the legislature, she spearheaded the $1.25 billion, and the Ed Coalition got behind it. It won't be this year, because the budget's pretty flat or it's not growing at the speed it was in the last several years. But I think at some point, we need to look again at maybe some one-time money in the budget that's a big number that could match in and help leverage to greater outreach the work you're doing.
Okay, thank you. Board Member Holliday.
This, too, may be a very difficult question to answer. Member Strauss indicated that some people think it's a two-to-five-year process, others 10, 20. Let's say it is a five-year process. Where are we? There's no barometer in your slides. There's no distance achieved in your slides. But what's your sense? Are we just getting out of the starting blocks? Are we coming around the first turn? Where are we on this?
Say we're in the first turn. I would challenge the idea that there's ever-full implementation. I think we're always working towards greater implementation. But in this first year, the amount of work that's been accomplished by specifically the math and the science groups, but the Collaboration Committees and communities of practice, it's really impressive, just the amount of work that's been completed. Just the idea of getting these groups together to be able to collaborate and all get in the same room to discuss ideas and understand what best practice looks like is a big first step. I don't think that we're all on the same page quite yet, but as has been discussed earlier in the presentation, so many people are in different places across the state. And so right now, the important thing is getting everybody in the room, and let's level set around what good and best practice looks like.
And I would just add that I feel like, in terms of the state of California, there's been so many things that have happened over the past six years now going 2017 that have happened, that the LEAs have had a lot of change happen. And at the same time, kudos to the State Board. I think all the policy lovers that we need to really do implementation well are now in place. We have the great standards, we have the framework, the assessment is in place, we have the accountability system coming together, we have the new dashboard, great dashboard. And all these things are coming together, and now all the great work that's happened over the past five to six years can now continue to move forward. And what we're focusing in on is ensuring that the people who provide support are doing the best job possible and ensuring that the LEAs receive the best support and just learning from those groups as possible, so.
Okay, thanks. All right. Thank you for that, and I think we're ready now to move on to item four, the update. Pardon?
Public comment.
Oh, public comment, sorry.
Jessica Sacco.
Good afternoon. Thank you. I'll be brief. I'm Jessica Sacco with the California Science Teachers Association, and I have participated in many of the meetings that have taken place around the Science Collaboration Committee, although our primary representative is Lisa Hegdahl, is a practitioner in the classroom. She serves a very important role and voice within this group, and we are very proud and honored to be a part of this program, as was presented, you know, mentioned by the presenters. This is a very new approach to standards implementation, and it's one that our organization believes in and fully supports. Along those lines, I also want to echo the words of Efren Mercado, talking about this being the beginning of the work and needing to continue this process, that it is a process of continuous improvement, and we look forward to engaging with this over the next few years as we continue to develop and implement our new science standards. So I want to thank the Department, the State Board, and SESSA, as well as the Bechtel Jr. Foundation for their support of this program, because it is really making a difference for students across the state.
Okay, now we're ready for item four.
Good afternoon, President Kerr, Superintendent Torleksen, board members. I'm Barb Murchison, ESSA State Lead here at the Department of Education. The purpose of this item is to provide you and the public with an update regarding progress in the development of the Every Student Succeeds Act, or ESSA State Plan. The CDE recommends that the board approve the proposed guiding principles and recommended approach to ESSA State Plan development contained in the item. Happy New Year. Some things have changed in the ESSA landscape since we were last together in November, and given these changes, board and department staff agreed that this would be a good time to regroup and review where we currently stand with ESSA and also ensure that we're on the same page as we move forward with plan development. To review -- let me get my slides going. It's been a little bit more than a year since ESSA became law. Since then, our colleagues at the U.S. Department of Education, or ED, have issued more than a dozen guidance documents and several sets of proposed regulations. Two sets of those proposed regulations, the assessment regs and the accountability, data reporting, and state plan regs, have been finalized. The CDE provided information regarding the final regs and changes that were made to the proposed regs to you in a December information memorandum. Oh, sorry.
Got it? Okay.
Thank you. With the transition to a new president and new administration at ED, there's quite a bit of uncertainty around what's going to happen with all of the guidance and regulations issued under the current administration. Congress may choose to use the Congressional Review Act. This would give them the authority to pass a joint resolution of disapproval within 60 days of publication of any final regulation. If signed by the president, that resolution not only rescinds the regulation, it also prevents the agency from ever issuing anything substantially similar on the same piece of law. The new leadership at ED may also opt to modify or withdraw guidance or regulations. Adding to the list of unknowns, we do not anticipate that we'll have a final federal budget until the end of April. We may not know to what extent the various programs within ESSA will be funded for several months. We've invited our representative from Brustein Manasewit, our federal liaison, to come out and provide you with a full briefing regarding the changes in DC, including an update on the regs in March, because we're hoping that some of these questions will have been resolved by then and we'll have a better idea around federal expectations around ESSA. So with that said, and all that for context, we think it's worth a look at where we currently stand and where we might want to go with the ESSA State Plan. California has learned many lessons from NCLB, and these lessons are informing our approach to ESSA State Plan development. Perhaps the most important lesson is the importance of managing the influence federal law has on California's direction. We're committed to ensuring that our state priorities drive the decision-making wherever federal, state, and local interests intersect. California currently invests about $88 billion in pre-K to grade 12 education. Of this amount, $8 billion comes from federal resources. The programs within ESSA account for approximately $2.5 billion. Even though these ESSA funds represent a relatively small portion of the overall budget, these funds are largely focused on our most underserved students, so that makes them very important to us. But putting federal funds into perspective means that we approach them as a supplement that can be used to augment our current direction rather than a source to lead policy and practice. Well, you all know better than anyone, California's education system has been engaged in an extensive remodeling project for the last few years. Back in 2010, the state adopted the Common Course State Standards with their strong focus on college and career readiness and a move away from scripted teaching. on college and career readiness and a move away from scripted teaching and learning toward an approach that requires effective engagement of students and teachers. Then came the smarter-balanced assessments, which brought us a new generation of assessments with a focus on both formative and summative feedback. During this same time period, Superintendent Torleksen convened groups of stakeholders from around the state to craft a vision for education that includes the whole child and focuses on educator effectiveness. Recommendations and roadmaps collaboratively developed by these stakeholder groups are documented in Greatness by Design and a Blueprint for Great Schools. Then in 2013, the governor signed LCFF, which redesigned the education system to support local control, equity, and performance. The work is ongoing, but in the past half dozen years, California has overhauled almost every aspect of our pre-K through grade 12 education system. We are on a new path, a path that we call the California Way. So ESA provides us with flexibility in addressing the statute, and it presents us with the opportunity to dovetail federal requirements into our current trajectory for accountability and continuous improvement. Since reauthorization, CDE staff have worked to understand and inventory the requirements of ESA for alignment with California's current direction. Through this work, it's become clear that California can use ESA to further our current goals and objectives. As we've said many times, we are working towards an aligned, coherent, integrated, single system. This would include integration of LEA plan elements into the LCAP development process. It would include the alignment of state and federal accountability metrics, and also the alignment of state and federal intervention and assistance to form a multi-leveled support system. So today, we want to propose a plan framework and plan development process within which we can move closer to our goal of a single coherent system. That, in fact, is the first guiding principle. We want our plan to support the creation of a single coherent, local, state, and federal accountability and continuous improvement system. One of the heaviest lifts here has already been accomplished. The indicators and performance standards approved for the LCFF evaluation rubrics will also serve for state, local, and federal accountability purposes. We're going to continue to strive for this single coherent system as we work to align the planning requirements and the support elements. Second, we will ensure that state priorities and directions lead the plan, with opportunities in ESA leveraged to assist in accomplishing state goals and objectives. It just makes good sense for California to follow the course set through LCFF and to use the identified priorities as a means to align federal funding and requirements to the current system. Third, we will take this opportunity to refresh those applications, plans, and commitments to ensure that LEAs are also thoughtfully aligning federal funds to state and local priorities. ESA gives us the chance to redesign the federally required applications and plans to both reinforce and align with the state priorities. Fourth, we can use the ESA State Plan to bring into sharper focus our commitment to the implementation of rigorous state standards, equity, local control, performance, and continuous improvement. This will clearly distinguish the work from the NCLB-like federal directives and establish a strong foundation for the state's way forward. Fifth, we will leverage state administrative funds to realign CDE operations to state priorities. We'll establish a structure that models for LEAs' thoughtful, coherent, and coordinated use of federal resources to support state priorities, and take this opportunity to further break down silos here at the Department. Finally, we'll strategically approach state-allowed reservations from title programs to further state priorities. There are several required and optional reservations, which gives us a chance to make the granting opportunities that make the most sense for California. For example, rather than continuing school improvement grants, ESA has given states control over defining how support will be provided to their schools that are identified for additional assistance. We're going to use this opportunity to thoughtfully design interventions that complement and supplement California's statewide system of support under LCFF. So with all of this in mind, rather than approaching the development of the plan based on what we think the U.S. Department of Education wants, the CDE is going to lead the development of the plan based on what California needs. I want to take a minute to be very clear about the task in front of us. They've been in this position for about nine or 10 months, and have had the opportunity to talk to hundreds, if not thousands, of people about this work. I'm a little concerned, and I think one of the primary conspirators is possibly in the room with me, that we have talked so much about the development of a single coherent system that some people think that the ESA State Plan will describe that single coherent system in its entirety. Okay? Really, what we're talking about is an application for federal funds. In exchange for the roughly $2.5 billion we stand to receive from the federal government, we need to describe how we plan to use, manage, and monitor those funds. ED has even provided us with a template to facilitate the development of the application. It's 30-something pages. The template requires that we respond to very specific prompts. It does not require descriptions of everything that is happening here in California. In fact, the peer reviewers probably don't want to read about all of the amazing work that is underway here in California. Well, maybe they do, but they don't want to have to. Also, in my conversations with various stakeholders, it seems there's a misconception that everything needs to be in place and happening by the time we submit the plan. The plan is literally about our plan for addressing federal statute. We are not expected to have everything fully implemented by the time we submit the application in September. Okay? So I think those are important boundaries to put around this work as we think about where we are, how we've gotten there, and where we're headed. So with all of that said, and based on what we have heard from you and from conversations with our stakeholders, here is our proposed approach. We are going to write a plan that identifies how California will use, manage, and monitor federal funds to support the implementation of state academic standards, with and a continuous improvement-based accountability and support system consistent with California's existing LCFF approach. For each of the prompts in the application template, we'll first address the SS statutory requirements consistent with LCFF and the California Way. We will then cross-check the plan with ED's requirements. We'll make revisions to address the elements that are missing, but only if they don't interfere with our focus. For those areas that are inconsistent with California's priorities, we will pursue waivers. CDE staff has identified nine questions that will need to be addressed as we complete our application for federal funds. The questions are contained in a table in the item attachment one, and also listed here on the slide. What is the purpose and focus of the plan as it pertains to maximizing the impact of federal funds? What are the state's academic standards and assessments that provide a point of reference for other elements in the plan? How will the state provide funds to local education agencies to further the goals identified in the plan? How is educator equity supported? How are the needs of English learners met? How is progress towards state goals measured and addressed? How will funds to meet state goals be monitored? How will schools in need of assistance be identified? And what assistance will be provided to support continuous improvement? Note that some of these questions will require you to set policy, and others are more about managing the implementation of policy, which typically is the responsibility of the CDE. For example, elements like the purpose and focus of the plan and the adoption of standards and assessments are about setting policy, while questions around getting funding to LEAs and monitoring the use of funds are more administrative in nature. You'll also note that some of these, happily, probably, that some of these questions have already been addressed. We know what our system of standards and assessments is, and the evaluation rubrics you've adopted are a key component of the system in which we can measure progress towards whether or not LEAs are meeting state goals. There are still a number of policy decisions to be made, however. For example, we will need to determine the methodology we'll use to identify our schools most in need of assistance, and how the state can best support these schools with their continuous improvement efforts. CDE staff is in the process of developing concise policy briefs that clearly articulate the remaining policy decisions and lay out options that the Board might consider in making those decisions. Once those options are clearly articulated, we plan to take them on the road and share them with our California stakeholders. As you can see on this slide, we currently have four regional meetings and two webinars scheduled in early February. We plan to work with our partners, California's education associations and advocacy groups, to ensure that these events are well-attended. We anticipate that registration will open, and our promotion activities will begin this week. And I need to just take a moment to express my appreciation for our colleagues in Orange County, Riverside County, Sacramento County, and Fresno County, who, when I picked up the phone with a relatively late request, were more than happy to help and accommodate and make these meetings happen. So I appreciate the partnership of all the counties, but those four in particular this week. At the meeting, stakeholders will be asked to describe, discuss, and analyze implications of the potential options, and articulate the advantages and disadvantages of each. We also plan to solicit feedback from the California Practitioners Advisory Group, the LCFF Policy, statewide organization policy input group, the technical design group, and others where appropriate. CDE will use all of this input to provide you with recommendations, including an analysis of advantages and disadvantages based on stakeholder experience and feedback. Fundamentally, we want you to be confident that your remaining ESA-related policy decisions are well-informed by the diverse voices of education stakeholders across the state. So here are the guiding principles again. We're asking that you approve these today, as well as the approach to plan development that I've described. I'd be happy to address any questions you have around anything that I've just shared. And thank you.
All right, thank you for that presentation. I wanted to make sure that the public understands that we intend to take the full time allotted by the federal government. They revised that, and they will allow us to submit in September 18th, 2017. So we'll be on that schedule, and I know that's what you're working from in this regard. I'd like, so Board Member Ting and I are the federal liaisons. I'd like you to send us that federal document that you...
The template, yes.
Yeah, the template, yeah. I don't know that I've seen that, and I certainly agree that what I saw of your outline of it, it doesn't fit the way we're thinking about it, and you're reconceptualizing it into much more of something that would fit better with California. So let's take some Board Member questions on this, and then we'll have some public testimony. Yeah.
So first of all, thank you, Barbara, for bringing this. I think this idea of resetting was a great idea. I think previously, we were starting to go down into details of the specific titles, and we say, wait, 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 and pull back. So this is a nice, comprehensive way of setting out our principles, setting out that framework and our approach, and actually, it actually helps to alleviate some of my anxiety as a liaison on what's going to happen with this application. I also especially appreciate that, your point of, we are, this is about an application. This is not about, let's get everything in place so that we can get this federal money. This is not what it's about. So I appreciate the time that we're taking here, and I'd be full support of this motion, but we'll have some discussion for...
Good, okay. Ortiz-Lacone.
Yeah, I have a couple of questions, but I do like the majority of what I read. I think that when we reviewed the 2.0 blueprint, I said, gosh, we should have started here. This should have been sort of the vision that would have guided the conversations. Now we're sort of pausing, but we've had conversations, and so obviously, that's all in the back of our minds. I am not putting not one equity egg on the new administration's basket. I don't believe that the appointed Secretary of Education would know the needs of our students that have been chronically underperforming. And by the way, just don't get, this is Felisa Acevea Ortiz-Lacone speaking on my own behalf. This does not represent the views of my colleagues on the State Board. But I want to say that somebody who doesn't know the term "public schools" and refers to government schools, I don't believe would know the needs of our students in an authentic way. So for that reason, I do believe that we should be leading what's best for our students. And I think we have come a very long way. When I see what California is doing in comparison to what other states are doing or not doing, not considering at this point, I have to say that I do feel we're a model for the rest of the country. So I'm very proud of the work that we're doing here in California. But there are a couple of things that I want to know. If I vote for this, does it mean what in practical reality? So there was one thing that I saw. Seek waivers when statute is inconsistent with California needs and priorities. So one of the things that I've brought up before is, are we moving towards targets that we're building, that we're setting for our students per the different indicators? Are we moving to accelerate growth for some of the students that are underperforming so that we can narrow the achievement gap? I know that ESA, being a civil rights legislation, at least as it is drafted now, calls for that. They also call for a state-determined timeline. And my only concern would be, because there are those guardrails there, if I say, yes, I want these guiding principles to guide our work, which, again, I believe in these principles, but there are some things that I am concerned. I don't know that LCFF calls for state targets. I don't know that we call for a timeline. So does that mean that whatever doesn't align to LCFF and some of the California Way, we then seek a waiver? You know, I want to know what I'm voting for, because there are some things that misalign, and, you know, it could either be that we have a discussion to see how they could align, or is it just, well, it doesn't align, so therefore, we seek a waiver? Can you please clarify that?
Sure. So our step one is to write the plan to address SS statutory requirements. So the statute requires that we establish long-term goals and timelines. So that is consistent with our plan development process that we're asking you to approve today. In some of the weedier areas where regulations go beyond statute and call for states to do more specific things, we feel particularly, given where we stand and what's going on back east, we probably don't want to put a lot of eggs in the regulations basket either. Right? So just to clarify, step one, meet a plan that addresses statutory requirements in a way that makes sense with the California Way. We wouldn't apply necessarily, at least I don't think we would, from what I know right now, for waivers for any of the statutory requirements. We would be applying for waivers for regulatory requirements if it comes to that. Does that help?
And it's not automatic for every discrepancy that's out there. I mean, you know, where there's...
And obviously...
You've got to use waivers judiciously, I would think, even if we thought it was a good idea. So, yeah, we're not going to have too many, is my guess, yeah. Board Member Burr.
Because Felisa and I are probably on different ends of the spectrum here with respect to the waivers. So could you just go back to the last slide that you had? Because I'm a little confused. I know, exactly. The last thing says, "Seek waivers when statute is inconsistent."
Oh, well, I'm sorry, then I'm responsible for that confusion. That should say, I apologize, "Seek waivers wherever the regulations are inconsistent with California's needs and priorities." I apologize. Thank you for pointing that out.
So I probably wanted to say "statute." I mean, I just think it should say, "Seek waivers when it's inconsistent with California."
Yeah, I think that's right, yeah.
I think, yeah. But I also think, and Felisa and I are very close on lots of things, that whatever waiver might come forward would have to come to us individually, and we'd have a chance to discuss it and vote on it and decide whether to go forward. So I don't think voting for these guiding principles says you're going to automatically say, yeah, every waiver goes forward. So just to be clear. And I think some of the issues about setting targets, we'll dovetail with what we talked about this morning, when we have a growth model come back that ultimately will be deciding that for California, and then maybe it'll be consistent, maybe it won't, but hopefully you'll be comfortable with whatever that is, so. So I just want to say, from my perspective, because I am on the end of, you know, drag kicking and screaming to try to comply with this, that I do really appreciate the approach. I think that, as Member Sun mentioned, that sort of stepping back and thinking about, what is this really about? And given the changing environment in Washington, D.C., let's just go forward on our own in the best way we know how. And I think that this structure provides it. I had one small question. It's about educator equity that's on there. Is that the responsibility of the board or CTC, or do we do that together?
We have done it together. Our California Educator Equity Plan that was first submitted to ED in 2015, and I believe the update was a December memo, that's something we worked with CTC together. So as we work forward, again, there are some questions. We are in the process of developing these briefs. To really clarify, what if, what if any additional policy discussions does the board need to have around each of these? And we'll bring that to you in March.
Okay. Are there any other board member questions? I'm sure we have some public comment. Public comment?
We do. Would the following people please line up? Melissa Cannon, Estelle Lemieux, Ken Burt, Lorraine Richards, Jesse Aguilar, Angela DeRamos, Sheila Whitley, Felicia Jones, Jessica Sacco, Lori Ben, Alexandra Menjivas, Patty Scripter, Perrius Swaters, Nancy Huarte, and Long Lunteo.
Good afternoon. I'm Jesse Aguilar with the California Teachers Association. CTA generally supports the proposed guideline, guiding principles, and recommended approach to development of the California State Plan set forth in item number four, but we await the details. We fully appreciate the current uncertainty regarding the status of ESSA regulations, but as an organization that represents over 325,000 people, we need some lead time to ensure the department and board have the full benefit of our members' carefully-considered review and feedback. To that end, we appreciate the board providing some specifics today regarding the updated stakeholder engagement strategy that the item promised and look forward to learning more. We hope the proposed schedule will provide sufficient time to ensure stakeholder engagement is, in fact, meaningful and helpful.
Good afternoon. My name is Felicia Jones with Congregations Organized for Prophetic Engagement, representing San Bernardino County. It is our collective responsibility to ensure that California's new education plan works for all our students and to ensure the principles of equity at the heart of the nation's education law remain front and center in San Bernardino and neighboring communities. But ESSA not only encourages, but requires, the input of parents from local communities like San Bernardino. Again, we are also pleased to see the extended opportunity for input. But also, given that the federal deadline for the states to submit their ESSA plans was pushed back, we are still seeking additional opportunities for more diverse communities, more parents to actually be able to provide input, and would certainly love to see additional opportunities for stakeholder engagement and making sure that regions, we know that Riverside County is on the list, but we certainly want to make sure that San Bernardino is included. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Lori Ben. I'm from Pasadena Unified School District. My husband and I, we have seven children that have attended Pasadena Unified Schools. And I am here just to ask for support as the State Board creates the ESSA plan. I'd like to see attention paid, or adequate attention paid, to the equitable distribution of qualified and effective teachers within our low-performing schools. Over the course of the seven children going through the schools, they have attended some of the low-performing schools, and we saw substitute teachers that were there for long periods of time, and our students weren't receiving adequate work. We'd also seen high teacher turnover, and I've also seen wonderful teachers that have been in those schools. Many of the choices I made to, my husband and I made to leave our children in those schools was because of those wonderful and adequate teachers.
Good afternoon. My name is Alexandra Menjivar. I'm a mother of two, attending ALAUSD Wasworth Avenue Elementary School in South LA. I am also a member of Parent Revolution and Parent Power Network, and an active member of ELAC Comedy. Our school has been a low-performing school for a long time. For six years that I have experienced in the school, a range of effective and ineffective teachers. In three, in the third grade, my son had a lot of substitute teachers for a long time. Every year, I feel lucky if they have an effective teacher who is committed to, of working with the parents to solve the challenges that Wasworth faces. Our children are trapped in school, in the school classrooms that they don't help them succeed. But I know that Wasworth can improve, and what do, what we do need is an equitable distribution of high-quality teachers. I urge the State Board to develop a teacher equality plan under ESSA that includes and focuses on sharing high-needs schools to get effective teachers. Thank you.
Good afternoon. President Kirst, Superintendent Torleks, and members of the board. Jessica Sacco, representing California Science Teachers Association. I'm here today to speak generally in support of the work that you're doing here, the guiding principles that were proposed, as well as the overall direction that California intends to take with its ESSA state plan. We think that investing in the implementation of our state standards is not only consistent with the way California's going, but it's really what's best for what's teachers and students in the classroom. We articulated a couple of comments and just sort of cautions as you move forward in the process, I guess, consider it homework turned in advance at this point. But we are looking forward to finding ways to, in as many ways possible, leverage ESSA to complement the work that's being done in California to support professional learning for teachers, as we just heard in the previous presentation, as well as support for administrative professional learning. So thank you.
Good afternoon. Patty Scripter, California State PTA. We really appreciate your ongoing commitment to an integrated system. We think this is going to be much more helpful in communication to parents. We get a lot of questions about, but what about the federal, NCLB, ESSA? What does that mean? How does this work together? So we truly appreciate that continued commitment. We think it'll be much easier to explain to parents. We also appreciate the guidelines that have been developed, but we're asking that the comment that you make in the agenda that says SB and CD are committed to ensuring a transparent transition, we're asking you to elevate that to a guiding principle that clearly states your commitment to transparency and communication of both fiscal and policy decisions, especially with the way this works with Title I and LCFF. We think that's a really important piece for parents to understand what's happening. And for the stakeholder input with the requirements of ESSA for parent engagement, we'd like to see opportunities for parents to engage and give input. We had people go to some of the county offices of Ed's events, and it's really hard in a large room with that many people for parents to feel that they are being heard. Thank you.
Carrie Burns, California School Boards Association. I'll associate myself with Ms. Sacco's remarks. We think it's a great idea that you're setting up principles and that the principles are good ones. It isn't clear, though, about the set-aside stuff, so we are reserving the conversation later, the right to come back and share with you our input on various, the uses of various set-asides with programs. Thank you.
Hi. Good afternoon. My name's Nancy Huante. I'm a part-time faculty here at Sac State in the Ethnic Studies Department, and then I am also the Lead Director for Parent Organizing at the South Stockton Schools Initiative in Stockton. And I'm here today to just talk about, or to urge you to give more time for parent engagement. So just to echo the comments that have been talked about so far, and then also how that, how this framework impacts the budget on low-performing school. And so more conversations, more time, more opportunities for parents especially to really engage in multiple languages. So thank you.
Hello. My name's Darius Swaters. I'm 18. I just graduated from Aspire Langston Hughes Academy. Now I am trying to pursue environmental science and earth science with a climate and environment emphasis. I'm here today to talk about the evaluation rubric and why I feel it is important. I feel like the school board should try to make it in such a way that parents and students alike can really understand how any given school performs in each academic area, as well as how certain subgroups of people are performing at that school or in certain areas. I feel like this type of clarity and transparency is really important, just so a parent or guardian can best understand how a school can best serve their students' strengths and weaknesses. In addition to that, I would like the public comment period to be extended. I see it's during the summer, and there's not a lot of school-related activities or things during that time. So if it was extended, that would give parents more of a chance to get there.
Good afternoon. Martha Albert, on behalf of AXA. We at AXA also support the general direction of the State Board, both the guiding principles and the framework outlined by Barbara in the presentation. It's really helpful, I think, for the public to start seeing the way that the California system is really going to be driving the conversation. And I think it's a really good reminder that Barbara mentioned that the federal funding only provides 2.5 billion out of the ESSA funding for the state schools. With that said, we would encourage the state moving forward in the next several months in drafting the plan to continue to outline those differences between the federal law and the California law, because we have school districts asking, I think they're still under the old mentality of NCLB, "How is ESSA impacting our schools?" And so I think that as we move forward, it'll be important for both the State Board and CDE staff and all of you to continue to drive that conversation about what California is doing. As I mentioned before, we at AXA have established a task force to look into accountability issues, both at the state and federal level. Our first meeting is January 25th, and one of the topics of the discussion will be on the ESSA state plan. So we look forward to providing comments in the near future and engaging in the public conversations. Thank you.
Hi there. Good afternoon. My name is Lang Lunteau. I'm a teacher at Aspire Langston Hughes Academy in Stockton. I also am a supporter of the South Stockton Schools Initiative, and I serve on the Stockton Unified School District Board of Trustees, which is our Board of Trustees for our 18th largest district in the state of California. I'm here really quickly just to applaud you all for being very thoughtful and deliberate about how we, as a state, are approaching this, the development of our ESSA state plan. And I'd also like to echo some of the concerns that you've hear, you've heard so far from our statewide advocacy partners around ensuring that we, as a community, are really hearing out the voices that are often not represented in these plans. It's important that we, as a state, are very bold in addressing some of these concerns, because, just as Ms. Ortiz-Lacon mentioned, that we have a lot to be proud of. In conversations with national advocacy partners, we've also heard that there, we have a long way to go in California, especially in terms of addressing issues of transparency and ensuring that the documents that come from this process are accessible to all stakeholders.
Good afternoon. Liz Guillen with Public Advocates. As was mentioned and also discussed by members, the principles all sound great, but of course, they will depend on what the specific policy question you will be deciding. And it's good to know and have clarified that the waiver questions will come individually. We support, of course, the single accountability system. We want to point out on the status timeline that was in the memo, that there is still a need to define the assistance that, the structure of assistance that will include consideration of district performance standards, status, areas of need, and concentration of need. And we just want to take the opportunity to underscore that, something that the Equity Coalition has said before, that there is a need to just, to also consider technical assistance for districts that don't meet the statutory criteria quite for intervention. Thank you.
Okay. That concludes the public comment. And so this is an action item. Are board members ready to vote on this? Looks like they are. Motion?
I'll make the motion. Do you need to read it?
Motion is to approve the CDE recommendation. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Holiday. All those in favor, raise your hands. Okay, that is approved unanimously. So now we are on to the waivers, and we have waivers one through 12 on consent and waivers 15 and 16 on consent. We have two waivers not on consent, so I'd like a motion on the waivers that are on consent, one through...
So moved.
And 15 and 16. So moved. Second. All right. Is there any public comment?
Yes. On waiver four, Jesse Aguilar, and also Jesse Aguilar on waiver nine, and on waiver 16, Angela DeRamos, and on... That's it.
That's it. Please come forward on those waivers. I'm not sure they're speaking on these waivers, but I know, but it seems like...
Maybe she should, I think there's a lot of noise. Carolyn, you should say it again. So on waiver four and on waiver nine, it was Jesse Aguilar, and on waiver number 16, it was Angela DeRamos.
Okay. Are any of those people here? No? If not, we're ready for the vote, I guess. All those in favor, raise your hands. That carries. Thank you. Now, we need to hear waiver 13 first, and CDE will present on this. Go ahead.
President Kirst, Superintendent, members. My name is Kirst. You can't hear me?
Go ahead.
One side. One, no. Yes. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Kristen Wright. I am still in my fourth month now as State Director of Special Education, your State Director, and I am here to present to you this waiver, which is a waiver of size and scope to become, for one of our LEAs to become a single district SELPA. That single district, Ontario Montclair, has requested to become a single district SELPA, and it is within our authority typically to be able to approve single district SELPAs as long as they meet size and scope under delegation that you've given to the superintendent. However, since this one is less than 30,000 and not a K-12 or PK-12 district, we're here today with them to ask, for them to ask you for a waiver. So I'm here today under our authority to let you know sort of the checks and balances that we put in place to be able to give you the kind of information you need to weigh in on this issue. Ontario Montclair is currently a member of the West End SELPA, which is located in San Bernardino. It has approximately 121,000 students in that SELPA. Through a number of actions over the past year, which the district is here, and they can explain if you wish, they are in a situation where they would prefer to be their own single district SELPA. So what we look at under our authority is whether or not we believe there are any red flags, any issues that you should know about that we believe would preclude them from being able to serve students, because at the end of the day, our responsibility is to ensure that the full continuum is met for our students and that they're getting what they need. So I'm here to report, after extensive research, that we have not found any indication that they would not be able to do so. And because they are a district of 21,000-plus students, they have what would be deemed enough capacity based on a number of other single district SELPAs that are around the same ADA. If you're interested, I do have a list of current SELPAs that are around the same population. So you can see how many single district SELPAs there are and what their population is. And so there was some expressed interest in whether or not they could serve, if they're only, if they're only a PK eight district, what about high school? And I'll let them address that, but we have spoken with them, and they have spoken with their high school district and appear to have worked out any logistical issues around going from one SELPA to another. going from one SELPA to another. With regard to any other issues that have come up, we have recommended approval on this, because again, we don't have a looking glass, but we do not have any indication that they would not be able to serve. We looked at complaints, we've looked at due process, we looked at a number of issues related to how they've been doing around our other monitoring activities and have not seen any areas of concern.
All right, thank you. Are there any board member questions for CDE staff on this? If not, we'll proceed to public comment.
We have three speakers, Jack Lucas, Dr. James Hammond, and Epiphany Owen. Please line up.
My name is Jack Lucas, and I'm working as a consultant to the Ontario Montclair School District. And I wanted to introduce the rest of our group that's here this afternoon. We have two members of the Board of Trustees, Dr. Michael Flores and Mr. Samuel Crowe. We also have the district superintendent, Dr. James Hammond, who is here, and the assistant superintendent of learning and teaching, Tammy Lipschutz, who is here, and then also our legal counsel, Epiphany Owen. We're here primarily to speak in support of the waiver. We think that the information that's been presented by the department and in favor of the waiver clearly outlines what the issues were and why the district is at this point in terms of requesting the waiver. We've reviewed the conditions that would be applied if, in fact, the waiver is approved and the district is ready to meet all of those conditions, based on the timelines for March 30, 2017, and June 30, 2017. And I think what's most important here is that...
Time.
We'll come back and ask you questions if we have any.
Okay, that would be fine.
President Kirst, Trustees of the State Board, Superintendent Tarlestone, thank you for having us here. James Hammond, Superintendent with the Ontario Montclair School District. And I'm just here to thank the CDE staff, Ms. Stewart and her team, for a lot of thoughtful hard work between the district and the CDE folks to come to this recommendation. We are in full support and very confident in our ability to serve the best interests of our special ed kids and the families as well. So thank you very much.
Okay, that concludes public comment. Is there any further discussion from the board? Yeah, Board Member Sandoval, who is our liaison in special education.
Yeah, I just, I want to, I appreciate the thorough look at this unique case, and I feel that this option that's being prepared or presented by the CDE staff will offer greater local control to this community, and it's going to meet the students and their unique needs. So I'm supportive of the recommendation. I'd like to move approval of the recommendation with the conditions.
Is there a second? Second, Ortiz-Lacon. Board members ready to vote? All those in favor of the waiver, raise your hands. Okay, that passes unanimously. Waiver 14.
Hello, Kristen Wright, Special Education Division. So these two waivers are RSP waivers. You're familiar with our caseload requirements, that if an RSP caseload goes over 28 students but is less than 32, they come to seek a waiver. I want to remind you that in both of these cases, these are things that have already occurred. These are from '15, '16, and last year, both from last year. So again, we try to do a thorough job to look at sort of root cause and to figure out if this is something that needs to be addressed ongoing. We're always concerned to make sure that teachers are able to meet the needs of their students. Because of a lot of activities that have happened over the last few years around these RSP waivers, we have gone, I think, the extra mile now in making sure that we're actually, we talk to the union reps from those districts, we speak to the teachers, we're making sure that we hear from that person, not secondhand information. So everything that you read in there is firsthand information. One of the, the First District, Luther Burbank, this is, they have not been a regular district that's come back to you. However, this came out of a corrective action compliance complaint that was issued by the union in that situation. And so we went in and investigated, and a corrective action was partly that they come to the board to seek a waiver to let you know that this had occurred. And the second one has been back multiple times to you, San Ramon. However, they have not been back for the same teacher. So in this case, this is a different teacher, a different school. And I would say just in general, in terms of the landscape, is these are hard to compare equally against each other. There's a lot of different situations that come up. We just look for a chronic, you know, way over the case limit. And I know the 28 to 32 is within the law, and we don't take that lightly. However, we do understand that sometimes students get identified or they fluctuate. And as we're trying to ask LEAs to keep kids closer to general ed and closer to their home schools, we do have to be somewhat flexible, I think, on how we manage that. So we do, and we'll continue to ask you to put conditions on, and we will continue to check in on these folks to make sure that there aren't any other red flags and that students are not being served appropriately. But in these situations, when talking to the teachers, they felt like they could meet the needs of those students, and really, at the end of the day, that's what we're trying to do. So we ask for your approval with conditions on both.
Is there any public comment on this? No? Board member discussion? Board member Sandoval?
I, these are difficult things to look at, and I really appreciate that there's ongoing communication between the department and these sites, because that's essential, and that's going to help us meet the needs of our students with disabilities in the best possible way. So I approve the recommendation as presented by CDE.
Motion? Why don't you make a motion?
I move approval of the recommendation. Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, raise your hands. Okay, that's unanimous. We're on to item five, which is the history, social science, instructional materials. Who will present this? Here, okay.
Stephanie.
Yes.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm Stephanie Gregson, the Executive Director of the Instructional Quality Commission. And I think I have about five months on Kristen here at CDE. So I only have three more months until I can stop using "I'm new." Before you today, we have, we're asking for action on four items. The first one is to appoint the instructional material reviewers and content review experts as recommended by the Instructional Quality Commission for the history, social science, instructional materials adoption for kindergarten through eighth grade. The next one is to approve the evaluation criteria maps and content standards maps as recommended by the Instructional Quality Commission, and to approve members of the Instructional Quality Commission and the California Department of Education staff to train reviewers for the 2017 history, social science, instructional materials adoption. And finally, to approve three CDE program consultants to serve as panel facilitators to the event that an insufficient number of commissioners are available during this time to play their role. So we're very excited. I know there's a question regarding the instructional material reviewers and content review experts, and so that's why it was pulled off consent, is to discuss that process. So I'm going to concentrate on that unless there's questions about the other three items. So we're very excited by the interest in participating in this process. Again, history, social science has set a record with the number of applicants that applied to become instructional material reviewers and content review experts. We had a total of 167 applicants, 133 for instructional material reviewers and 34 content review experts. Of those 133 instructional material reviewers, 99 are being recommended to the State Board, and 21 of the content review experts are being recommended. I want to point out that we understand that all reviewers come to us with different perspectives, and we see that as a benefit. It's one of the reasons why our training for the reviewers focuses and emphasizes on their true task of aligning the instructional materials to the content standard or evaluating if the instructional materials are aligned to the content standards and the content of the framework and the criteria within the framework for instructional materials. The training focuses on the reviewers being able to make unbiased decisions around the content of the instructional materials reviewers and coming to consensus. I have very personal experience with this, as in 2015, I was a content review expert on instructional materials review panel. We had a panel of about 10 members, and we all came with our very different perspectives. But the role of the reviewers was to look at the materials and determine, do they meet the content standards? Are they meeting the content of the framework? So our personal opinions were not in consideration during this time. We had, the review training was very specialized in identifying, this is our role. Our role is to determine, do these instructional materials align with the content standards, with the social content standards, and with the content of the framework? So that is something that we emphasize with reviewers, and we do see the reviewers coming to us with different perspective as a benefit. The Instructional Quality Commission was very thoughtful and thorough in their analysis of the applicants when ensuring that the Title V regulations, and the Title V regulations call for a majority of the panels to be made up of teachers, and teachers were defined as classroom teachers in the area, in the content area we're looking at, so history, social science, content teachers. And also that we have, the content review experts have a PhD in the area aligned with the content, so any PhD within history, social science. Okay? So the Instructional Quality Commission, once they made sure that the Title V regulations were met, then began with the other applicants that were considered other members of the public, parents, school board members, those are also in Title V regulations. And the first criteria that they looked at was, do they have a complete application? And were they able to follow directions? And that was actually the first criteria they looked at for all of the applicants. Were they able to follow directions of the application and have a complete applications? If there was any applicant that had an incomplete application, they were disqualified from being recommended to the State Board, because it did not give us enough information about that applicant. Another criteria that they looked at was their ability to be unbiased as the content presented in their application, and if the applicant would add and contribute to a panel in a meaningful way. And also, would they lend expertise in the area of social content review? So that is some of the criteria that the Instructional Quality Commission reviewed as they were looking at these applicants. Are there any questions?
Board member questions? Okay, any public comment? No? Not? We're ready for a motion?
I move approval of the CDE's four recommendations.
Second, it's been moved and seconded. All right, no further discussion. All those in favor, raise your hand. Okay, now we're on the regular proposed consent calendar. And on consent are items six and seven and nine through 12, not eight, which we will hear. So do I have a motion? Is there any public comment on any of these? No?
So moved.
Second, Member Burr. All those in favor of the consent calendar motion items, raise your hand. Okay, now, number eight. Michelle Center will present.
Good afternoon, Superintendent Tarlestone, President Kirst, members of the board. I'm Michelle Center, Director of the Assessment Division. Before stating the motion for the record for this item, which pertains to emergency regulations for the CASP program, I'd like to draw your attention to a minor error. It's on page two, paragraph three of attachment one, which is the finding of emergency. The date in that paragraph references the end of the testing window. It incorrectly says June 30, I believe. It should be July 15 or the next weekday following the 15, as is documented in the proposed regulations of the item. I apologize for this typographical error. The CDE is asking the board to take the following actions. Approve the corrected finding of emergency. Adopt the proposed emergency regulations. Direct the CDE to circulate the required notice of proposed emergency action, and then submit the emergency regulations to the OAL for approval. Authorize the CDE to take any necessary action to respond to any direction or concern expressed by the OAL during its review of the finding of emergency and proposed emergency regulations. Unless you have questions on the proposed emergency regulations, I have nothing further on this item.
Okay, any questions? Technical questions? Public comment?
Doug McCray.
I'm Doug McCray, retired testing guy from NRA. The proposed changes for the large testing window for CASP are not major changes, but the large testing window, a full one-third of the academic calendar for each school, and the regulation that each testing window cannot be less than 25 instructional days, combined to generate effective testing windows far too long for a good statewide testing program. Testing windows should be no more than 25 instructional days, not less than 25, no, less than 25 instructional days to promote efficient testing times that minimize threats to test security, as well as comparability, promote comparability of results. The justification for the large testing window when the CASP regulations were approved in 2014 was the need for time to share technology devices. That's by and large disappeared as California schools become more technology capable. California needs to revisit the extremely long testing window for CASP and revise regulations to accommodate better educational measurement practice for our state testing program. Thank you.
Need a motion on this?
Okay, I'll move CDE's recommendation on the emergency regulations.
Second, all out. All those in favor, raise your hand. Wow, we're going to be done early. So now we're over the SBE priorities, and I need to have a motion to approve the minutes from November.
I'll move approval.
All right, all those in favor, respond favorably. Yes, thank you. Okay, now we're ready to have the board member reports on SBA priorities. Before I go through the list, I'm going to call on Board Member Sisson to announce her news about her future.
I found out in December that I was accepted into Harvard University, so I'll be going there in August.
So she was accepted in early admission at Harvard, where and out of this regular cycle where they take students with unusual qualities. So she's the earliest, I think, we've heard of in the student members on this board. It's been usually a cliffhanger into sometime in April. And so congratulations to you for that. Okay, we have then the list of liaisons, IQC mathematics, Strauss.
I think we heard today from the community of practice, excuse me, just sit down. I think we heard from the community of practice. I'll just say, as a liaison to the, there's a collaboration committee that meets, and they plan the community of practice. I think we really are clear that we have a whole nother round of work to do in mathematics. And so I go to the collaboration meetings and when I can to community of practice. But I do think we need to think as we look forward to the work, because we are seeing some real gaps in mathematics, and I think as a state, we're going to have some more to address that. The new framework, the framework's going to be updated with the EL strategies, and I think we ought to talk as we look at the ESEA Plan Two about our networking work to help train the regions around strategies. But I think the energy, as you heard from Chris, is great, and I think it's a long-term project.
Okay, do you have any reports on ELA, ELD?
So that meeting for ELA, ELD collaboration is next Tuesday, and I'll be attending that meeting. That is the planning meeting that will talk about the next set of activities as well. So again, we had the best, we had rollouts, very fully attended statewide. We did not do rollouts in mathematics, by the way. And from the rollouts in ELA, ELD, we realized that was early-level implementation. So I'll have a report at the next meeting about what the meeting on the 17th reported.
Okay.
And there is an IQC meeting next week on Thursday and Friday with an orientation, as well as an agenda that starts middle, the afternoon and all of half-day on Friday as well. So there's some new members coming on to IQC. Next week's going to actually have a chair, vice chair election as well.
Okay. I think we heard about history, social science. Do you have anything on that? Nikki's going to report on that.
History, social science frameworks, really busy year up ahead. The invitation to submit meeting for publishers will be on January 18. And... And you can go to the CDE website to learn more. There are several history, social science framework rollout events happening. The very first one scheduled at UC Davis, January 31st, is sold out. And we have another one in March in Sacramento. And they're happening throughout winter, spring, summer, and fall throughout the state. And these rollout events are really a collaboration between CDE, CSASA, and the California History Social Science Project. So I encourage everyone to look on the website for session dates, location, and registration information. And they're selling out fast, so register soon.
On history, social science, there's a conference in Sacramento on February 14th on civics and civic curriculum. And maybe you can help me with a group. It was convened by the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court on civics. They have a formal name of what they're, Bill Honig's on it, David Gordon's on it, several. It's a group to further civics in California and they made several recommendations to us in the civics area that were incorporated into our history, social science framework. So I'm speaking on that. And I'm speaking on what is the role of higher education in civics. I've actually made a speech to the Stanford Alumni Reunion at request. And you know, the assumption in the public is that we can carry this alone in K-12. And there's very little follow-through in higher education on civics. And they're not a much organized thing and they have some service activities, but not a lot on civic engagement in a direct way. So I'll be talking about, you know, what I think the responsibility is and that higher education needs to get behind this and reinforce with the direction we are going. So next I have science with Williams.
So I have a couple of things that I've been doing. On December 2nd, I attended a meeting in Sacramento of the Northern California Group of the NGSS Early Implementation Districts and Charter Organizations and made a presentation to them about what was, where we were in California in terms of state policy, what was this test, state summative test still on schedule? They were all very nervous about whether they were gonna be double-tested in the spring with the federal waiver and what was gonna happen with that. And in what way was NGSS going to be brought into the accountability system? You know, sometimes I think, we all think that everybody out there is glued to their screens, watching us stream live and they understand all of the nuance and implications behind everything we say. And that is just absolutely not true. Even those that watch and who are looking for cues and signals, sometimes you can't see, you know, they're not, the signals aren't strong enough for them to see that. And when they were asking me these questions, they were asking because they did not want to be double-tested. They don't want to double-test. They want the signal that NGSS should move forward and they are glad that it's going to be brought into the accountability system and that state, that state NGSS results are gonna be reported out publicly. Because obviously, all the people that participate in the early implementation initiative are committed to NGSS. That's why they applied to see if they could be a part of that program. So that was December 2nd. And then on February 16th, I will be at WestEd with the SD Bechtel Foundation Junior. By the way, I want to give a shout-out to them because they've funded math and NGSS in a way that has made a huge difference in California. And so again, with the early implementers, what they're doing is bringing the superintendents of those districts, of all the districts that are participating, eight districts, two CMOs. They're bringing then an assistant superintendents and district-level curriculum and instruction people together to talk about how, they're now three and a half years into this, into a, no, two and a half years into a four-year program. And so they are bringing them together for a day to talk about what's, for them, the leadership to be able to hear from the project leaders in those schools and districts, what's going well, what is challenging, what more support do they need? So I will be attending that meeting and making a presentation to them as well on the current status of science policy.
Advisory Committee on Special Education, Sandoval.
Gotta get the right notes out. Basically, the Advisory Commission did not meet since we last met in November. The commission is meeting next month. And one thing I do want to highlight, though, is that there was a, the final draft of the California Competitive Integrative Employment Blueprint was completed. And what I appreciate about that effort is it involves different agencies working together to support students in getting them prepared for competitive integrated employment and making sure that they are ready to work in positions that are not below minimum wage or that are in segregated work settings. So this is a positive development, making sure that not only the Department of Education, but also the Department of Developmental Services and the Department of Rehabilitation are working closely together to improve our outcomes and employability for students with disabilities.
Okay. I'm going, there's the, special education was addressed yesterday in the governor's budget and I'm gonna ask Karen Staff Walters to talk about the process for special education finance. That was a report published by the Public Policy Institute of California on November 29th. That was after our last meeting. It calls for a really radical overhaul of the financing of special education, quite detailed in its recommendations. This is an area that was not addressed by the local control funding formula. It is very complex, has many distinctive features, some would call it Byzantine. The governor's comments are, might be worth circulating to the board in the budget because they're very direct about this. So I'd like Karen to talk a little bit about the process that was in the budget to move forward on special education finance.
So as outlined yesterday in the budget, there'll be a process of stakeholder engagement and discussions throughout the spring on this topic. So nothing will change for the budget year going forward, which is 1718. That's, budget revealed yesterday was about 1718 in the state budget going forward. Will involve the discussion and then all of that information, that input will be taken back in the fall. And then decisions will be made from that point on and how we move forward or not, or, you know, what additional discussions need to happen. So this is really information gathering time to hear all the diverse opinions. And as Mike mentioned, the PBIC report that came out in November has stirred up quite a bit of debate, as you can imagine. Anything in special tends to. And this is definitely one of those topics. So we expect there'll be lots of discussion going forward and we'll see where we land on this at the end of all of that.
Okay. All right. Summer School for the Arts, Sandoval.
So the application for the California State Summer School for the Arts is now live and I will put one of these small little posters in your bin. So if you know anyone in grades nine through 12 who is interested in animation, creative writing, dance, film, music, theater, visual arts, it's a wonderful program, residential program for our students. And applications to this year's session went out in the mail, not only postal mail, but also using social media vehicles and email. Every high school in California, every art program, every art teacher, and every one of the school's alumni received notification. This year, what's new is that key collateral materials are now available in both English and Spanish, which is wonderful. And I'm also happy to report that the school has done such a good job of targeting outreach to historically underrepresented groups. One example is in the past three years, as a result of very targeted outreach, the number of admitted students from the Central Valley has more than doubled in a three-year period. So it's wonderful to see the investment in targeted outreach resulting in more diverse student population. So they're doing excellent work.
Okay. Then CTC, California Teacher Commission, Strauss. Do you have anything on child nutrition? Okay. Go ahead there and then we'll do child nutrition.
Yes. So the, one of the topics that was discussed in the committee was the health education framework. And so I had the opportunity to attend one of the focus groups that took place towards the latter end of November in Long Beach Unified. And that actual framework will come to us in 2019. But it was a really good discussion that they had in the focus group because one of the concerns that they expressed, and this is the initial stage of this framework development, but one of the concerns was teachers who don't not have a health background teaching health in a time when things are getting a little bit more, well, we have gender identity, for instance. Can everyone speak to issues of gender identity and use the proper terminology? Can, are they trained to speak about, you know, other issues that may be part of this? And they're also framing the health conversation around the ecosystem. So looking at local communities, which really excited me because, you know, when I think of Long Beach and I think of the part of Long Beach where I grew up, where there's a lot of environmental issues compared to another area. And you're looking at, what does this mean for health of students? So asthma rates being higher in particular communities. And then looking at, well, what does that mean in terms of the overall health? And of course, me, I always think of policies that lead to that. But for, I think it's an exciting way of looking at health and I'm glad that the conversation's happening. I look forward to hearing more about the development of this framework. I also have some EL updates, but should I do now? Okay. I want to thank Dr. Veronica Aguila for inviting me to be part of the roadmap work group. So we had our first meeting in Sacramento in November as well. And this work group will be updating the policy that we have on English learners and services. The last time the policy was updated was 1998, immediately after Proposition 227. And it was kind of ironic that we were, we met immediately after Prop 58 passed. So now we have, and it passed overwhelmingly. I think it passed in every single district. So now we need to look at, what does this mean in terms of our policy, our school models, and are we ready to, once again, look into dual language, right? Especially because we now have less teachers than we probably did back then. So that's exciting and I want to thank again Veronica, Dr. Veronica Aguila for extending the invitation. I was also invited by the department, thank you, Department of Education, to speak at the Annual Accountability Leadership Institute for English Learners and Immigrant Students that took place in December in San Francisco. And Dr. Ada Molina and I both spoke as former ELs and we gave a little bit, the keynote address during the reception was, why do we do this work? What motivates us to work with and on behalf of English learners? And it was a really well-organized accountability summit and I, you know, kudos to the department for their good work. Thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay. So I got a few other things. CTC met on December 8th and you had asked Dr. Kirsch for a follow-up on the Title II Teacher Preparation Regulation. So I'm gonna give you a summary of it and kind of tell you where CTC is based on the changes going on in Washington. So the final regs pertaining to Title II of Higher Ed were released on October 12th and it changes the Title II reporting for teacher preparation institutions and states. So some of the big changes are that teacher prep programs must be rated annually in three categories. Really interesting. Effective, at-risk, and low-performing, with four indicators, including student learning outcomes, employment outcomes, survey results, and program characteristics. And then programs rated at risk or low-performing in two out of three years, sounds familiar, lose eligibility for federal teach grants. The CTC's done a lot of work to strengthen their data systems. I may have reported before that they have done really great work on their data dashboards and all their programs. But these new requirements to use student outcomes to evaluate it are actually quite concerning to California and to CTC. They estimate the cost of implementing the new regs in California at more than $200 million because of all the increased workload to meet that. And so because of the change in Washington, they're, the CTC's waiting to see how the new administration will do with the regs before they move forward. So that is the most recent update and Leilani Aguilar, I'm not gonna say your last name right. Aguilar, Aguinaldo is the liaison also, staff liaison and has really kind of worked with CTC on it. So thank you for the clarified summary. So that's the response to that.
Yes. Those regulations are from the Higher Education Act, yeah, which has not been reauthorized by Congress in the past, in this Congress.
So I have a couple of other things. As one of the liaisons for accountability, I was at CSBA in early December with Nancy Burnell and we had a really packed group of school board members and some superintendents talking about what the impact is for our accountability on practices and for boards. And it was actually really positively received and lots of engagement with standing room only. So lots of interest by school boards. And then WestEd, under a Gates grant, is actually doing a pilot training for potential service providers. So I presented, again, the state accountability model and what that means for technical assistance and what things we're looking at in December in Berkeley. So those kind of accountability. And then in saying on the accountability liaison role, I was invited and was able to add-on to a meeting I was already at to go to SCOE to see CSASA's training for the county teams. And that's when I said, I think I saw 57 teams out of 58 counties in this room, all working on LCAP and LCFF. Great energy. And the quality of the presentations on the training for the tech, for the support for districts was very, very impressive on the county schools' part. And so there's another one next week. I'm gonna try to link to the IQC meeting and take a look as well. So I think that there's a lot going on. It's a very big state and I think we can feel good that our partners are really working in collaboration. The last comment is, there's another group funded by a grant that I liaison to also on, it's called, their name, they've tried to change their name, but they call it PACRAS. But it's actually looking at college and career indicators and they're particularly focused on the career indicator where we have not resolved our final areas of work. And so they're doing some webinars, they're bringing in different models of career pathways and want to get us some summary of research as just one group informing us. And so that's an ongoing group as well that has a lot of the similar stakeholders in it, but particularly focused to support us in the area of the career indicator that we had not finally taken final action on. So that's also going on as well.
CCEE Burr?
You heard a lot about CCEE this morning, so I won't be redundant on the professional development piece. Also, at our December meeting, we met in San Francisco to partner with CSBA and did two workshops there around the whole technical assistance and support system with the department and with the county offices of education. Our next meeting is the first week of February, the first Thursday of February. As I think Josh mentioned today, I encourage you to look at the CCEE website. There is a wealth of information there, including their entire packet on their training. But they are also creating a content library. So they're asking for submission of folks who would like to provide information relative to LCAP and LCFF that can be shared widely among all of our LEAs. So if people are interested in submitting that content, that can also be done on our website.
Are you still the chair or not of CCE?
I'm the new chair. She's the official chair.
You're the official chair. You were interim chair and now you are new chair.
She's voted for her now.
Oh, okay. Well, that certainly was noteworthy. I'm glad I asked. Yeah. Okay. That completes the general, the, right.
Yes. We skipped computer science.
We switched computer, yeah. Skip computer science. How did I do that?
Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. So I'm gonna describe a little bit some of the activities I've been involved in and then make a comment about the next steps for computer science. So on, whoops, hold on a minute. Let me turn this off. Sorry about this. Oh, no. On November 14th and 15th, I was in the Bay Area in Silicon Valley with President Kirsch. The Silicon Valley Ed Foundation had a three-hour symposium on the 15th on computer science and they had three different panels. I moderated one of those panels. President Kirsch participated in a different panel. And it had quite a few interest, high-level people and interesting, very diverse perspectives, including San Francisco Unified School District, Oakland, raised a lot of issues.
Oakland, raised a lot of issues, including some issues about whether or not if K-12 in California starts churning out more students who are interested in majoring in computer science in college, will colleges have, will our public institutions have the capacity to take them? Lots of interesting new issues that were raised. In addition, the night before, on the 14th, one of the members of the panels is a fellow that's the COO of the InfoCIS Foundation. And I had, they, their foundation focus is expanding computer science in general, but specifically in California. And I had the pleasure to meet him about a year ago at one of their conferences. So he contacted me ahead of this meeting, asked me to come and meet with him and the CEO, and they expressed interest in funding various things in California related to expanding computer science. On February 9th, I will be in Indian Wells at AXA Superintendent's Symposium. Hadi Partovi, the founder and CEO of Code.org, and I garnered a plenary session there. And while I won't be speaking, I won't be describing computer science and defining it and talking about what it is, he will do that, but I will open and introduce him and talk about where the state board is on this and where we might be going. And I really want to thank AXA for this opportunity. It's a terrific opportunity to get this issue and focus out to superintendents very early on. In addition, I worked with AXA and Code.org and a fellow named John Pierce at MV Gate who has put together a kit called, for K-5, called Family Hour of Code Night. It's an event that, it's a kit that helps schools, K-5 schools, if they want to do an hour of code night, bring parents in, bring kids in, get them excited about doing it. It's partnered now between MV Gate and Code.org. And one of, one of the schools that has done this is, the principal of that school is on the Elementary Ed Council of AXA, and they were, this fellow was so excited about this that they arranged, working with CDE and with their database, they arranged to have the kit emailed out to every, every principal, elementary principal in California. Over 3,000 on the list. And so everybody was very excited about that collaboration and about getting that going. In addition, just this last week, Code.org, which by the way is a national nonprofit organization that does free professional development and curriculum, among many other things, they published an announcement that, letting schools and districts and teachers know that applications are now open for high school teachers that would like to get free professional development in teaching Computer Science Principles AP, which just this year became certified by the College Board, or middle grades teachers that want to teach Computer Science Discoveries, which is a brand-new course for sixth, seventh, or eighth graders developed by Code.org. And so they asked me if I would help publicize that information, which of course I wanted to do because I want California to sign up for this. It's national, but I want Californians to have the opportunity. So I sent all of the information to the Communications Director and the CEO of AXA. I sent it to CSESA, and I sent it to the California Charter Schools Association, and sent it to CDE Communications so that it could get publicized. And finally, I would like to make a comment about the Governor's Budget change yesterday because I know that all of those out there that follow computer science and are interested are, were probably surprised and probably worried or dismayed, and as was I. But, but we are going to address that tomorrow, and, well, I am not dismayed, and I think that this will move forward and we will find a way to have it move forward. So that's my computer science report.
Okay, and we will have a presentation on computer science tomorrow.
Oh, yes, how could I forget that? Pat Young Praddatt, who is the Chief Academic Officer of Code.org and was the lead staff for the K-12 Computer Science Framework, a new national consensus document on the concepts and practices that all students should learn in K through 12. He will be a presentation speaker tomorrow morning. I hope those of you out there will stream it live and hear what he has to say. It'll be about a 20-minute presentation with board Q and A afterwards. Thanks, Mike.
Okay, yes, now we're down to general public comment? None? Okay, we'll end the board adjourns till 8:30 tomorrow.